Would all the commissioners take their seats, please? Jennifer, any changes to the agenda?
No, there have been no changes to the agenda.
Rita Moat, Rick, would you outline the procedure for item 26 for us?
The chairman's asked me to outline the process for reviewing, really, items 20 through 24, which are the individual subdivision requests. The chairman has received a request to allow someone to speak with regard to the interpretation, and he proposes the following approach for the commission, which would be an adjustment to the agenda. At the end of item 19, we will present the commission with the current section 3.5, a slide showing the existing 3.5. And Doug Sloan will present kind of a brief history of the interpretation of 3.5. The Law Department will present their opinion on the interpretation of 3.5. And the chairman proposes that those that are in favor of a one-tier approach, and this is dealing not with individual cases but the theory of the interpretation, that those that are interested in supporting a one-tier approach have 15 minutes to present their case; those that are in favor of a two-tier approach have 15 minutes to present their case. We would recommend that those two sides get together and either coordinate that, or the chairman would then allocate the time based on the number of people that want to speak on those two sides. And this is not individual cases; this is the interpretation. Following that, then, staff recommends that item 20 proceed and that the commission reopen its public hearing on item 20. Our staff recommendation has changed from the last meeting, when you close the public hearing, and we feel it's appropriate for the public to have the opportunity to comment on item 20. And then the debate on item 20 following the public hearing would include discussion of the interpretation and application of that to item 20 and proceeding on through that. So the chairman makes that recommendation. Staff recommends that the agenda be amended to reopen the public hearing on item 20.
I want to remind the audience that the request to speak on item Tier 1 and Tier 2 is not part of our rules and regulations. This is something we've allowed today. It will be 15 minutes total, and whoever's going to speak, it can be one person. If it's 30 people that line up, you're going to have 30 seconds each. So I would suggest that the ones that are in favor of Tier 1 to speak on that, to get together and decide who your spokesmen or spokespersons are. Same thing with Tier 2. Jennifer, any other changes to the agenda?
No, there are no other changes to the agenda.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda with the recommendations that you heard from Rick?
No approval as amended.
A second?
A second. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask a question about item 20. That's the one we heard last time, right? Besides the staff recommendation of the different interpretation, has anything else changed or any other substantive?
The facts of the case have not changed, no.
Okay. And just so the commissioners are aware of what we're voting on now, the motion is to reopen that public hearing.
That's part of the adoption, is to reopen item number 20, reopen the public hearing. Stuart, Hunter, were you finished?
Before we vote on that revised calendar, I think I know the answer to this, but that 15 minutes per side will not include council members, I trust.
Any council member that wants to speak can speak at the beginning. When they come time for each item, if they speak at that time, they're limited to two minutes, just like any individual is.
If they speak during the meeting, they'll have the two minutes everyone gets, and it will count toward the 15 minutes. But if they speak at the first, then it's their privilege to speak to us.
Speak again with a limitation of two minutes.
And just to explain to the audience, the procedure of the commission, this is not a new procedure of the commission, there's a courtesy for any council member to speak at the beginning of the meeting, and they can speak with an untimed presentation to the planning commission. If they speak during one of the time portions, either this 15 minutes or during the normal public hearing process, then they're subject to the time constraints of that, depending on where they are in the process as an applicant or another position.
So just to be clear, the public is welcome, then, if we approve this, to speak twice, one to the interpretation of the one-tier versus two-tier approach, and then they also have the opportunity to speak for two minutes on any individual case or all five cases.
They're allowed two minutes on the case; they're allowed whatever portion of time that the number of people that's wishing to speak within that 15-minute period of time be allocated equally to all, or they can have one person speak for all of them. Andre?
In the agenda, the subdivision regs were number 25, and I think I understood you to say we're going to listen to them and discuss them and hear from the public about them after number 19. So is that, I just want to be sure I'm clear on, then we're going to hear 20 through 25?
Items 20 through 24 relate to the current subdivision regulations and the interpretation of the current subdivision regulations. They do not relate, item 25 are proposed amendments that would take effect if and when the commission adopts it. So items 20 through 24 are all subject to the subdivision regulations the way they are currently written.
And this interpretation hearing that we're going to have, the 15 minutes on each side, is about current interpretation only?
Current interpretation, only.
Any particular case will be heard, will be discussed at that time.
That part I understand. So then after that, we'll decide which way we're going to interpret them.
Item 20, we'll take up, after we've heard item 20 through 24, then we will take up item 25, which is subdivision regulation amendments.
But first, we're going to decide how we're going to interpret the one- or two-tier version, and then we're going to hear items 20 through 24 based on that decision. Is that right?
Items, correct. Items 20 through 24 are filed under the existing subdivision regulations, so the commission needs to determine those within that. Susan?
Your decision with regard to which interpretation you're going to adopt will be made by your either approval or disapproval, and the discussion and what the record reflects in each of those cases. There's not a separate agenda item for which interpretation you're going to make, so you don't have to vote on whether you're going to take one interpretation over the other. Theoretically, commissioners might disagree on which interpretation they want to take, and their vote will reflect that as individual commissioners. So I didn't want it to be any confusion.
Thanks, that helps a lot.
Okay.
Okay, we've got a motion to adopt the agenda with the outline of procedure that you heard from Rick. Got a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I need approval of the minutes for November 14th and November 20th, 2013. If there's any changes or corrections or additions, I need to know that at this time. Motion is second to approve both minutes of November 14th and 20th, 2013. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Any members of the council that's in the audience that would like to speak before we get the meeting started, please come forward. I won't make you line up, just be ready to speak after each one gets finished.
Councilman Buddy Gray from 29th District. On 4A and 4B, there is, I'd like to leave it on the same agenda, but there's a agreement between the property owners out there.
It needs to be signed before I sign off on this bill, and it should have already been done, but it hasn't, and as soon as that gets done, I'll recommend approval on it. And on all the other bills on the man, I'd request to be approved. And on item 25, there are several other council members, including myself, I think eight or 10 of us are requesting a deferral, about a 45-day deferral on this. So, and I request all my other bills be approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Phil Claiborne. I live at 2911 Western Hills Drive. I'm the councilman for District 15, which is the Donaldson, Two Rivers, Pennington Bend area. And I want to take just a couple of minutes to address some thoughts that I have on the subdivision regulations that you're going to be considering today. I had some calls earlier this week from some of my constituency, and in truth, couldn't answer their questions right off because I didn't fully understand all that you're being asked to consider. It took me at least three different phone conversations and a couple of face-to-face conversations to come to the place where I think that I understand what you're being asked to consider. My primary concern for being here is, in District 15, I represent a district that is made up totally of established neighborhoods. We don't have anything in District 15 that is approaching what has come to be called an evolving neighborhood. All of my neighborhoods are established, they're stable, they're vibrant, and my primary concern is that as you go through your deliberations today, that neighborhoods such as the ones that I represent in District 15, that are scattered out all over Davidson County, are afforded a degree of protection over future, perhaps, development that would not exclude the people who live there and have a zoning or planning principle forced onto them, that they don't have a voice in that decision when it might come. I could see, for example, a home in one of my neighborhoods that is in an aged condition, that is in a state of disrepair, perhaps, that a developer might see an opportunity to purchase that home, to tear it down, and because it's a larger lot, or a couple of those places, to put those together and to put in what is termed an infill development that would be totally incompatible with the rest of that neighborhood because of its design, because of its size. It just wouldn't fit. There are places in the county where evolving neighborhoods have been identified and where infill developments are taking place, and apparently are taking place with some degree of success. But there are also areas in the county where that is not appropriate. As you heard me say many times when I sat here on the commission with you, what is good planning principle is not always good principle for the neighborhoods that the councilman represents and that the folks live in. And so I'm just coming to you to express a concern, not only on the part of me personally, but on the part of people that I represent in my neighborhoods, that when it comes to a point in time where future development or new building takes place in an established neighborhood, that it's done in such a way that it stays within the character of that existing neighborhood, that it stays, it is compatible in every degree, as far as setbacks, as far as height, as far as the type of building materials, that it does not depart in any way from what is already there. And so I think that as you're being asked to look at this one-tier versus two-tiered approach, that the two-tier is the thing that I'm asking you to consider and to move forward with. I'm not sure that either one of these positions is totally where it needs to be. There's perhaps some tweaking, some additional work that needs to be done, and perhaps this is a good starting place. So I know that you're being asked to consider deferral, passing and then coming back and relooking at the issue. Those are matters for you to consider as you go about your deliberations. But my concern is that you keep in mind and honor the established neighborhoods that are in the county and don't take any action that would in any way endanger the integrity of these existing neighborhoods. So thank you.
Thank you. I ask the audience to hold their applause, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Berkeley Allen. I live at 3521 Byron Avenue, and I'm a council member for the 18th District. I'd like to address the subdivision regulation amendments. I appreciate the effort that has gone into the proposed clarifications on determining lot comparability in subdivisions. I believe that it is important to use a two-test approach that considers both allowed density and comparability with surrounding lots. The objective of the proposed amendment is to review the proposed lot subdivision against the area's community character. Quoting from the staff analysis of the proposed amendments, "In existing neighborhoods, proposed subdivisions must meet zoning requirements and must conform to the community character in terms of lot frontage, lot size, street setback, and lot orientation. In the recent past, different subareas have received different treatment depending on whether they are under the old Lupa designations or have the new community character designations. This is a function of when the subarea's community plan was last updated. The Green Hills Midtown SubArea 10, in which my district lies, is overdue for this review, but that process has been put on hold while the planning staff focuses on the Nashville general plan. I understand the need to allocate limited manpower resources, but this has left some part of the cities potentially being held to a different criteria for subdivisions because of the way the current regulations have been interpreted. This is unfair to the residents who have no control over when the new community plan process will take place. The current subdivision regulations provide clear guidance for considering community character for the areas within community character designations, but refer only to density for the Lupa designated areas. To remedy this inequity, the staff has applied a common sense criteria of generally comparable, which looks at lot frontage and lot area along the block frontage. This is a fair and reasonable way to apply the same criteria to all subareas in Nashville, regardless of where they are in the community plan update process. This interpretation is consistent with the intent of the current regulations as they were adopted in 2011, as evidenced by the minutes of the planning commission meeting where they were adopted. I would respectfully ask that the planning commissioners continue with this interpretation and follow the two-test approach as they evaluate subdivision requests. If the planning commissioners need more guidance from the regulation, then I would request that more discussion go into the proposed regulations, but only after putting into place today something that guarantees a continued two-test approach in the interim. The proposed regulations provide specific instructions on which lots are to be considered in determining comparability, and I think five lots on either side is as good as any other criteria, so I won't argue with that piece of it. But I would like to ask for reconsideration of several portions of the proposed regulation. Section 3-52A uses the proposed subdivided lots combined with the surrounding lots for the density test. This means that larger surrounding lots can skew the number of lots per acre, so that the lot to be subdivided can have more lots than if it were considered by itself. I would propose that only the lot in question be included in that calculation. Section 3-52B considers both lot frontage and lot size, which I believe is appropriate. However, I question the use of 70% of the average of the surrounding lots as an appropriate measure of comparability. For a group of lots that are uniform, except for the one large lot on the street, and that does happen in my district and probably in others, for that group of lots, that would allow the new lots to become significantly narrower or smaller than their neighbors. The houses on the subdivided lots will either be significantly narrower or closer to each other than the rest of the houses on the street, and therefore not in conformance with the character of the street, which is defined in part by the rhythm and spacing of the homes. I would suggest that 90% would be a more appropriate factor to create comparability while allowing for some flexibility. Lastly, section 3-52B allows either 70% of the average of the surrounding lots or the use of the smallest or narrowest lot, whichever is less. This also drives the lot size smaller than the context. I believe it should be whichever is greater of those two criteria. If the goal is to preserve community character as stated, then the regulations should allow for deviations, but they should not create the means to completely transform a neighborhood that people chose because they appreciated the existing character. That type of transformation is invaluable in blighted areas, but it's disruptive in thriving neighborhoods that have attracted homeowners because of their particular personality. In conclusion, I would ask you to consider applying a two-tier criteria on all properties, regardless of where they are in the community plan, and as you consider the cases before you today. And I would ask, whether you adopt the proposed regulations or not, if you do look at the proposed regulations, I would ask that you take another look at the 70% or smallest lot criteria and work to revise that to either 90% of the average or the smallest lot, whichever is larger. I think that will allow for subdivision of larger lots in infill areas in a way that truly makes them comparable with the existing community character. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the commission. Jason Holloman, council representative for District 24. And I'm here today to speak about the subdivision regulations as well, and I can actually say to this body that one of the reasons I first got involved in local government and decided to run for the council was an issue in my own neighborhood with lot comparability. And the subdividing of parcels in our neighborhood that was a zone single-family but allowed a lot of homes to be torn down for more housing stock to be built in that wasn't, in some cases, compatible with the neighborhood. I want to speak to you, though, at a more global level, which is just simply that you, as the planning commission, have the responsibility for the subdivision regulations; we, as the council, have the responsibility for the base zoning. But it's important that those two things work together. There are many places in my own district where there's discussion about downzoning, and if you do downzone in those areas, you create a lot of legally nonconforming lots because the lot size actually, the average lot size becomes smaller than the base zoning minimum. And I don't think that's a condition that we want to create. Councilman Clifton, you're smiling because you know the situation well. But in order to encourage neighborhoods not to go that route, we have to be sure that as part of our subdivision regulations, we don't just say, if you meet the minimum base zoning requirements, then you can subdivide. We have to have the element of lot comparability, which is that not only are you going to meet the base zoning requirements, but in the area where you are, you're not going to be dramatically inconsistent with the adjacent lots so that you change the whole shape and fabric of the block. The old subdivision regulations that were in place before we did the Community Character Manual and all the updates clearly defined lot comparability. When the new subdivision regulations were adopted, there was a lot of discussion about whether or not to include specifically the nomenclature of lot comparability and the same tests that were there before. It was decided not to do that, but I was assured, at least personally, that that analysis was still going to be undertaken in some shape, form, or fashion by this body. So I think my comment to you here tonight is that I think what's been prepared by the staff is a good place to start the discussion for amendments, but at a minimum, I hope this body will either interpret its existing regulations to say that lot comparability analysis is still part of how you're going to examine whether or not it's appropriate to subdivide beyond just minimum compliance with base zoning, or you're going to adopt these regulations either as written or something close to that. But under either scenario, I do hope this body will not forget that there is more to the equation than just simply, do you meet the base zoning requirements? Because in many cases, the context may dictate that it needs to look different in order for a community to allow infill development, allow growth, but not immediately dramatically alter a block and therefore, over time, a whole neighborhood in a way that makes it something that we don't want to have. So with that, thank you for your time and your consideration tonight.
Thank you. Other council members?
Thank you, commissioners. I'm Carter Todd, the councilperson, one of the two councilpeople for the Green Hills area. And really, in the interest of time, I would just echo everything Councilman Holloman said. I mean, I think he stated the case exactly right. You all have a very complicated agenda today. I'm going to save a lot of my comments for later in the meat of the agenda. But the two big things you have to address today is, number one, what are you going to do with the existing regulations today before you adopt some new regulations? And existing regulations today, I would strongly urge you, like Councilman Holloman said, to consider comparability. And there are different ways to do that; we'll get into that later in the meeting. But this body has done that before, and you've kind of sometimes varied away from it, but it's important to consider, and I strongly urge you, in some form or fashion, to do that as you deal with these final four lots today. And it's really important you do that because those final four lots, if they get chopped up the wrong way, they're going to be used in the math in the new regulations, and they're in key areas. And so if you, you know, if you let the cow out of the barn, there's no need to get a new door. I mean, it's, you know, we may do some things on these four lots that you wish you hadn't done. So that's on the existing rules for today, and I hope you listen to Councilman Holloman and can consider, you know, comparability and have a two-tier test. On the new regulations, they're not perfect. And when we get into this, you'll hear tons of people tell you what's good about them, what's bad about them, but I think we need something in place. Unless you can do, keep some form of comparability in existing regulations, then I think we at least need some new regulations to give us some protection while you're debating, you know, what tweaks need to be made in those. So please do consider some form of comparability, use a two-tier test on these last four lots, and then please go ahead and put some safeguards in on this if you feel like you need to put any regulations in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and happy holidays to everybody. Tonight, and the focus of the discussion, or a lot of the discussion, is going to be really about one thing, and that is comparability. We're going to talk about various cases, and we're going to talk about the subdivision regs, but at the end of the day, the question is whether or not we're going to have some sort of comparability test, either by interpretation or by adoption of the subdivision regs. And I'm here tonight to tell you not to fear comparability. It is the lifeblood of the public's support for infill development. It is, comparability is being used all over Nashville in those parts that are under the Community Character Manual, like a good portion of the 23rd Council District. And lastly, general comparability has been a feature of our subdivision regs, and the intent, when we adopted the new regulations in 2001, was that general comparability would be considered, in 2011, sorry, general comparability would be considered. So as you can recall from our discussion on the 20th, when I had a rezoning before you for an eight cottage development, after traffic, the focus of the debate from the public was, we don't want to be another Green Hills. We don't want to have our neighborhood cut up. We see this as the first of many erosions of our quality of life. So instead of focusing on the actual issue, what they're saying is, we don't want to, we want comparability, right? And they're expressing it that way. The point, I'm sorry, if you reject comparability tonight as part of our land use subdivision, you're going to make it much, much harder either for us to convince our constituents that infill development is a good thing. It's a fact. It's already a fact. We're under enormous pressure to downzone portions of our district. We get calls regularly on this. It's not something I encourage. It's not, as Councilman Holloman pointed out, it's not something we want to see happen, but it's a very real thing for us, and we have to deal with it. Now, my constituents, unlike Councilman Todd's, Councilman McGuire's, Councilman Allen's, have a little bit less to be concerned about. We updated our land use plan in 2009 and adopted the Community Character Manual. And regardless of how you interpret subdivision regulations, which we're going to debate tonight, you must consider land use policy when you consider subdivisions in the 23rd District. And land use policy includes a comparability criteria. It's not true in the Green Hills Midtown area because they're under a different land use policy. So it becomes a question of equity. You know, why treat a neighborhood in Green Hills different than you're treating a neighborhood in Westmead? So for that reason, we need, either through the subdivision regs or through an interpretation of the current regs, adoption of the new regs or current regs, we need to have some sort of comparability. And then, lastly, oh, and I will add to the point, in the 23rd District, we have had infill, notwithstanding our comparability requirement. You guys approved a three-lot subdivision, which is in a perfectly appropriate place opposite a more, across the street from a more dense area. There is an administrative approval very recently on a two-lot subdivision on a corner, very appropriate, you know, but compatible, so you can do it. The, finally, I think you should acknowledge, and I hope you acknowledge tonight, the comparability is, in fact, a necessary requirement of subdivision because that feature's always been in our regulations. You, if you've been on the commission a long time, you remember the comparability test, which was this somewhat arcane mathematical calculation. But in 2011, when you changed the regulation... But in 2011, when you changed the regulation, as Councilman Holloman pointed out, we expressed some concern. And I contacted staff, and I said, "Don't worry." They said, "Don't worry. Comparability will be, still be considered." And in fact, from their staff analysis in May of 2011, it reads Section 3.5. Lot comparability is proposed to be modified and renamed infill subdivisions with new standards to ensure infill subdivisions complement existing development. The new standards are more qualitative than quantitative and more about character of an area and less about the numbers, and more in line with the new Community Character Manual. The Planning Commission should retain, would retain, the ability to evaluate infill subdivision to ensure consistency with the surrounding area's character. Joint access or rear access for narrow lots is also proposed for these subdivisions. That's what she told us in 2011 when you adopted the existing regulations. Perhaps it's not as artfully drafted as you would like, and that's what the lawyers are probably going to tell you tonight, but it's what she told us. It's what the public expect. And if we were going to change that, we needed to tell them. So tonight, I ask you, please preserve lot comparability as a test for subdivision design, particularly in those areas of the city where we use the LUPA manual. And if you do it through current interpretation of existing regs, that's fine. If you do it through adoption of new regulations, even if it's on a temporary basis while we work on this some more, that's fine, too. But please don't let these people leave here tonight without comparability as a criteria for you to consider when you do subdivisions. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and I want to thank you all for your service. I care very deeply what you guys think. I have never, actually one exception to this, never sponsored legislation that you haven't approved, and it's because I care very much what you think. So thank you very much for your service in the city.
Thank you. Any other council members in the audience who'd like to speak? Seeing none. Senator, any items to be deferred or withdrawn?
There are three items for deferral. The first is item number one, 2013 CP 00002, Major and Collector Street Plan, the Green Hills Area Transportation Plan. This is a request to amend the adopted Major and Collector Street Plan to include the recommendations from the Green Hills Area Transportation Plan. Staff recommendation is to defer this item to the March 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Item number two, 2013 CP 01005, Green Hills Midtown Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan 2005 update to include recommendations from the Green Hills Area Transportation Plan. Staff recommendation is to defer this item to the March 13, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. And item 17, 2005 P 008003, Harpeth Village Zaxby's. A request to revise the preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of the Harpeth Village Commercial PUD overlay district on property located at 8,000 Highway 100, Zone CL, to permit the construction of a 3,652 square foot restaurant. Staff recommendation is to defer this to the January 9, 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
Thank you. You heard the request from the staff to defer items number one and two until March 13, 2014. Item 17, defer that to the January 9, 2014 meeting. Is there a motion? Motion, second, defer items one, two, and 17. All in favor? Any opposed? Those items have now been deferred. Items on consent.
As information for our audience, if you are not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission's decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. Also, as a notice to the public, the items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. The consent agenda begins with item number 3A, 2013 CP 002001, Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the Parkwood Union Hill Community Plan 2004 update by changing the land use policy from residential low, medium density policy to residential low density policy, pardon me, and residential low policy to suburban neighborhood evolving and conservation policies for properties located at 915 and 927 Old Dewest Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 3B, 2013 SP 038001, Skyline Apartments. A request to rezone from RS 10, R 10, and CS to SPR zoning for properties located at 915 and 927 Old Dewest Avenue to permit up to 280 multifamily residential dwelling units and up to 480 assisted care living beds. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions, including the revised public works and planning conditions, subject to the approval of the associated policy amendment, and disapproval without all conditions. Disapprove if the policy amendment is not approved by the commission. Item number 4A, 2013 CP 011001, West Nashville Community Plan Amendment. A request to amend the West Nashville Community Plan 2009 update to change the land use policy from district industrial to urban neighborhood evolving policy for property located at 1249th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 4B, 2013 SP 029001, 49th and Tennessee. A request to rezone from IR and SPMR zoning for property located at 1249th Avenue North to permit up to 55 residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all staff conditions if the commission approves the associated policy amendment, and disapprove if the associated policy amendment is not approved. Item number five, 2013 Z 015TX 001, Animal Related Uses. A request to amend the zoning code pertaining to animal hospitals, kennels, stables, veterinarians, and animal boarding facilities. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number six, 2013 SP 034001, College Park. A request to rezone from RS 7.5 to SPR zoning for property located at Surf Drive to permit up to 81 residential dwelling units. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number seven, 2013 SP 044001, 1,004 Gallatin Avenue. A request to rezone from MUGA to SPMU and for final site plan approval for property located at 1,004 Gallatin Avenue to permit an existing building to be used for an animal boarding facility and all the other uses permitted by MUG zoning district. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number eight, 2013 SP 045001, 95 Glen Rose Avenue SP. A request to rezone from RS 5 to SPMU zoning for property located at 95 Glen Rose Avenue to permit general office, warehouse, and retail uses. The staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 10, 2013 SP 05001, 69 Thompson Lane. A request to rezone from RS 10 and SPO and for, pardon me, to SPO, and for final site plan approval for property located at 69 Thompson Lane to permit general office and residential uses. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. Item number 11, 2013 Z 043PR 001. A request to rezone from CS to MUNA zoning for property located at 1736 Arthur Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 12, 2013 Z 044PR 001. A request to rezone from CL to MUNA zoning for property located at 1104 Stratton Avenue. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item number 13, 2013 Z 046PR 001. A request to rezone from AR 2A to MUL zoning for property located at 212 Franklin Limestone Road. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 15, 2013 Z 051PR 001. A request to rezone from R 6 to RM 20A zoning for property located at 707 44th Avenue North. Staff recommendation is to approve. Item 16, 13376P 001, Express Oil Swiss Avenue. A request to revise a preliminary plan and for final site plan approval for a portion of a commercial PUD on property located at 400 Swiss Avenue, zoned SCR, to permit the development of a 3,695 square foot automobile service facility where a 5,463 square foot car wash was previously approved. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 18, 2013 S 145001, Travis Place. A request to revise a preliminary, a previously approved preliminary plat to add eight lots for a total of 148 lots on properties and portions of properties located at Beautiful Valley Drive, 7946, 7972, and 7986 McCory Lane, and McCory Lane Unnumbered, and Newsome Station Road Unnumbered, zoned RS 10. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Item 19, 2013 S 198001, Autumn Oaks Phase 10B. A request for final plat approval to create 32 lots and dedicate right-of-way within the Autumn Oaks PUD overlay district on property located at Autumn Crossing Way, zoned R 10, pardon me, R 20. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Under Other Business. Item 26, a new employee contract for Leila Hakimizadeh, pardon me. Item number 27, a resolution authorizing the expenditure of up to $50,000 from the Fiscal Year 2014 Advanced Planning and Research Fund to utilize MP&amp;F to provide critical community access and engagement tools and techniques necessary to develop recommendations and strategies for the Nashville-Davidson County General Plan. The total of this authorization and the funding authorized by Resolution RS 2013 127 shall not exceed $50,000 from the Fiscal Year 2014 Advanced Planning and Research Fund, and $31,900 in carryover funds from the Fiscal Year 2013 Advanced Planning and Research Fund. Item 28, a contract between the Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and the Regional Transportation Authority for pass-through funds for fulfilling federal transit requirements. Item number 29, a contract between the Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and the Nashville Civic Design Center for urban design services in support of the Regional Transportation Plan. Item 30, contract between the Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and the TMA Group for the administration of the Clean Air Partnership of Middle Tennessee. Item 31, contract between the Nashville-Davidson County Metropolitan Planning Commission on behalf of the Nashville Area MPO and the Nashville Area Chamber of Commerce for Nashville Region's Vital Signs Report. And finally, item number 32, Susan Jones as legal counsel from the Department of Law to the Metro Planning Commission requests that the Metro Planning Commission approve two continuing education classes. Chairman, would you like me to repeat the case numbers, or the item numbers, I should say?
Just if you would, there's 23 items total, so the Commissioners be aware of that. Follow through, if you would go back through and just read the numbers.
Sure. On the consent agenda, item 3A, 3B, 4A, 4B, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, 15, 16, 18, 19, 26, 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, and 32.
Okay, is there a motion to approve those on consent? Motion, second, approve those 23 items on consent. All in favor? Any opposed? Those now have been officially approved. The items that, for the audience that will be holding public hearing on is item number nine, 14, 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25. You're all ready for item number nine.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is item number nine on your agenda. This is a request to rezone property to establish a preliminary SP on 1.9 acres of property located at the northwest corner of 51st Avenue North and Centennial Boulevard. Subject property is currently vacant. The applicant proposes an SP that would establish general office, retail, restaurant, full service, and warehouse uses on the site. As you can see, the subject property is surrounded by a variety of development. Industrial development is located to the north, northwest, and east of the site, while you have a collection of commercial development to the south of this site across Centennial Boulevard. Staff's recommendation of the preliminary SP is to approve with conditions and disapprove without all conditions. The subject property is currently zoned IR, industrial restrictive. The IR district allows a variety of moderately intense, moderately intense industrial uses on that subject property, compatible with those that you'd find around it to the north, northwest, and east. You'll notice on this map, it is across the street, across Centennial Boulevard, from commercially zoned property. The policy guiding land use development decisions on this property is district industrial. It's a moderately intense industrial land use category, which permits and supports a variety of industrial uses. However, it also supports the reuse of land in a manner that would be supportive to those industrial districts, including allowing supportive restaurants, supportive office, and other commercial uses. You'll also note that this site is located in a position of transition. It's on the edge of this industrial policy area, this industrially zoned area, shares an edge with the commercially zoned and a policy that promotes an urban mixed-use corridor on the south side of Centennial Boulevard. But again, clearly, the policy guiding land use decisions here is district industrial. This SP would establish two commercial buildings on the site. A 9,100 square foot commercial building would be located at the hard corner of the site, outlined in yellow, the corner of Centennial and 51st. It's proposed as a one-story building and proposed to permit commercial uses. In this instance, it's proposed as a retail building. This SP also proposes a second commercial building located at the back of the site, up to 4,800 square feet of floor area. Again, both buildings being one-story in height. Parking for this SP meets code for these uses, and it's generally situated to the side and rear of these buildings. This SP would also establish needed street improvements, including sidewalks along both Centennial and 51st, as well as street trees. Access to the site would be limited to two points. One point on Centennial Boulevard, west of 51st, the intersection with 51st Avenue, and then a second access point on the north side of the site, extending to 51st Avenue behind the larger retail building. Again, as this site is located in a point of transition, this SP proposes uses that are supportive to the larger surrounding industrial area. It's also proposing uses that help this property transition into the commercial corridor that is Centennial Boulevard. The orientation of the proposed layout of the SP also helps it make that transition from the more intense, more scattered, developed industrial area to the north to a more defined commercial corridor to the south. This SP promotes or supports several critical planning goals. It supports infill development, creates walkable neighborhoods, and again, it's consistent with that district industrial policy. In conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all conditions.
Thank you, Dwayne. This item is open for public hearing. An applicant can be allowed 10 minutes to present their case, and you may hold back two minutes maximum for your rebuttal if you would like.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. I'm Roy Dale, Dale &amp; Associates. 516 Heather Place. Appreciate, as always, the staff. They've done a good job on this, and obviously, we liked their recommendation. But as mentioned, this site is an industrial lot. It's a gravel parking lot. It's surrounded with razor wire. Proposed is this new facility, two buildings, two commercial buildings, with new public sidewalks, streetscaping, bike racks, pedestrian connections throughout the site, green space, landscaping. The primary building, as mentioned, actually addresses two streets, the front and the side street, with architectural elements on the building. So it's very urbanistic in that respect. As mentioned, there are needed improvements that will be done around the perimeter of the property. I actually have attended two public meetings, two community meetings here on this property. The most recent one with Councilman Baker, I believe it was... The most recent one with Councilman Baker, I believe, was last week. People were very excited about the walkability of this. They felt like that this was a use that they need. Right now, they have to go some distance to Walmart or Kmart. They like the idea of maybe having some neighborhood retail that they could actually walk to. So I think that the first community meeting I went to, this was somewhat mixed, but the most recent meeting, I think, actually had a show of hands, and it was 100% support. So again, I appreciate the staff. They've mentioned the critical goals that this meets by providing an infill development with walkable neighborhoods and is consistent with the policy. And so we would request that you recommend approval of this to the council. Again, I think the council member is very supportive of this. I believe he mentioned that in his discussion with you at the beginning of the meeting. So I know there's going to be some questions that probably come up, so I will hold on to two minutes to maybe answer some of those or address some concerns that might be brought up to your attention. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? If you'd come to the microphone, line up behind each other and state your name, address, and you'll be allowed two minutes.
Jeremy Jeter, President of Nations Neighborhood Association. I live at 5210 Illinois Avenue. First of all, I would like to thank the applicant for working with the neighborhood on an SP for this project. Primary concern that the neighborhood has with this project, this project's going to anchor future retail mixed-use development down Centennial Avenue. As you may or may not know, the rest of that Bruce Hardwood site is available for purchase. It's being parceled off for developments of this type. Our primary concern is that this project's not being held to T4 urban design standards, which would require that all the buildings be pulled up to the sidewalk level and all parking be behind the buildings. I would ask that you take into consideration that, and we ask that, you know, if the plan could be reworked for the site, to have all the buildings pulled up to the sidewalk level and parking behind. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Carolyn James. I live near this, but I didn't know about the meetings. And I just wanted to point out, maybe it's already in the thing, but you can see there's two gasoline trucks on that 51st Street that goes right to where the gasoline comes up off the river. And, you know, there's just big trucks up and down there all the time, and it's dangerous. So I'm just hoping that that's in the plan and people are noticing that.
Good evening. My name's John Bader. I live at 5308 Louisiana Avenue and own some other investment properties on Louisiana Avenue that are rental homes. I certainly agree with what Mr. Jeter had said about although this is currently zoned industrial, it is right on the cusp of a growth area. And for that reason, we want to keep those zoning standards the same on the north and south side of the street and keep them with the parking lot behind the building, which is faced up to the street. I also agree with the second person that had spoken about the large trucks that travel on 51st and the speed that they travel would not be really conducive to making it a walking environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marissa Frank. I'm a property owner at 5305 Louisiana Avenue, right around the corner from this piece of property. I just wanted to say that I am fully in support of there being development of that piece of property. I would just like for it to be held to that T4 urban design. I think with 51st Avenue, looking at some of that T4 urban design development, I'd like to see it, it only makes sense for it to continue across the street, essentially. I'm not meaning to be ugly at all, but my council member showed up tonight in support of this rezoning, and then he left the room. I was also, I'm an active member in my community and was never informed of this meeting where there was 100% support because clearly I would have not given my support. So not sure what that was about. But if we could make that, fit that T4 urban design, I would be extremely excited to see that.
Good evening or afternoon. My name's Frank Stabile. I live on Kentucky Avenue, 5203. And I'm here to request that you deny the SP unless, as Mr. Jeter has said and the others after him, the applicant and planning can agree to holding the property to a T4 mixed-use corridor standard since this development will be most likely the precedent of what is soon to be a mixed-use corridor, and I believe it's very important for us to set the rhythm with this property. Ultimately, a mixed-use corridor seems to be the desired outcome for 51st and Centennial. About a month to, maybe three months ago, we were here trying to save some CN zoning that was going to R6, and we were unsuccessful due to the community plan basically saying that 51st and Centennial is going to be the mixed-use corridor. So if that's the case, then we'll live with that and go with that. So now the debate becomes the issue of the district industrial being on the north part of Centennial and the T4 CM being on the south side. And I feel if this is going to be a mixed-use corridor, then we should just make it a mixed-use corridor. And with that said, either have the community plan amend the land use policy from district industrial or have the SP require that the proposed structures be built, all the structures be built to the sidewalk. If, just as an example, if the next developer comes and does a mirror image of what you guys have in front of you, then we're going to have a large frontage of parking and parking lots, and we'll never achieve that desired outcome of the T4 buildings to the front walkable. And basically, you're going to have something more akin to the strip mall sprawling suburbia than an urban neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll try to slow down. I talk too fast sometimes, I know that. But again, this is a specific plan, and this does go to the council. The time for the community input certainly does not stop, and we'll continue to work with the community. But it's important to note that this is district industrial. However, the way this site is laid out, it meets the majority of the requirements for the T4 that they're talking about. If you looked at the site plan, you'll notice that most of the parking is in the rear and the side. Actually, there is no parking in the front of this building. This building is pulled as close to the street almost as possible as you could to direct, to actually have fronts on two streets. It's set where it is, so you could actually have handicap parking close to the building. If you pull any further, it would be very difficult to do that. Part of the conditions, I believe one of the conditions of the staff approval is that there needs to be a traffic impact study. And so that's going to address some of the concerns you had about traffic. Certainly, this is going to be a safe site, but we went ahead and agreed to do that because we want to ensure it's safe. So we're going to check our points of access and make sure that that's all proper and where all the sidewalks are placed, that they're all properly placed. This meets your requirements, it meets your standards. Staff has recommended approval of this. The council member is supportive of it, and I can tell you that the majority of constituents do support this plan. So having said that, I would very much appreciate that you endorse the staff's recommendation and recommend approval to the council. Thank you.
I need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Still not on, no red light. Oh, you're on.
Yes, I'm on. Now, when I was looking at, my comments was that when I was looking at the T4 design and looking at where these buildings seem to be located, if I'm looking at the 51st Avenue side, it seems to be right up on, close to 51st, as well as when I look at the opposite end, I don't know what street that is, but it's still right there on the edge where it appears that the parking is on the rear of the building. So in terms of walkability, parking in the rear, it seems that it's already done that, so I'm okay with it. I think it's a good design.
I have one question about the parking in the rear. Does that apply only to the larger unit that's proposed for this, or does that apply to both of the units?
It's a one-lot development, so the comment that parking is generally to the side and the rear, it applies to that larger building that'll have the biggest presence on the corner on this intersection. So it's for the larger 9,100 square foot retail building, parking is generally to the side and to the rear of that building, not applicable to the smaller retail building at the back of the site.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Judy?
Thank you. When I first looked at the plan, and we said that it added to the walkability of the neighborhood, I was wondering who would walk around there. But I know that they will continue to work with the neighborhood to, as the developer said, to make sure that it's safe. As it relates to the plan, I think that it's a good plan, and I'm glad to see development in this area.
Hunter?
I really, and this is a commission that likes the idea of, as a general rule, likes the idea of parking behind. It does appear that the main building has that. I also understand, though, that some of the concerns about introducing these kind of uses with the danger level, I've been in the area, the traffic and the kinds of traffic, I understand Ms. James' concerns too. But I, so I don't know if the staff has anything they can elaborate on in terms of, I think you, we did hear some testimony from Mr. Dale about the safety feature. Could you tell us anything more about that, not the land use so much as the safety feature with the testimony we've heard regarding the trucks and the, between here and the river?
That may be better addressed by Public Works, but this SP, to try to address your question, this SP limits access points to just two places. One point on Centennial and one point on 51st Avenue. The traffic improvement study will be required, and so if there are any street improvements that are necessary as a result of that study, that'll be on top of what you see here today. So that might include turn lanes, that might include shifting some of these access points a little further away from any other driveways in the area. But I really, I don't want to speak for Public Works as to what that TIS might result in.
Okay, thank you. Public Works?
Good afternoon. Jonathan Hennecov, Department of Public Works. As far as requests of a traffic study to be performed with this site, we're adding sidewalks to an area which originally is an industrial area. So we need to look at pedestrian facilities, pedestrian access, signal modifications, or maybe some striping modifications maybe down off the site. So that'd be the focus of the study.
It's an unusual situation, because I think, I think the point of the remark was that if we're encouraging a lot of pedestrian use of the area, and it's relatively dangerous given the kind of traffic and the, that's something we don't hear often because we're not used to converting industrial into retail. So I think that will be important for the neighborhood's comfort level if it's ever going to be really pedestrian-friendly. Thank you.
Duane, walk us through if the T4 urban design standards were enforced completely, would the second building in the rear corner not be allowed, and they would have to bring that building to Centennial Boulevard?
So if the policy that's across Centennial, the urban mixed-use corridor policy was applied to this site, generally, yes, we would require an A district. If somebody were going to straight rezone, we'd require an A district, which would require buildings to meet build-two zones for a certain percentage of the frontage. It wouldn't necessarily mean that they couldn't locate a building back there, but any buildings or that minimum percentage of the build-two zone would have to be occupied by a building. So if, in place of a straight rezone, there were an SP applied for, yes, we'd try to get those outcomes. But again, because this is district industrial, we weren't as aggressive with pursuing the full urban application.
Thank you.
Well, I appreciate that explanation. So from a, I guess from a staff perspective, why were you not as aggressive because of the industrial zone? Is that correct? And so is it, is this type of plan like a good transition, you think?
That's staff's position, that this is a moderated outcome that helps the transition between the CS zone, but the policy located on the south side of Centennial. It helps this site transition to the industrial area. It gives us a presence at the corner. The building is oriented to the corner. It improves the streetscape on both abutting public right-of-ways. And so we felt like this SP gave us that moderation. The parking area, while it's to the side of the retail, it is shrouded by required landscaping, so it's not out in the open, visible to the public right-of-way. So yes, the short answer is yes. We felt like this was a moderated outcome.
Can you go back to the, I guess, the overall overhead picture of the area? Yeah, I just wanted to see how much streetscape there was. I know this looks like it's done in the fall or winter, but can you go back to the other, the streetscape piece?
I'm sorry, site plan?
Yeah, the site plan. It seems like there's a lot of improvements with sidewalks and trees and much more urban feel, so I feel pretty good about the plan, and I appreciate the explanation on the transition. Thank you.
Well, I'm curious about the T4 also. I have a couple of things I wanted to ask about. One, is the second, are the two entry points required by Public Works? I mean, could there have been an entry point on Centennial Boulevard and not on 51st, which in my mind would therefore allow the smaller building to be closer to 51st and also not have cars coming and going where the big oil trucks are coming and going as much because they have Centennial as their access? Or did Public Works require the second entry?
No, I don't think Public Works required the second access. I think having the two access points when you abut two public streets provides for better circulation through the site. It doesn't concentrate access at one point on one particular street. I can't speak for Public Works as to how they might regulate access. They did recommend approval of this site plan. Again, because it's district industrial policy, we weren't aggressive with pursuing those urban outcomes. Not as aggressive as certainly we would have been if it did have that urban mixed-use corridor policy.
Okay. Can you go back to the policy picture? Are we considering south, nor, excuse me, north of Centennial to change to T4? Are we looking at any of that policy in general? Next?
I think that's a broader, community-wide discussion, so I really can't speak on that. That's something that our staff would have to work with the community as a whole to talk about.
Well, one concern I had, which I think that your notes answer, but I just want to sort of say it for the record, kind of, about industrial property. We've just taken Site 108 in our consent agenda from industrial to solid residential. We didn't factor in any sort of mixed-use or commercial possibility, and my understanding is because it's so surrounded by other residential and it's far enough off, probably 51st, that that's warranted. I'm reluctant to quickly let industrial erode because there's, there is a limited amount of industrial in the city. And I happen to think that even small industrial sites are good because in this internet age and research and development, and there are a lot of small businesses that do big things, and they don't necessarily need giant spaces. So to only say big industrial tracts everywhere is not necessarily a direction we want to always go. So with that caution in mind, my first thought was, gosh, here we're about to do it again on this corner. Should we do it? But I do read in the notes that because the SP establishes the, because it is this D district, it establishes the future ability for proposed buildings to be used as warehouses. So even though we're saying today that we're building, this site is going to build retail, it could transition into some internet business that is using it more as a warehouse. I mean, so it is still keeping a transitional possibility. And maybe that's another argument, as I'm saying this as I'm speaking, but maybe that's another argument for not being so aggressive on the T4 on this site because it's a corner. You know, we just got to think about what we want to do with all of this. You know, we just got to think about what we want to do with all of this. If north of Centennial really is going to evolve into T4, then we should look at it later as a big policy change, but then we need to really be thoughtful of what we're doing with the rest of the industrial property. I just, as us in our policy thinking, I want to be sure we just don't let industrial keep going away. And when we do, when we do undo it, keep in mind these possibilities of mixed use, so that it can kind of go either way like this one is. So, because of that caveat, I think I can support it.
Stewart?
I think Andre's point is well made, that we do not need to be a county that does not have significant industrial zoning, and that part I agree with. I think this, this makes sense, the more I think about it, because of all the reasons we've talked about, but I don't think if we approve this, it should be taken as instructions to the staff to work on making all this IR go away. Anyway, I think we've had a pretty thorough discussion, and if you're ready for a motion or move?
Ready for a motion.
We approve staff recommendation.
Motion second, approve staff recommendations, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Ready for item number 14.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, this is item number 14 on your agenda. This is a request to rezone 6.1 acres of property located on the west side of 57th Avenue between California and Louisiana Avenue. The subject, the request is to rezone the property from its current designation of CS to one of RM20-A. Staff's recommendation is approval. As, as you'll see, the site is currently occupied by a collection of buildings and used as a lumberyard slash sawmill. It's an active use operating probably today. You'll also note that this site is clustered in with a collection of non-residential uses, warehouses to the north and west, vacant commercially zoned land to the southwest, but it's also up against a residential neighborhood to the east. Again, staff's recommendation is to approve. As I just noted, the property is currently zoned CS, it's in that cluster of non-residential zonings. The industrial restrictive zoning is located to the west, and you have CS zoning to the north and southwest, but you've also got some office zoning to the, to the northeast of the site. The surrounding neighborhood to the east and south generally is zoned R6 for one and two family residential. However, within that neighborhood, you'll also find a collection of churches and schools and such. The policy guiding land use decisions for this property is urban neighborhood maintenance. It's a land use policy that's residential in nature. It guides land use decisions and requires outcomes that are consistent with the surrounding context of existing neighborhoods. It allows for a range of housing types and residential zoning districts. It's important to note, too, that on top of the urban neighborhood maintenance policy, this site, as well as those non-conforming or non-residential zoning districts to the north and west, are guided by a special policy in the West Nashville Community Plan. It's a special policy that acknowledges their non-conforming zoning, as well as their non-conforming land uses, and it requires rezonings, any rezonings conform to the current policy. Again, the urban neighborhood maintenance policy allows a variety of residential zoning districts, including the requested RM20. It requires a design-based outcome for RM20 zonings, and so the -A gives us those design-based outcomes that this policy supports. So, the requested RM20-A zoning is consistent with this urban neighborhood maintenance policy with use of this special policy. As I noted, the RM20-A zoning district is a design-based policy. It establishes build-two zones as opposed to the traditional setbacks. For the RM20-A, it establishes a five to 15-foot build-two zone along all abutting streets. In this case, the build-two zone would be established on the north side abutting California and on the west side of the site abutting 57th Avenue. It would require new buildings to be located within this build-two zone, up to a certain percentage. Further, it would require new buildings to be oriented to the street. It would require principal access points on those buildings oriented to the street within that build-two zone. The RM20-A zoning district establishes a maximum building height within that build-two zone, the maximum building height is 30 feet, and then a 15-foot step back is required. And the ultimate, the maximum height that any building can go on this property is capped at 45 feet. That's a, that's a height restriction that is consistent with the residential zoning surrounding it, the R6 zoning district surrounding it. Additionally, with this RM20-A zoning, it requires that any and all parking be located behind or beside existing buildings, or new buildings for that matter. We feel like with this, with these design-based outcomes, the RM20-A zoning is consistent with that urban neighborhood maintenance policy. This zone change helps us, or it removes a non-conforming zoning from the middle of a neighborhood. It also paves the way for redevelopment of the site in a manner that's consistent with the residential character surrounding neighborhood, and gets rid of an industrial use in the middle of the neighborhood. So, again, it's consistent with this policy, and staff would recommend approval in conclusion.
Thank you. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant is allowed 10 minutes to make their case, and hold back two minutes maximum for the rebuttal.
Hello, thank you for giving me a few minutes. I'm Bill Hostetler with Craighead Development. The owners of this property were being hit by developers and called me and asked me to see what I could do with it, and I feel like it would be good for one of our town home developments, and working with the staff, hopefully I can get it zoned to RM20-A and build about 100 townhouses. And I'm going to reserve my time. I know there's some opposition here, and I'll save my two minutes in, unless y'all have any questions.
Any questions from commissioners? Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support?
I seem to be a majority of one. I am Marcia Stubbs. I live at the corner of Pennsylvania and 57th, right across from this property. I do not oppose the rezoning and development of the property. I just have a few little caveats, if you would. First, in terms of the traffic impact on the neighborhood, what is going to happen. Secondly, in the 19 years that I've lived there, I can remember once when the Metro Water came through and did something like a little rotor ruder on 57th. So, my question is, what is going to be the impact on our sewage and water, wastewater there? And in terms of any chemicals and stuff that are in the ground when all of this removing is going, how well, how that will be handled? But I know that you cannot put something in there that's going to look like the houses of the neighborhood. It's, the neighborhood is changing. That's not a problem for me. But I believe it would be good for the neighborhood to go ahead and change this into a residential area. The only real concern I have is with any of this is, as you take away the industrial places like this, you take away the jobs from an area where people don't have a lot of money.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come to the microphone. If you line up behind each other to the microphone, it saves some time for the commissioners.
Again, Jeremy Jeter, President of Nations Neighborhood Association, resident 5210 Illinois Avenue. On November 12th, we had our Neighborhood Association meeting where this rezoning request was presented. It was met with major concerns from all neighbors in attendance, including density, lack of a concise plan, no guarantees on building materials, quality, type of construction, no restrictions on percentage of rental units, and most importantly, the unwillingness to do an SP. An additional meeting was held with neighbors only, and the same concerns continued to be voiced. Rezoning was also widely discussed in our next-door site comprised of 350 neighbors. Same concerns were brought up there by all neighbors that commented. In conclusion, the neighborhood is 100% against a rezone from CS to RM20-A. However, the neighborhood would be willing to compromise on this project if an SP was done instead of the RM20-A. All of the large-scale development projects that are taking place in our neighborhood right now, including items 4B and 9 that are on the agenda this evening, are being done with an SP. We don't feel that this project should be any different. The SP gives the neighborhood proper protection, offers us a level of predictability on what the development will look like and how it will fit in with the neighborhood. An SP would also be a sign of good faith to the neighborhood and alleviate many of the concerns with the rezoning and the proposed development as it currently stands. The neighborhood is also content with leaving this site zoned CS if an SP cannot be put into place by the developer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Elizabeth Parrott, I'm the Secretary of the Nations Neighborhood Association, and I also live at 5707 Tennessee, which is about a block away from this development. As Jeremy already pointed out, our neighborhood is completely against this in its current situation. We would be willing to discuss SP. In fact, we've supported the ones he talked about already, and we're going to support the one, the development of 60 units that is right up to the west, which will be coming up in January, based on the SP that the developer has worked with, as on. My biggest concern, particularly being a block away, is the traffic impact of 100 townhomes. The streets aren't wide enough, the traffic signals, it took five years to get a stop sign on Tennessee. This is going to make it insane, and that one little block that I'm on between 57th and Moro, it's going to be a catastrophe of cars without a proper plan, SP, and so forth. So, we're very content leaving it CS in a lumberyard if we cannot get an SP with specific plans and concise materials and what he wants to do with it, not just a random 100 townhomes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Marisa Frank. I am a resident homeowner at 5305 Louisiana Avenue, just a few blocks from this piece of property, and I just wanted to say that I'm in favor of development of that parcel of land, but just like the rest of my neighbors, I would just like to know what it's going to be, so I'd like to see a specific plan for that.
Thank you.
Good evening. I certainly want to continue to voice the concerns of my neighbors, that without a specific plan, the neighborhood can't stand behind a project. I certainly support building, you know, restructuring that area in some way, but without some sort of SP to have the neighborhood's support, I certainly would like you to consider not approving it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello there, again, Frank Stabile, 5208 Kentucky Avenue, and I'm here along with everyone else rooting for an SP. Thanks.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant's got two minutes for rebuttal.
I'm still Bill Hostetler, and the A district's what we're supposed to incorporate some of the SP, the way I understand them. When discussing with Mr. Jeter, with Buddy on the phone, I wished he was here, we asked for a list of things he'd like to see in the SP, and he called Buddy back at that time and said he didn't want an SP. They want me to do 50 single families here, which doesn't allow enough money to pick a lumberyard up and move it. And so, 100 units works where we can afford, you know, it's going to be a million and a half or $2 million to pick an active lumberyard up and go find a new home. And I have to me, the traffic study will have to be done, because it's 100 units with Public Works. The sewer concerns on the first lady that was in support, all the sewer here flows down 58th Avenue, which is a right-of-way that's not shown on here, that's never been built, but I don't have a pointer, so I can't help you, but see 58th Avenue where it comes off of Tennessee, there's ample sewer at that point to handle the sewer, and I have any, I'll answer any questions y'all have.
Any questions? Seeing none?
Thank you.
Motion to close the public hearing. Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Jeff?
No comments.
Derek?
No comments.
Greg?
I always hate to be the first to speak on this commission, or might open me up to something, but it seems, though, that, you know, the neighbors are willing to compromise and talk, and it seems like the developer is willing to compromise and talk, too. You know, personally, my own personal opinion is, you know, this particular use is a little heavy for the area, in that, you know, there could be something there that could be a great development. So, I think that it's not quite ripe yet for, to be at this body, that's my own personal opinion, and what I would like to personally see as a commissioner is potentially some type of SP worked out with the developer and the neighbors. That's my own personal opinion, because I think that, I don't know exactly where this is at, and I think that it could be a really good thing for the neighborhood, and I think it could be a good thing for the lumberyard as well. So, that's my opinion, you know, so I'm, I would suggest potentially if the developer is, is ready, could do a deferral, that would be my suggestion, so I'll hear what everybody else has to say.
Andre?
The reason that I went, one of, another reason I agreed on the last one to approve was it was in a policy area that was still industrial, and it hadn't been, we hadn't discussed its change yet, it wasn't T4. This area to me, my question is, CS to pure residential, when we're saying that we want walkable neighborhoods with opportunities for commercial neighborhood items, you know, places to go so people can have something to walk to, to buy something, my question is, why isn't it mixed-use? Why, wouldn't we want to make a transition, which we say this does, from IR to residential or in general, we're, if we keep getting rid of commercial zoning, there's nothing to walk to, to shop, except to go borrow a cup of sugar from your neighbor? I mean, you, we need to remember that in these neighborhoods that we're trying to say are, these policies, we need to have areas within the neighborhood where you can walk and meet your neighbors, or have your shopping, or do what you do. And so, I guess, I should have asked this question, maybe I can ask you now, did you consider mixed-use and could you consider mixed-use? Would it seem like a dollar income would be good from a possibility to?
Andre, if this was on a main thoroughfare, I believe that would work. This is kind of inside the neighborhood? It's, I believe?
Can you come to the mic?
I'm sorry?
It wouldn't survive.
I believe West Nashville will become a walkable neighborhood, but you have to get some density with people living there before they have money to spend to create the retail.
The staff may have another answer, too.
Okay, then I'll sit down.
So, is it because, I mean, no, but it can sort, no, you can sit down, but I mean, I think that might go with what you're saying. So, you said the special policy, now would you explain that, please?
Well, the special policy guides rezonings, and it specifically calls for any rezonings to be of a district that's consistent with the policy. This urban neighborhood maintenance policy supports only residential zoning districts, ranging from low-intensity R6 all the way up to RM20, and it asks for that design-based outcome with the RM20 zoning district, which that's what this request is. In terms of proximity to the commercial, you still have quite a fair bit of commercial zoning within walking distance of this site. There is the commercial node down on Moro, and then, of course, you have the commercial corridor in Centennial to the north, and it has, you know, moves north and it also moves to the, to the east. And then, six blocks away, you have 51st Avenue, which we hope is transitioning to an urban corridor, commercial corridor as well.
So, then it is matching the policy of, what they want the policy to be in the?
This zone change request is consistent with the policy.
That helps. Thanks.
Yeah, I think it's a little difficult to see from just this part, but there's a number of neighborhood corners here that are for neighborhood business, and as Dwayne said, both Centennial and said, both Centennial and 51st are major commercial or mixed-use corridors.
Stuart?
This is a little bit of a when worlds collide type thing to me. I mean, it was just a few years ago, we'd never heard of SP, and I know a lot of folks now think we're a commission that won't approve anything but SP, which has a lot of implications for the freedom that developers and might want. I actually like the part of this that is multifamily. I fear one of our problems in urban Nashville is losing diversity of housing stock. This, of course, isn't currently, but would add housing stock, contrary to what norm has been. So I like and hope, hope we do continue to have different kinds of housing options in West Nashville, including multifamily. But I also see that this is one huge change with a lot of uncertainties, and I can see, I can see that SP in some ways is what I might want to see if I were the council member. I'll continue to think as we hear from the audience.
Hunter?
You know, the A districts are pretty new, and I really think this is a perfect example of how the A districts are intended to be utilized, because you've got a, you know, an older urban neighborhood that, with, you know, some industrial sort of, that was, I suspect at one time, maybe there were houses in this whole area, but you've got kind of a pocket of industrial right in the middle of a major residential area, and, you know, there could be opportunities with some of these other industrial properties to redevelop into mixed-use development. And I agree with Andre that, you know, we need to be sure we've got some areas and pockets for commercial development, but I think the staff pointed out that along Centennial and down at the, I guess, the western, you know, that corner down there, I'm not sure what streets those are, but I just think this is a great way to transition from industrial to the single-family, with some multifamily, provides infill opportunities, we're going to talk a lot about that later, and I think it's a good opportunity to, you know, and again, just to reiterate, the purpose of the A districts, as I understood it, one of the purposes was to offer developers an alternative to going through the extensive SP process, to help provide some opportunity without what we know is a very expensive and labor-intensive process with the SP. So I think this is a good example.
Judy?
That was going to be my comment, that I know that SP is costly, but I think that this is a very good project for this area.
Bill?
This does look like a wonderful project for the area, but I did want to ask the staff, during the early deliberations on this, did you bring up the SP category for zone consideration on this?
I can't speak for preliminary pre-application discussions, but when this application was made, our first inclination is to look at the land use policy. And when we see that special policy, and we look at, we see an opportunity to take an industrially utilized, non-conforming zone property closer to the policy, and we can use the A district to get some design-based outcomes, that's where we found our ability to support the request. And so, no, we didn't really discuss the use of an SP, because we felt like the A district got us what we felt like was important in transitioning the site.
Okay, so you're comfortable with the dash A being a kind of a middle ground, I guess you'd call it, between the SP and the regular?
I think you can say that. It gives us the orientation and building placement. It is a multifamily development, so when, when it comes in for redevelopment, they will have to put in sidewalks, make street improvements as well. So, we felt like collectively, this zoning and the development process would get us the outcomes we felt would help this property transition properly.
Does the A also include materials?
No, none of our straight zoning districts require materials be limited or utilized.
But the SP would?
Every SP is different, and so in some neighborhoods, in some parts of Davidson County, we're very concerned about architecture, we're very concerned about very specific outcomes. In other parts of Davidson County, we're more concerned with traffic circulation or land uses permitted. So, there are some SPs where we do restrict materials or require certain materials, but there are definitely SPs, residential SPs out there where we, where we didn't restrict materials.
But you're still comfortable with what you've recommended?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Walter?
Yeah, I got a question. Are all of this property, this RS, CS, is it active? I mean, is it actually active and in business?
It's, it's an active lumberyard. I was out there yesterday, and there were forklifts moving pallets of cut wood across the site.
So what else is active besides the lumberyard?
I'm sorry?
What else is active besides the lumberyard?
It's categorized as a lumberyard slash sawmill. Just thinking about what a sawmill is, I have certain images that come to mind, but I don't want to predict or try to define what that is. So that's what it's used as now. That's, that's a non-conforming use even with the CS zoning. With that CS zoning, it could be any assortment of commercial uses. It could be reused for any assortment of commercial uses. So right now, the only active use that I'm aware of is a lumberyard slash sawmill.
Well, we now ask that, because in some other areas, when you got these type businesses and they become inactive, also at the same time, it's a drag on the community itself and a lot of community, and that's why I was asking, is it active or just, you know, active sometimes, been used, on the verge of closing, but we don't know that.
I don't know that, but it is an active lumberyard.
Just above the CS, you got a lot, 334, 333, those commercials, as well as all the residential places. You got one on the other end, 249 and 247.
So, the CS zoning extends from this property north to Centennial Boulevard. So, yes, those parcels, 334, 333, 259, and 270, those are commercially zoned as well, as are the two parcels located immediately south of this property, and that, that's an active warehouse use.
Okay. Well, appreciate that. And going back to the SP, the SP, even though it's sometimes a good destination, and however it is costly, and at the same time, an SP can always be amended, pretty much when, you know, coming back through here. So, even though you say I'm going to put this here, or this particular item, it can be amended at some point in time, isn't that right?
Sure. SPs can be amended, just like current zoning districts can be changed. It would have to go through a full hearing process through the planning commission and council, but yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Stuart, you had your light on?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. Greg?
See, that's what I got for talking first. But let me ask a couple of questions. So, just for clarification, on this A designation, you had spoken of design-based zoning, so what, what designs would it entail? So, for my own information.
It's, it's design related to layout, and so the A district would require new buildings to be positioned within that required build-to zone. So the A district establishes a build-to zone, as opposed to our standard or traditional setback requirements, and then once you put a building behind that setback, it can go anywhere. The A district is very specific. It establishes a 5 to 15-foot build-to zone along any and all budding streets. So in this case, along California to the north and along 57th Avenue to the east, there would be a 5 to 15-foot build-to zone. With any new construction, new buildings would have to cover up a minimum of 25% of that frontage. So for math's sake, if, if that frontage is 200 feet on the north side, a building would have to be located within a minimum of 50 feet of that frontage. But on top of that, being that this has got a corner, a street intersection, the A district would actually require that those, that any new building be pushed up into that corner, be built to the corner. So, so it gives us that street wall that we're looking for in these urban environments. So establishes the build-to zone, requires buildings, new construction, to be located within that build-to zone. Then it requires all of those new buildings be oriented to the street. So with, on that facade facing the street, you would have to have a primary pedestrian entrance on that facade, so that, again, there's a, there's a relationship established between that building and the street and future sidewalks. You couldn't build a warehouse with no door on that facade and essentially turn your back on the public realm.
Let me ask you this, do tree density still applies, you still have to have sidewalks, I mean, all of those things still apply?
Landscaping requirements still apply.
Landscaping requirements. So really, it's only, at this point, material that an SP could help with?
The purpose of the A districts was to reduce the need for everybody to do an SP, and you're absolutely right. I mean, it deals with the key elements that the commission and the staff have typically been in concern with, where the building is located, what types of buildings, the height of the building. It doesn't deal with, with materials, and to be honest, the materials are typically something that's a condition that council members and the community do not, the commission has rarely placed a material condition on it, so.
Does this, does this policy, I mean, does this rezoning, does it meet the T4 urban neighborhood policy? It does?
Yes.
See, now I'm changing my own mind through all, through your discussion. So, thank you for that. And then I have one last question on the amount of units. They said they were going to build 100 units, is that, this, it could go up to, I read here, 122 units, but they're, they're doing 100 units, is that?
Right. The raw zoning, the RM20, given the acreage of the site, 6.1 acres, would permit up to 122 units. But that doesn't account for parking requirements, that doesn't account for any stormwater requirements for onsite detention, so that's the max that the zoning would allow. Once you start calculating in other site-specific requirements, it may in fact come out to where that number's quite a bit lower. But I can't speak to that with this property.
But that would be controlled under the zoning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Hunter?
I have one quick question. Does the special policy for this whole industrial area here talk about improving street connectivity? We've got sort of a?
Let me, let me try and answer that, because it's important to understand, I mean, we've been working with several developers on this area, including the 239 IR people. We looked at street connectivity, we've tried to, we've worked with Public Works in terms of whether you connect in at 58th, do you connect over to Louisiana, those things, and after we, after we worked through those, and it's a reason we didn't go with an SP, we felt like that there's extensive street connectivity in here, and it really wouldn't benefit to add additional connectivity. The 58th intersection is a very awkward intersection. In fact, I think we've been in discussions about actually abandoning that right away. I don't think Public Works wants it, and it's, it's just a very awkward intersection.
And I was just going to point out too, for the neighborhood's sake, in terms of traffic, that potentially, the study that, I guess, Public Works, maybe whoever does, shows that with the rezoning, there's, you know, the potential traffic volumes created by the existing zoning compared to the proposed zoning decreases the potential daily trips by over 8, over 8,000 trips. So, in terms of impact to the neighborhood, or potential impact to the neighborhood from, compared to the existing zoning, that's a pretty significant, significant reduction compared to what could be done under the current zoning. So, I'm ready to make a motion.
I just want to say one thing for the record, since, after I made that comment, I've circled every single commercial site. It's hard to see on the aerial, but there are a lot of commercial sites still right around this property, and so I feel like we just, as, as we go forward, there are the small CSs and CNs and the existing commercial around this, and even the office zoning that's near it. We just want to be careful with what we do with it as we move forward and keep thinking about transitional neighborhoods. So, I think it's exciting, there's still a lot of commercial over there.
Hunter? Judy?
Yeah, I just want to say with Hunter's comment, that there'll still be a traffic study done, correct? So with, yeah, so with that in mind, and I'll make the motion that we approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion second to approve staff recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For the audience, the agenda for the regulations will be as follows. Doug Sloan will make a presentation of the history of interpretation since 2011. Legal will make their presentation, and there'll be the two 15-minute period of time for Tier 1 and Tier 2. At the end of that 30-minute period of Tier 1 and Tier 2, the commission will take a 15-minute recess.
You might want to tell people that there's people over there.
There are seats over here on the southern side, if you're having to stand.
Doug?
We're ready. All right, good evening, commission. I'm going to, as the chairman just pointed out, I'm going to just briefly give you a review of how we got to, to why this subject's before you tonight. Section 35 is written, was adopted in May of 2011, and several weeks ago, I met with a couple of the council members who have had significant infill development in their districts, and they were concerned both at the level of infill development that's happened in their district, as well as the, the way that staff was interpreting Section 35 of the subdivision regulations. After reviewing the language of the subdivision regulations and staff recommendation from the May 2011 agenda, I determined that Section 35 should be applied differently than it had to that date. So, do you want to reemphasize that it was applied and has been applied? 35 has been applied consistently from its passage in May of 2011 to today. But as I said, after meeting with those council members, after looking at the, the language within the subdivision regulations and looking at staff recommendation back from May of 2011, I made a determination that, in fact, it should have been applied in a two-tier evaluation, and that is that 35-1, subsection 1, I believe, calls for each infill subdivision application to go through two criteria. The first one is whether or not the lots to be created are generally comparable with the surrounding lots. And if you'll look at, and we have there in front of you, Section 1, the first portion of Section 1 really just goes into describing existing neighborhoods. In areas previously subdivided and predominantly developed, residential lots resulting from a proposed subdivision within the R and RS zoning districts on an existing street, and this is the part that I'm emphasizing, shall be generally comparable with the surrounding lots. The second portion of Section 35 then goes on to state criteria for determining comparability, and then lays out how you do that, but essentially, it states that you're to evaluate the proposed lots against the policy for the land and that's proposed to be subdivided along with the zoning. The way that the department has evaluated that since May of 2011 was just that way, to say, well, statement, the Section 1 is making a statement that they should be generally comparable, and Section 2 is telling us how to make that determination. I felt that there was actually two different evaluations that's going on. The first one was, is it comparable to the surrounding lots that are in the neighborhood? Make an evaluation there, then move into how you look at the policy and the zoning for the properties. And that's what was presented, the cases that were to be subdivided, the applications that were before the commission at the last meeting, the recommendations from staff were based on my determination that we should be evaluating in that two-tier system. After our last meeting, I had a chance to meet with the legal department and talk to them about the interpretation that we've had since May of 2011 and how it's been applied with all the cases up to the date, and then my interpretation of what 35-1 and 2 call for. The advice that we were given at that time was that the staff's determination- The advice that we were given at that time was that the staff's determination that it's really just a single analysis that's built under 3.5-2 is a reasonable review, a reasonable reading of this policy, and that we should continue to apply it in the same way that it's been applied since its inception. So now, how the legal department came to that conclusion, I'll hand off to Ms. Jones to explain.
Thank you. Needless to say, when Mr. Sloan came up with an interpretation, with him being my predecessor in this position at the legal department, and a very fine attorney, we certainly looked at it very carefully in trying to decide what to advise the planning commission. He's told you, and basically described it as a one-tier versus a two-tier approach. And so we looked at the regulation, and we looked at how the, how it had been interpreted in the past by the planning department, and we looked at how it should be interpreted in the future without any kind of changes to the regulations. And our reason for supporting how staff has interpreted it since 2011 is really twofold. One is just applying basic rules of statutory interpretation. The first rule of statutory interpretation is basically, look at the plain language of the statute or the language that is in question, and determine whether or not that language is actually, whether or not it's clear, or whether it's unambiguous. And in looking at the language and how it reads, we read Subregulation 3-5-1 as being the general overarching goal, and then Subreg 3-5-2 as being, as describing how you ought to meet that goal. It's saying that you should, they should be generally comparable. And then it's giving you a criteria to apply to determine whether it is generally comparable. And that's our reading of the regulations based on the plain language. We don't think it is, while we certainly understand how someone could possibly read it differently, and certainly understand the argument there, we think the better reading of it is to read it as the staff has actually applied it since 2011. The second reason is that we think it offers consistency in the approach that has been rendered by this commission, rather than changing that position without a change in the subregs at this juncture. So again, I think it's twofold. One is the plain reading, the plain language of the actual regs themselves, and two is how has it been consistently applied by this commission? Let's see. We think that, well, let me say this first. Herefore, aside from these five cases that are on the agenda today, this commission has consistently applied a one-tier, well, this department, rather, has applied a one-tier approach. And to the extent that that has been approved by the commission, this commission has applied that one-tier approach. So we are saying that we think the best legal position for consistency's sake, as well as the plain language, is to continue in that vein until and unless the board decides to change the policy.
I think there's one more thing that I need to add, and that is that the next five cases on the agenda that deal with this very issue, the staff recommendation is built upon the one-tier evaluation. We are, the recommendations we're giving to you are consistent with the interpretation that we've used since May of 2011.
Prior to the public hearing, just a clarification. The legal department's interpretation seems to be at odds with the staff analysis from 2011 on more than one occasion. Could you address that?
I can address that. Again, I think that goes back to basic rules of statutory interpretation in terms of, that would be equivalent to the legislative history behind why a rule was adopted. If you already, if the plain language is unambiguous and it is clear, you never reach that part in the analysis. Now, even so, if you were to reach that, I think there's still an argument that you have to look at what was being done in 2011. You can't look at it prospectively and compare it to what is being done after its adoption. You have to look at what was in place prior to 2011. That's the comparison that's actually being made. It says it's more, that the new regulation is going to be more qualitative and less quantitative. That's a comparison to the previous one, which was more quantitative and required a more complex analysis under law comparability. So I think that that's how you reconcile that with what you're doing currently. And I think because you've adopted a regulation that in and of itself is more qualitative and less quantitative, the regulation itself is, then your application of that regulation as written in its plain language is still consistent with the minutes and the legislative history, even though I really don't think you had to go that far in the analysis for this particular one.
Okay. It's, we'll talk about that as we go forward. I just wanted to get your take on that.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we're now ready to hear from the Tier One supporters. And y'all in agreement as to who's going to speak, and who's the spokesman? Is it one spokesman or more than one?
How many do they have?
Big pardon?
I think there's more of us than certainly standing.
Okay, we're going to start the clock, and then before I go ahead and be ready to follow one another.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, my name is Tom White. I represent the applicant on item number 21, but I'm here specifically to address the commission on the sole issue we're now to address, which is Tier One versus Tier Two. That issue may well be determinative of numbers 20 through 24 on your agenda today. But I start by saying, the comment by Metro Legal, in my opinion, is right on the target here. The language that's always used in a statutory construction is, what is the plain meaning of the language? And here in paragraph one, it is very clear, shall be generally comparable with the surrounding lots, period. Now, I would ask this commission to consider here for just a moment, people have come to this mic and said, there's no comparability, that's why we need to have Tier Two. That's absolutely not correct. Here's the language, you've got to be generally comparable. What they're arguing to you is, we don't like generally comparable. We'd like to have a more defined definition. So let's be clear about what their proposal is. When they come here and say before you, there's no comparability in the current ordinance, that is absolutely not correct. Now, the next thing that I'll make a comment to you about is that if, in fact, there's something to be suggested or thought about to better define that, that may well be the issue of number 25, which is the proposed subdivision regulations. But nobody can stand here before you and say, the staff here for two and a half years didn't use comparability. It's there, and they used it on every occasion that I'm aware of. No one can stand here and say that you, as planning commission members, didn't use comparability. You looked at this for two and a half years, period. So the arguments put out by Metro Legal, in my opinion, are not able to be overcome by anybody arguing against this, or frankly, by the commission. Again, is it plain language? Lawyers argue all the time about language being clear or not clear. I don't have to argue a whole lot about language that says, shall be generally comparable. In the legal world, shall is a mandatory term. It's not will, it's not may, it's not suggesting, it is shall. That's a mandatory thing, which the staff had to follow and did follow for two and a half years. This commission followed for two and a half years. Now, with respect to the issue before you today, Metro Legal has been asked to come in and give this advice. I've appeared before this commission for close to 40 years. I don't know of one time that this commission has ignored the advice of the legal department, period. And it shouldn't be started today. It's absolutely clear, they've been asked about it, and somebody from Metro Legal can respond a little closer. This was not looked at briefly. It's my understanding that the upper echelon of the Metro Legal department looked at this very carefully, with Saul Solomon, the head of the legal department, and others. Again, that can be answered here, but this was not done on the fly. And when it was looked at, it became perfectly obvious what the answer was. Now, I've talked about the legal interpretation, which I think is binding. I want to address the matter of consistency and fairness and equity here. If you're a member of the public, and you buy property in Davidson County, and you look at these regulations, and you see that the way it had been interpreted down here by the staff and by the planning commission since May of 2011, two and a half years, why would you not think it was equitable and fair for somebody to rely on those interpretations? Buy property, spend money, engineers, attorneys, land use events, you would clearly want consistency. If you want to change that, it ought to be prospective, certainly not retroactive. Now, I want to mention here for a minute, too, that when we looked at this over the last two and a half years, I don't know that I heard until very recently that there was even a possibility of a different interpretation. And again, I've got all the respect for the people that have looked at this, but there's no dispute but that Metro Legal has looked at it and been unequivocal in what they've said to you. And as I said, the only thing that I stress that the legal department really didn't say in their analysis was the term shall. It's just a mandatory word, it's important to lawyers, it's important to judicial construction. Now, I want to talk for a minute, too, about Nashville Next. Nashville Next has probably been the main focus of planning in this city for the last 18 months. It's taken up a great deal of time, Mr. Bernhardt, and a great number of other people on the staff, any number of significant neighborhood meetings. Those reports have consistently said infill is the lifeblood of Nashville moving forward. All the reports indicate that Davidson County alone should have an additional 200,000 people within the next 10 years. Infill is the lifeblood, and it's very basic. The infrastructure's in place. It costs this city far less for that, period. And what does it do? It stops sprawl, which is clearly something planners are totally opposed to. So as you looked at the reports for Nashville Next, over and over again, it's totally replete. Infill development is the key, it's the lifeblood, that's what, part why Nashville is thriving right now, as so many cities around the country are dying on the vine. Infill development. Districts that have taken place with infill development, you look at the midtown area here, this planning commission considered a change to the midtown area within the last six months. It has turned midtown upside down with respect to development because of infill. Now, we talk about other articles of why infill and this type of consistency is important. I'll also mention to you, pick up the Nashville Post, the online article today, just goes on and on about how infill is the lifeblood of Nashville, what's happened. The comment made in one of the presentations by Doug Sloan was that infill is essential to the health of Nashville. It's there. Now, if somebody wants to change comparability, want to do something prospectively, that's issue 25 on the agenda. It has nothing to do with whether or not we apply Tier One or Tier Two today. Now, I asked the commission also to consider, item nine was heard by you today, had to do with the property on Centennial Boulevard. You heard from a number of people that came to the mic and said, I live across the street, that's important to me, I look at this, I want to talk about walkability, I want to talk about other issues. Under the Tier Two analysis as proposed, there's no input from people across the street. There's five lots on either side, nobody across the street. I can't give a better example for why Tier Two may not be the best approach, but that's not it today. The approach today is, for your members, should Tier One or should Tier Two approach? Now, in looking at the comments that have been made, I know some council members have made the comment, if this is the way this is going to be interpreted, I'll just downzone my entire district. Now, I think that's very irresponsible, because frankly, there's a lot of people in a lot of these districts that think infill development is a very favored thing, period. And also, if you want to talk about figuring a solution out here, the solution is not throwing the baby out with the bathwater, the solution is continuing to work on number 25. And we'll deal with that, but you saw eight or nine letters from council members today saying this particular item 25 should be deferred, it's a rush to judgment, this ought to be looked at and very carefully analyzed. Now, my comment is, Tier Two may have some merits to it in some points. It may. There are perhaps some areas where the two-tier approach may well be applicable. Those should be dealt with as we focus in on that matter going forward. But to basically say, we're going to ignore two and a half years of what we've been doing down here, the consistency, we're going to ignore the legal advice, which is unequivocal, is something this commission has never done. Now, I'm closing on this notice. I'm urging you, follow the staff recommendation. As you heard Doug Sloan, their recommendation now is, you follow Tier One. If you follow Tier One on numbers 20 through 24, you approve them. That's clearly the staff recommendation. There's no, if you apply Tier Two, I mean, think about this, well, maybe if they apply Tier Two somewhere down the road in some form, maybe it ought to affect the developments here today. That makes no sense. It makes no legal sense, it makes no equitable sense. If you're going to do something, do it constructively in the process, we've already got underway. So I urge you to follow the good advice of the planning department, I urge you to follow the good advice of the legal department, and how about a little fairness and equity for people that bought property, relied on this, and have looked at the consistency from this commission for two and a half years? I respectfully ask for your courtesies, do not apply anything retroactively. Something's going to happen on Tier Two, let's do it prospectively and do it in the right way. Thank you for your time, thank you for your courtesies, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm Roy Dell, and it's hard to follow that up. Anything I say would just diminish, probably, from what Tom has already said. I, too, have been working in Metro for 40 years, although I'm a little younger and better-looking than Tom. I agree, I mean, when I was reading this, and quite honestly, over the past, since this has been applied in 2011, I didn't even recognize or realize that we were doing anything different. I think the staff has done a great job applying this rule, as they have, on everything since this was adopted in 2011. But when I read it, you know, you've got the criteria for determining comparability, but right above it, it says generally comparable. So I don't think it's a perfunctory process, and I think the staff has to have a little flexibility here. So I was excited what Legal said, because you have to look at what it says here, and it says generally comparable. I trust the planning commission staff, and I trust this commission, and I'm concerned that you may establish some rules that would be such, so perfunctory, that I may come before you with a subdivision that may meet these comparability requirements, but simply shouldn't be done. And maybe that, you don't have the flexibility to deal with that. So I think the way this is written right now, generally comparable, is very good. If you want to change it, I think that's fine, as far as the comparability rules, but there will still be generally comparable. Again, as Tom had mentioned, to make any interpretation change for the five items, I guess, that are coming up on the agenda, I think would be unfair. Like Tom had mentioned, infill is the lifeblood of the city. My company went through a huge struggle over the past two, three years, because we did predominantly subdivision developments, which you don't see anymore, and now, just about everything on your agenda are infill developments that we're doing. So we're very concerned about that, and I would hope that you would listen to the legal department and follow their recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Kristi Bradley, and I'm coming to you not as a legal person at all, but as a realtor, as a homeowner in a maintenance neighborhood, as a longtime Nashvillian, and a mom who's vested in the future of this city. And I don't understand why we're going to change a system that's working extremely well. Unlike most cities, we're thriving and growing, and I don't see a need to fix something that's broken. To change to a two-tier system, we'll put more restrictions on growth, and as far as I know, the city's been consistent with their belief that we need to move forward and we need to grow. A one-tier system was put in place with a specific intention in mind, and it's worked. So far, it's been successful. There's other cities who would love to be as successful as we are, growing. We can't move forward as a city if we continue adding layers of restrictions on ourselves. And most cities would love to have new construction booming in the heart of the city, and here we are, trying to further restrict it. And I just don't understand why.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brent Craig. I live at 2013A Castleman Drive. I am a Green Hills resident, and I support council's recommendations. I wanted to read a couple of excerpts from the Nashville Next, it's posted online, about the vision of Nashville and what the community has done extensive research and demographic studies on what the housing market should be. The first one is that 51% of residential land in Davidson County is RS zoning, which states it does not support the growth that is needed for the next 10 years or for Nashville Next. And I want to read directly, that talks about the key elements of what we're, the neighborhood department, I think that's off page 10, in the Nashville Next, under the Housing Department. "A key element of the neighborhood conservation is to achieving proper mix and distribution of the various neighborhood elements. When conflicts arise between different land uses, the use which more closely corresponds with the long-range planning goals in the area should prevail. Certain circumstances may arise which development may have detrimental effects on a neighborhood is sanctioned..." is sanctioned because it will benefit the city as a whole. The construction of an airport is one such example where the benefit to the city outweighs the impact of a certain neighborhood." I think that when we look at the application of the way that the one-tier policy has been for the last two years, it has taken and will take the city as a whole into account when it looks at a broader section of a community rather than the five lots to one side or the other. The same way that my fellow citizens are asking other developers to look across the street and look down the street and look four blocks over, when they're asking for the previous developments to be assessed in that very manner. But as we approach this, we're restricting the residential developers or the infill developers to be something, to a different criteria to what we're using just a few minutes ago. So I will respectfully request that you guys maintain council's recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. The supporters for the tier two now will have 15 minutes. Y'all, you've worked out who's going to speak?
Yes.
Hey, please, the commissioners, I'm Carter Todd, again, the councilperson for Green Hills, and we're not asking you to change anything. We're not asking for a one-tier test or a two-tier test. Those are the planning staff's terms, those are their terms. What we're asking you to do is very simple, to define the term comparability broader than just that very narrow definition that's in there. And I'm going to get to statutory construction in just a second. But all we're saying is, don't change anything, we're not asking for a change here today. We're just saying, determine comparability the way you have previously. And those in the audience that think we ought to determine comparability the way we have in the past and the way, I'm going to lay it out, raise your hand, so you can see the people in Nashville that have come out here today, raise your hand or shout. You can see, we have a lot of people here, and so, so, let me first address the issue of statutory construction and what Susan Jones, the council for the city, said. You know, that's one of the lawyers there, like Tom White said, I did call Saul Solomon, he's the head guy, and he said he's not really familiar with it. So it's not true that the head of the legal department of theirs looked at it. The person that looked at it is Tom Cross, and he called me back. And here's what Tom Cross said, he acknowledged that clearly the planning commission could go either way if it so chose. He did say there were rumors of possible litigation, and for that reason, he thought it might be safer to go with a very, very narrow reading and let the developers do what they want. I don't think the staff or this commission should be bullied into taking a particular reading when either reading is acceptable, and in fact, the reading that includes comparability is preferable from a number of standpoints. Now, Ms. Jones told you all that in May of 2011, when this was adopted, you've been consistent. That's not the case. I don't have, I think Council Lady Evans may point out, but there are a number of cases from early 2011, when you did look at, you defined comparability as more than just subpart two. So when you talk about statutory construction, I'm a lawyer of practice for 30 years, if I had written this, I would say in subpart one, general comparability as defined below in subpart two. This says general comparability, and for a long time, y'all have looked at, does it fit in with the character of the street? You know, does it fit in with other lots? And if you look at number two, everything's going to pass that. That's not the intent. And if you want to look at the intent, go back to what the staff said when they adopted this. The staff told you all that, they said, "Lot comparability is proposed to be modified and renamed infill subdivisions with new standards to ensure infill subdivisions complement existing development." It has to complement existing development. The new standards are more qualitative. Qualitative goes way beyond, you know, than quantitative. Qualitative includes lots of factors. They're telling you, look at other factors, and it should be more in line with the new community character manual. "The planning commission would retain the ability to evaluate infill subdivision to ensure consistency with the surrounding area's character." Based on that, a lot of people in the council didn't pitch a big fight back then. We thought, hey, you're going to kind of keep doing what you've been doing. And for the first few cases in 2011, you did that, and then you kind of wandered away from that, and then we pointed it out to Doug Sloan, and he came back to that. So it's the best reading, it makes sense, it's what you've done in the past, and it's fair. And Tom White's the best real estate lawyer in Nashville. He would never let his clients close on buying a piece of property unless they had the applicable zoning letters on the table. To sit up here and tell you this is not fair to people who have bought property and reliance on this, this requires a change. This requires coming to you all and saying, "I want to subdivide my lot," just because it's, you know, you're not necessarily going to get it. And good lawyers, I've closed hundreds of real estate deals in this town, I would never let one of my clients close on a piece of property without having a letter on the table. And I know Mr. White wouldn't do that either. And to tell you all, this is not fair today, don't do it this way because it's not fair, I wouldn't be persuaded by that. You know, we can talk about infill a lot, I think all of these people that raised their hand, they're for smart infill. There's a big difference between smart infill and bad infill, and I think that's why we have these rules, and you've got to sort through it.
Charlotte Cooper, 3409 Tremble Road, District 34. Mr. White alluded to the fact that no one has objected. I have been down here many times, when given the opportunity to object to a subdivided lot. However, many of the subdivided requests are done administratively, and we don't get the chance to come before you and express our opposition. He also indicated that it wouldn't be fair to those individuals who have bought property with the intention of subdividing. Well, what about those of us, those residents of us who spent our money, invested our money, buying a home in a neighborhood that had large lots, but basically single-family homes, one house on the larger lot? You need that type of neighborhoods in Nashville, and if you continue to allow the subdivision of these larger lots in these pocket subdivisions, pocket neighborhoods, pretty soon you're not going to have any neighborhoods with these larger lots, and they are needed. It is a form of, a variety of, of choice, and we do need those. Thank you.
I'm Trish Bowley, and I live in Hickory Valley Road, and I'm in District 23. I've been before you a number of times over the years, and my main theme, I would say throughout, has been protect the neighborhoods. I am a big proponent of neighborhoods in Nashville, all over Nashville. I think it is the lifeblood of what we're about. I don't think anyone here in neighborhoods are advocating sprawl. What we do advocate is protection of our neighborhoods. I was very, very involved in the development of the West Nashville Plan. I had been, felt very secure based on that involvement in the West Nashville Plan. I would urge that those, like Berkeley Allen mentioned, those areas that have not yet gone through that planning process, be protected. We all know that Nashville Next is getting the main priority, but the protection needs to be there for neighborhoods as they currently exist. Thank you.
I'm Emmy Baxter, 4317 Estes Wood Drive. Never done this before, so bear with me, I'll give you my emotional plight on this. I don't want you to destroy the charm and the character of our well-established neighborhood on Estes Wood Drive. It's a little two-block street. I've lived there 23 years, added on, invested, done major renovations, raised two children there, just loved it. Our homes all have 125 to 150 feet of road frontage. Without compatibility, comparability as a deterrent, the staff was willing to recommend two homes, one home be subdivided into two, each having 75 feet of road frontage. Now, that completely changes the look of our street. I implore you to vote for this two-pronged system. It would really be a pity for all of us who've lived there for so long and cherish this and put so much hard-earned money into this investment, our greatest investment, to watch people gorge on our neighborhood like an all-you-can-eat buffet, and to take these homes and subdivide them. So I hope we'll have some integrity about what we're doing and the long-term mark that we are making. And as another neighborhood so aptly said, "Build it like you want to live there. Build it like you're going to live there." So please advocate a two-pronged approach. Thank you.
I'm Tom Cash. I live at 3104 Acton Avenue, and I serve as the president of the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood Association, and I, we looked at this issue carefully, two dozen board members, we have a neighborhood of 2,000 people, we got a lot of input, did our homework, and the opinion is resoundingly that we ask you to adhere to this two-tiered approach. As Council Lady Evans said earlier, that if we go with this one-pronged approach, that it's going to be a real hard sell to neighborhoods who promote infill. But on the other hand, if we do it responsibly, as Councilman Todd said, I think we can do that very responsibly. So I encourage you, and I think we can get a lot of support for it, I encourage you to adhere to the two-tiered approach. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Hunter Moore. I live at 2115 Natchez Trace in the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood, a neighborhood which since the mid-1990s has been listed on the National Register of Historic Places because of its architectural significance. Thank you for this time to express my opinion. Practically speaking, I'm concerned that the one-tier approach creates narrow lots, encouraging new construction that is inconsistent with our neighborhood's distinctive character, considering only the zone density is speeding the demolition of existing homes, which is necessary for subdivision in my neighborhood where there are a few vacant lots. In fact, this has happened in the past week on my own street, when two older homes dating from the 1920s were demolished to create three lots. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Elmer. I live at 3,000, oh, I'm sorry.
Mind to decide that there's four minutes and 34 seconds left, and I see there's about five of us speaking, so they won't take that into account. Be fair with both sides, we'll have to cut it off at 15 minutes, so just wanted to.
My name is Suzanne Elmer. I live at 3,003 Blakemore Avenue in the Hillsborough West End Neighborhood. I'm a realtor, and I represent buyers, sellers, and developers in Nashville's urban neighborhoods. There are some in the development community and real estate community that argue that Nashville cannot grow effectively without compromising one of our most valuable assets, the very character of the neighborhoods that draw new people to Nashville. I believe this view is damaging to Nashville and terribly short-sighted. I work daily with developers that adapt their designs to serve the buying public and serve the neighborhoods where they build. They do this very profitably. I respectfully request that your decision support the two-tier approach. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Zito. I live at 1608 Graybar Lane in Green Hills, and I'm asking you to support the two-tier system. With all due respect to Mr. White, Green Hills has borne the brunt of this development, this infill development, and yet we are, are under a different system. We are still under the LUPA system, we're not under the Community Character Manual, and therefore, there are two sets of standards that are guiding development in the city. And I would ask Metro Legal, how is that fair to have two separate distinct sets of standards? It's not our fault we haven't been updated to the Community Character Manual yet, and we can see the, the brunt of that. Go to Benham Place, across the street from the Green Hills Library, you see four homes being built, two in the front yard of the surrounding homes. There's no way that's comparable. It's laughable to say that this hasn't been damaging. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for listening to this discussion, and thank you for considering this. Even if you accept the question of that this should be a one-pronged approach, you still have a significant equity issue in the Green Hills Midtown Area, which through no fault of their own, is on the LUPA policy. And the LUPA policy for residential low calls for one to two dwelling units per acre, notwithstanding, you know, anything else. And that is not a qualitative approach, that is a quantitative approach. And you are taking that, and you are treating that neighborhood very, very differently than you are the district that I represent, for the most part, where subdivisions are happening, but they're happening in places that make a lot of sense. So I ask you to approve the two-pronged approach. Preserve compatibility. If you can't preserve it here, preserve it by adopting the subdivision regulations. I'll remind you that the proper infill development is necessary for us to continue to have the political support that we need for the rezonings and the infill development that really, really should happen. And while Mr. White may think it's irresponsible for me to downzone my district, the fact of the matter is, that's what the public wants. That's what they're telling me to do, and my job is to represent them, and I have to do that. So please consider the ramifications, the long-term ramifications of, of the zoning policy. And go back again to your original intent. Your intent was that this, this policy would be implemented, and it would, it would, it would treat comparability as a factor to be considered. Notwithstanding with the law department, because they're not the arbiter of the, of the code, you are. You guys have the subdivision regs, and you guys get to decide. And they may give you what they think is their best legal advice, it's your job to interpret the subdivision regs, and you can do it the way you think it needs to be done. And I ask you to recall that the intent, and what you told me, and what staff told me in 2011 when I raised these concerns, was that general comparability would be considered, and in Green Hills, it's not. One to two acres, one to two dwelling units per acre, four to eight dwelling units per acre, whatever the policy is, it's what's driving your decision-making. That's wrong, that's unfair, and needs to change. Thank you very much again for all your time, and happy holidays.
Thank you. Is there any time left? You've got eight seconds. Thank you. That's undemocratic, in my opinion, for somebody that took the time to come down here to speak to you people. Is that it?
I'm sorry, sir, but that's the regulations.
Okay. I represent the Warner Park Neighborhood Association. We support the two-tier situation, and downzoning would be an option for us if you don't do that. We take a 10-minute break and ask all the commissioners to be back in the seats at 6:40. They better, they better.
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it.
We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it.
We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies.
We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some... We're not making, simply translating, we're not making policies. We want to get everybody, we're doing a poll. We're working on it. We're getting some...
They have up to two dwelling units in acre. So, we would look at this subdivision's impact on the area's density. To define the area, we have chosen those lots that are in the same block and front the same street. The area that we measure this subdivision against are those lots outlined or colored in blue, uh, purple, excuse me. The subdivision is, is shown in, uh, or the subject property is shown in brown. There are ten existing dwellings located in this area, in, in the area shaded in purple. This subdivision would add one new dwelling to this area for a total of eleven units. This area has eight point one nine acres of property. If you do the calculation, this subdivision would result in a density of one point three dwelling units an acre, which is below the maximum density prescribed with the RL policy. So, our recommendation under the one-tier approach is to approve the subdivision with the conditions, including a revised condition that would allow the subdivision recorded prior to the house removal, as this subdivision is consistent with the RL policy.
Did they join?
In conclusion, staff would recommend approval with conditions.
The side of me is open for public hearing. The applicant will be allowed ten minutes, and you may hold two minutes of that back for rebuttal if you'd like.
I would be the first applicant to follow Tom White. I'm glad somebody said smart infill. I agree. I'm glad, I'm John Brittle. I live at fifty-four seventy-four Franklin Pike Circle in Brentwood, which is Davidson County. I live in Creve Hall, between Creve Hall and Brentwood, developing all around my house. I'm glad Ms. Jones said plain language. I'm a field guy. This subdivision not only meets the zoning, it meets the current land use policy. It is compatible with that policy that was put in place through a community process. Some people have said Lupa's unfair. Obviously, it's what we've been dealing with for years. I would like to make a point very quickly that I was doing this when we had land use policy calculations, the land, sorry, comparability calculations, and we did just fine. We don't have a problem with calculations. We would like some input on what they are later, and I believe that we need some time on that. This particular one, if you could show me the policy map, Dwayne, if you don't mind. We, in the old days, we used to stuff across the street, too. I would like to say that the one-tiered system is what we do expect until the rules change. I would like to say on this, on the subject, we have two houses next door on one lot. As you drive down the street, the flow will be the same. Across the street from us, there's a front-back horizontal property regime. Across the street in North One is an existing two-family structure that could be demolished at any day and have two horizontal property regime houses built on it. The one to the right of that is still zoned R-20 because they kept their zoning. It could also be two. I would respectfully say that the character of this neighborhood has changed immensely since I started selling real estate in Green Hills in the last twenty-five, twenty-five years ago. In fact, this map shows new construction in this area, this general neighborhood. All those colors are new construction since nineteen eighty. We, we know what the character of this neighborhood is. In fact, I believe that what somebody said earlier about not losing some good zonings that we have is perfectly applicable here, because this zoning is half-acre lots. And the policy is for two per acre. They put these houses, they drew them as acres because they needed the space for the septic fields. We have an overwhelming, Green Hills, I heard somebody disparage Green Hills earlier, and let me just say, Green Hills is the hottest real estate market in the city, maybe the country. We Realtors get those calls every day. We know that people want to live in Green Hills, and this is a perfect example of a development that meets all of those things. A request that you use this one-tiered system that we've had, and I'm not asking anybody for any help financially. We're big boys. People buy stuff all the time based on what the system is and what the rules have been. They change, they change. This and Wallace, that we'll talk about in a minute, were both staff administrative subdivisions. I wasn't put on an agenda. We were dealing with what the staff has been doing for two and a half years. So, I do believe that is fair, and ask your approval of this two-lot subdivision. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
Yep. Thank you. My name is Bo Volk. I'm actually the homeowner at forty-three twenty Linda Wood Drive. My Charles is on the sheep, but I go by boat. When my wife and I bought this house, we kind of knew what the neighborhood was. There are duplexes next door to us, across the street, some attached houses, and, you know, ultimately knew that that development would continue, never thinking that when it came time for us to sell our house, that there would be any pushback at all, maybe on lot size, but beyond that, when the lot size was correct, that we would be able to do the same. In mid-October, we were seeing, you know, we'd been in conversation with the planning department and got indication that, you know, we would, in an email, if all the items listed below are addressed in the revised plat, it's likely this case will be approved administratively. So, I never really thought would, I'd be here, certainly thought that I'd be able to move into my new house and before Thanksgiving, now maybe before Christmas, possibly beyond that, depending on whether or not I can keep my loan and that it doesn't go away, or that it's not sold to somebody else. So, all I say, I just ask you to follow legal's recommendation and just make the personal appeal for our sake. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
Good evening. My name is Pete Prosser. I work in the real estate community. I am a Realtor with Zeitland Realtors. I do work a lot in the Green Hills community. And there are a lot of people here this evening, and I respect everyone's time, and thank you for hearing us out. I would like to ask for two minutes for rebuttal, be reserved and set aside. But, market demand for this type of project at the current zoning and the current regulations, we're seeing a consistent increase in demand, not only in Green Hills but other markets, for new construction. And it's consumer-driven. People are relocating here, businesses are relocating here. So, we can see the economic impact, but just not economic, but communities, and how, what it develops as a community. So, under the current systems in place, we're continuing to be able to meet the demand for housing in our communities. I would just like to say that I'm still in favor of operating at the one-tiered system and recommend approval of what they're, this project here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on the applicant's side? Got three minutes and seventeen seconds, if you won't allow two. Are you speaking with the applicant?
Yes.
You speaking on your own?
Yeah. No, I'm speaking with the applicant.
Okay. Because you're going to run out of time, stop the clock here.
Hi, I'm Mandy Walkler. I live at twenty-seven oh-nine Valley Brook Place. I am a Realtor with Pilkerton Realtors and have been for eighteen years. There is a huge demand for this type of property in Green Hills, and though it may seem laughable, it's about the only way to get affordable housing that's new construction in the area. If you're going to only have single-family homes on sing, on single lots, there's nothing in Green Hills that can be purchased that's new for under about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. However, if you can put two houses on a lot, then it becomes a bit more affordable for those people moving here from out of state, coming in. And I just wish you would consider approving this, as well as understanding that there is a huge need to continue to offer this kind of housing in areas like Green Hills. Thank you.
Thank you.
How many people here are for infill, housing of good quality?
You do have two minutes left for rebuttal. Anyone else wishing to speak in, in support? If none, then anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman, I'll take the two minutes on this particular matter in rebuttal. At this point, there's really nothing to rebut. So, excuse me. I'm sorry. I thought nobody was coming to the mic. I apologize.
Come ahead to the microphone. State your name and address, please.
Charlotte Cooper, thirty-four oh-nine Trimble Road. You know, the regulation, whether you're using one-tier or not, the regulation says that you should use general comparability. But yet, what I heard the staffer say when he was talking about why they were saying it should be approved, he said, "This request is consistent with land use policy." Someone else who spoke said, "It's consistent with the zoning and the land use." How can that be comparable when people under the, uh, you, community plans under the community character manual are using characteristics instead of land use policy? The average size of the lots in this neighborhood is point nine one acre. Now, when you divide that and it comes down under point five, how can that half-sized lot be considered to be comparable to the majority of the lots? Yes, we already have some subdivided lots because you have approved them or the planning department has administratively approved them. But that doesn't mean that that is the way the neighborhood wants to go. We purchased our homes thinking we were living in a subdivision, a neighborhood where the lots were large and there was one house on each lot. We have a variety of housing in our neighborhood. We have townhomes, we have condos, we have duplexes, and then we have streets that are basically single-family homes on large lots. So, when someone, a developer, comes in and says, "Oh, well, the way this neighborhood needs to go is subdivided lots so we can accommodate more people," I resent that because I invested my money in my property because that's where I wanted to live. That was my choice, and that's most of my neighbors' choice.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lester Smith, thirty-six eighteen Trimble Road. To the layman, it's impossible to say that two fifty-foot lots are comparable to one hundred-foot lot. We simply do not understand that definition of comparability. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I'm Susan Harris. I live at forty-two nineteen Linda Wood Drive. I'm a homeowner on this street. I'm also a Realtor. And I know that this is an extremely desirable neighborhood, and what Mr. Brittle didn't show you was that all the development that's being done in this neighborhood currently, with the exception of the lot next door, is basically single-family homes on a large lot. So, we want to be clear on what the development is happening around us. The other thing is, and the tax records, and I'm sure that the planning commission can probably clarify this, the tax records show that the lot square footage is less than the forty thousand square feet required. And there, it shows it to be thirty-nine six, something like that. You can probably help me with that. I think that may be due to some easements on the rear of the property, but I'd like to have some clarification on that because I think that will help in determining whether or not the lot size meets the tier-one recommendations. Also, to address some of the issues of affordability, we've heard that argument so often with properties in Green Hills, and it's just not true, and it does not hold water. Even with the new development, if you consider seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar single-family home affordable, that's what's going up all over the area. So, that's really not a convincing argument for most of us. What we are trying to do is request that you look at the comparability of the neighborhood. It's important, there are some grandfathered properties that will develop into two-family homes, but the integrity of our neighborhood is safe, it's consistent, and we went to a lot of time and effort to downzone our particular neighborhood, and we will go to time and effort to downzone again if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Margot Chambers. I'm at thirty-eight oh-three Princeton Avenue in Nashville, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and thank you for your service. I would like to disapprove this request because you're not using a two-tiered approach, and I would not want you to defer it. Another thing I'd like you to consider is there's a lot of people very interested in these topics tonight. There's a lot of people already watching this on TV, there's a lot of people here tonight. So, the message that you send, based on what you're going to do, if you're just going to go with land use and density, that tells a lot of citizens and voters what this commission is really standing behind, is the developers. And we, I'd really like you to stand behind the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Heidi Welch. I live at forty-ten Wallace Lane. I'm not exactly familiar with this road. I'm speaking on another issue, but when Mr. Brittle showed the map of all the construction that has gone on in Green Hills in the last decade, that's part of the situation. There is many, many choices for different types of housing in Green Hills, and now just railroad, neighborhoods are being railroaded over, and comparability is not considered, and neighborhood characters are being destroyed, and we have had to fight tooth and nail for keeping the character of our beautiful streets. I wish I had seen the map that he showed you because that's exactly the point, because in the last decade, just within two miles of radius of this property, the massive amount of skyline and already infill, parts of it very, very appropriate and parts not because there has been such a lack of inconsistency in using comparability. And you definitely should use the two-tiered approach in this proposal, but all the construction on all of the streets parallel, Skyline, Veilwood, Abbott Martin, Cross Creek, Warfield, Kayler, Benham, Glen Echo, Belmont Boulevard, Lone Oak, Stammer Place, Hobbs Road, Linda Wood, Trimbleman, Castleman, have been constructed and constructed on, and that is what we've just, are losing our wits about. It's just, has to be stopped. And when somebody brings up affordability, everything I've seen that's new construction, I would love for beginning families to have affordable housing in a wonderful school district where Julia Green School is. And there is nothing affordable for beginning families, and every new construction is more than the property that they tore down to build two. And, so that's not.
I'm Carter Todd. I'm the councilperson for this area, and I would urge you to disapprove this. In the interest of time, I'm not going to go through all the reasons. The last time we met on this subject, I spoke against it and gave you a lot of reasons. But what I would say tonight, I mean, I don't think I can say it any better than Lester Smith said. He said, "Two fifty-foot furnished lots is not comparable to a hundred-foot furnished lot." This is not comparable, it doesn't fit in there. I think these people are all for smart infill. We want infill near Hillsborough Road. We want infill kind of up, you know, on Abbott Martin. We just added the Village Green Apartments. There's places for, for smart infill, and the people in Green Hills are agreeing to that. But, these new proposed regs talk about evolving neighborhoods and established neighborhoods, and this is a beautiful established neighborhood. And what you're going to do is you're going to gut it, you're going to cut it right in half, and then if you do adopt these new regulations, it's going to be meaningless because this lot you're going to ruin tonight is going to be included in that calculation going forward. So, it's, please don't do that. Please save the established neighborhoods, put the infill where it goes. Talk to, talk to planners. They will tell you that infill needs to go near mass transit hubs, it needs to go on their major corridors like Charlotte, West End, and Hillsborough. But as you move further away from those major corridors, we don't need poorly thought-out infill. So, I urge you to disapprove this for these reasons and all the other reasons you heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Appreciate the time, not just of the commission, but the members of the staff. Basically, we need to start with this. Once again, people have continued to say, "We want comparability." The staff absolutely has to consider comparability under the requirement. You've read it, I've told you several times, you've read the language, shall be comparable. So, ask the staff, did they evaluate it under that comparability? The answer is yes, or it wouldn't be here with a recommendation by the staff to approve it. So, comparability has been discussed, had been reviewed, it's recommended. With respect to the legal advice, the issue is still tier-one versus tier-two. So, what have you been told by legal? That the language is mandatory, it's been there, it's what should be honored, that for two and a half years it's been interpreted this way. Now, some of the comments, frankly, that were heard tonight are basically, "We all keep one-acre lots, period. Don't change it, period, because somebody lives on that or they like that." That's not the guts of infill. The guts of infill is, "Look at comparability as you've done it." And I want to make the comment, if people feel that comparability should be changed, the definition ought to be changed, that process is underway. That's item twenty-five subdivision regulations. You don't do it retroactively. I'm urging the members of this commission, I've never seen this commission ignore the advice of the legal department, and this is not a gray area when it says, "Shall be comparable, period." They've done it, they've advised that, they've recommended it. For two and a half years, people in the community have relied upon that in a sense of fairness and equity, and it should be done here. Now, I want to basically close on this comment. What the opponents have said is that we don't have a problem with comparability, but we don't want the staff to make that decision the way they've done it for the last two and a half years. We want to give a new definition to comparability, period, because they have to admit if what has been looked at for the last two and a half years is honored here tonight, and if we follow the legal advice, you have to approve this. In my opinion, it's just that simple. I appreciate your courtesies, ask you to do what legally, morally, and philosophically is correct. Thank you for your courtesies.
Need a motion to close the public hearing? Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed?
Yes.
Not sure I want to be first since I live in the backyard of Green Hills. This is an interesting case because, in my opinion, the homeowner relied on staff. He contracted to go purchase another home and was going to get an administrative approval, and all of a sudden, there was a delay. You've got two houses next door on one lot, you know, so is that comparable or not comparable because you've got one lot versus two lots? In this particular case, specifically here, I think I'm going to support staff and legal counsel.
Eric?
There's been a lot said about infill development. As, as everyone knows, I am a strong proponent of infill development. I'm also a proponent for smart infill development. I don't think all infill development is equal, and in this particular situation, my heart goes out to the property owner because he did rely on an interpretation by staff. But I will admit, when I look at the comparability items before us, and my interpretation of the infill for the subdivision is that it's a two-tiered approach, plain and simple, in my opinion and in my mind. And I have strong reservations about going to a one-tiered approach because when I look at the neighborhood and the lots, and you talk about comparability, and I, I think someone put it very well when he said that, you know, two fifty-foot lots is not comparable to one, oh, my time is up already? To, to one hundred-foot lot. I mean, you cannot remove the area and the size from the equation in the grand scheme of things. I think it's, should be one of several things we look at, but to totally remove that from the equation and not even consider that causes me great concern. And if you start cutting up or narrowing some of these lots as you subdivide them, then you're going to have some one hundred and twenty-foot lots, hundred lots, fifty-foot lots, or sixty-foot lots, and from a comparability standpoint, I have got some concerns about that. So, my, I land on the side of the two-tiered approach, and as it says here, the planning commission is the ultimate interpreter of the subdivision regulations. In all deference to Metro Legal and some of the proponents of the one-tier regulation who are attorneys, and God knows, I work with a lot of attorneys on my job, that's a legal opinion. It's not binding on me nor my decision nor the decision of this board, and consequently, when I put all this together and I look at it as objectively as possible, my interpretation is, is that it is indeed a two-tiered approach, and that's what I'm supporting. Thank you.
Greg?
Well, at least I didn't go first this time. As a law school professor once told me, reasonable minds can reasonably differ, and, you know, that's often the case in, in, in close issues like this. And I think, you know, you've got two respected attorneys on both sides, Mr. Carter Todd and Mr. White, who have two, two different opinions. You've got, generally, I've read cases where, where judges disagree. I've heard dissenting opinions, I've heard even different federal jurisdictions disagree about the same statutory interpretation, or the same statute. And so, there are ways to disagree, and this is a, one of those instances that, that you're, you're really getting down to the statutory makeup. Now, personally, I think legal counsel is probably correct. A one-tiered approach seems to be the right way to go, in my opinion. Now, it's, it's that, it's, it's my opinion. I used to represent Creve Hall. I live in Creve Hall. You all should maybe come, come over to Creve Hall. I say that jokingly, but I did a massive downzoning when, when I was councilman. I remember it was out at the Ag Center, and about six hundred people showed up. I think Mr. Brittle was even there, and he was very quiet at the meeting. But with that said, you know, I still think when you get something that seems unreasonable and to the, to a, just a normal person looking at this, you know, I mean, it, it does seem pretty unreal, you know, it seems a little unreasonable, that it's not comparable. But when you have, in this particular instance, it's a case where you have what we call as lawyers, I guess, bad facts. You've got a bad, a bad case that leads to us here trying to debate it out in public. And you've got, in this particular instance, which makes it even more, a harder decision is, is that you've got a house next door that there's already two properties there. Across the street, you've got R-20, and then on this particular block, you've got RS-20, which is another issue that makes this particular case a hard decision. You know, but generally, I, I try to go with, I support the legal department's interpretation, and as far as I'm concerned, they are our lawyer, and, you know, I have to rely on their opinion. And so, in this particular instance, while I think it's the wrong thing to do, I feel bound legally to our legal counsel, so, you know, and that can upset all, a lot of you. Probably the proper solution is a downzoning in this particular instance. It's clearer that way, and that probably is what's going to hap, what's going to happen after this hearing, is that all of the council members that are here are going to start downzoning their property, which is their prerogative, and that's what they do, and this is what these types of, of things lead to. So, I would urge the audience, while I would tell your councilman to downzone if, if that's the instance. Now, I feel like, moving forward, we can address some of these subdivision questions and come up with some clearer solutions. I think both, both arguments are reasonable, but unfortunately, I, it's a hard vote for me, but I might have to rely on the legal counsel.
Andrew?
I kind of wanted
prerogative, and that's what they do, and this is what these types of things lead to. So I would urge the audience, while I would tell your councilman to downzone if that's the instance. Now, I feel like, moving forward, we can address some of these subdivision questions and come up with some clearer solutions. I think both arguments are reasonable, but unfortunately, it's a hard vote for me, but I might have to rely on the legal counsel.
Andre.
I kind of wanted to take a deep breath and think about this, and where I've come to at the moment is that this particular case, because it's the one we're talking about, is all about timing. And I think that we all have to think about the big picture and how much time we have to make really sound decisions in this community. And this is one parcel, and I understand the fear, the concern, that if it gets decided based on the staff recommendation, that that's going to unzip the whole neighborhood. And I feel like that is, if we take a deep breath and think thoroughly about how wise everybody in this room is, on the staff and out in the audience, that we can make something work for our future. I think that this piece and these five items, or four items we're looking at, may be a catalyst for a really important discussion, which has started, you know, our last meeting and then again tonight. And I think that's important for all of us to take a deep breath and listen to those sides, to those arguments, and figure out which way we want to go in the future. I don't think that if this particular issue had, I mean, if the timing of this was going as it had been, it would have been approved by the staff administratively. And I want to defend our staff for making good decisions, and if we, as a community, want to change the approach, we can do that. We don't have to do it in a tense, everything rides on one quick moment. I think we can all think about it and make decisions thoughtfully, and maybe a little more slowly. My first interpretation, to the one or two-tier thing, my first interpretation of it was, here's a sentence, and it says it has to be comparable and compatible, and I'm going to look down here and see what that means. How do I determine what comparable, compatible means? And it means I have to follow all these policies and all these criteria. And that's what it said to me when I first read it. Another description from our last meeting, when I watched the video, because I wasn't here. If you, another way to interpret it legally, and you can, you know, we can pit lawyers on either side to interpret legally, was if the second set of criteria that's trying to define the first criteria aren't compatible with them, if they're about policies and this one isn't, then you have, you're setting up two different approaches. And so, I just feel like this particular item, number 20, doesn't need to determine our entire future. I think it can be decided tonight that the staff had a solid basis of recommendation in its habit, that as it's been doing, you know, on a fairly consistent basis, and if they can look at the site next door and see houses that can be rhythmically built on a street, and that's what they chose to recommend because it is compatible, I think we could even say, "That's okay for tonight," and just use this one, because it was already in the pipeline. And if it is a catalyst, and we all say, "Whoa, what did we just do? Should we never do this again?" Then maybe we should never do it again, but we can decide how we want to define our language going forward. I just don't think it's fair to use the one that's in the pipeline to change the rules on. That's, I'll stop for now.
Bill?
I've come to tonight's meeting with an open mind, trying to figure this all out. And I do have a question for staff on this one, and the rules that we operate under, the policies and so forth for the last couple of years. I'm looking at this sentence here where it says, "In areas previously subdivided and predominantly developed, residential lots resulting." Now, where does it say anything about how many families live on those lots? And, you know, we're talking about, we showed this nice map that's got, and this is impressive, I don't think we had all this on the previous discussion, we had this, it came up the last meeting. Next door, it's showing a lot, but that's just one lot with two residences on it, right? What about the one behind it? What kind of structure is that, that little wing-looking thing there? Is that two families that live there also?
Two dwellings.
But again, it's one lot?
That does represent a horizontal property regime, which is two dwellings on one lot.
Okay. Well, if you're looking at the pure sense of lot, then I have to take that out of the equation, for those double residences on a lot. So this lot does not meet comparability, in my mind. Now, one thing that you showed that I thought was interesting, and I don't remember it ever being shown that way before, and where you added up all those lots on the one side and then divided it by 11 or whatever it was, go over that again. I'm not sure I fully, that display, I'm not fully understand the reasoning. You took just those lots and not the lots across the street, and, you know, the whole, both sides of the block.
This is, what this is illustrating is a measurement of the density of the surrounding lots, or the density within the surrounding lots. And so, staff has determined that surrounding lots would be defined by those lots that are in the same block, fronting the same street. And so, we look at the density within those lots, and then we measure the resulting density with this proposed subdivision. And so, that's generally what this math on the slide illustrates. There are 10 existing dwellings. The subdivision would add one additional dwelling. The acreage that we use to calculate our resulting density is pulled from that same area containing those surrounding lots. And so, the resulting density with this subdivision would be 1.3 dwelling units an acre.
Okay. Let me ask you one technical thing. Do we consider 20,000 square feet the same as a half acre?
No, it's just under half an acre.
Well, these two lots are just under a half acre, aren't they?
They're at 20,500 and 20,600.
Okay, so they're not quite, technically, they're not quite a half acre.
Correct. That's correct.
But do you round up, and can you have two residences on something that's not quite an acre?
No, that's dictated by the zoning. So the zoning for this property is RS-20. The RS suggests that you're limited to a single-family dwelling. The 20 dictates the maximum, sorry, the minimum size of the lot. So the zoning would dictate, minimum lot size is 20,000. The RS would dictate that it's limited to one single-family dwelling per lot.
There's a lot to think about here. The only thing that's unfortunate is the fact that this project was already in the process, and I understand, I have definite sympathies for the whole situation here. I'm going to think about it a minute more.
Judy.
Thank you. What could be built on here right now?
As the lot exists, one single-family dwelling.
One single family. There was a comment that was made about the planning commission, whether we stood behind the citizens or stood behind the developer, and what we try to do is stand behind the entire community and try to make the best decisions possible. And so, with that in mind, and looking at the plan that is before us, and understanding what is being asked of us, and the recommendation that the staff has given us, I think that it's a good recommendation that they have given us, and I'll be supporting the staff's recommendation.
Honor.
When I first read this, I too had the same interpretation that Andre mentioned, and that the legal department has recommended to us. But I also noticed in the subdivision regs that, and we've only seen these first two criteria presented together, but just the context of, there's a third criteria. It doesn't have anything to do with comparability. But that's one, because there were these three items, it was one of the reasons why it was really not even, without it coming up with this case, and I've read a lot of zoning ordinances, I would have read this as a, you know, a one-tier criteria that, again, says it needs to be comparable, and this is how you determine comparability. Now, is it well-written? Is it vague? You know, no, it's not well-written, and it's vague. And I want to point out that, you know, I think obviously what we're finding is that the community doesn't like the result of this subdivision reg. I don't know that anyone here necessarily likes the result of the reg, but it is the reg, and it's our job to determine that, not to determine whether we like the result. If we need to change the regs so we like the results, we'll do that, in Item 25. It is frustrating to stay up here late and hear members of the public suggest that our vote on this case determines whether we side with developers or neighbors. Because I know that's not true with anyone here, and I think you'll hear that on Item 25. So I'm going to support the staff and Metro Legal's recommendation.
Eric. I don't know who to direct the question to, but I think maybe I'll start with Rick. And I'll keep going until I get the answer I want. Do we, as a commission, apart from this reg, do we have the authority to take, to rezone, to take an action that's contrary to zoning?
No.
And do we, as a commission, have the authority, without amending the policy, to take an action contrary to policy?
I mean, I think it's, you need to rely on your policy. The issue is how you interpret your policy, clearly.
Right. It's interpretation.
Right.
I mean, we've changed our procedure here so that we never consider a zone change unless we change the policy. So I'm thinking that we don't have the authority to take action on any, anything before us that's contrary to existing zoning or contrary to existing policy. Isn't that right?
Well, it has to be, there's a difference between taking something that is opposed to policy and determining, I mean, the policies are broad, and so there's not, just because it fits within a range, doesn't necessarily mean that you're entitled to everything within that range, you know, I mean, I think--
I'll land use policies.
Right.
They're fairly specific.
Right, but they have, as you well know, they generally have a range of densities that might be allowed. You're not entitled to the top of that range, or, I mean--
But you're not entitled to simply be outside of it.
Correct, correct, right. You need to be inside, yeah, inside the range.
So while I agree with some of the folks that, the much more important issue that I'm happy we seem to be coming to a consensus on is number 25, it seems to me that, from statutory construction that I recall, you have to give, you have to assume words are in a regulation for some reason, and there is no reason that the term "general comparability" would be in this reg if all it meant were determining whether something was against zoning or policy. It is useless, means nothing, which is contrary to what I learned about the rules of statutory construction. So legally, we're completely within our right to disagree with Metro Legal. As an attorney, I enjoy disagreeing with lawyers, and half of them are wrong in any given case. It's my impression that Mr. White is on occasion disagreeing with Metro Valverde, and might even have gone to court over it. I could be wrong. But I think legally, we are frankly not just allowed, but compelled to read more than zoning and policy into this current reg, period. On a practical basis, which we occasionally pay attention to, there's been many people suggesting on both sides of the issue, how long it might take council members to downzone. I think it would be a matter of days and not weeks before they filed it. There's a gentleman in the front row who served on the council with me, I think it would take him about six hours to downzone, to get a downzoning filed for his entire district. It would take me less than that for the 18th district. And I believe strongly in infill. I think those of us who are wondering if there will be a massive reaction in the form of downzoning that will be bad for this city, you don't need to wonder. I mean, it's going to happen. And for that reason, I am not for this subdivision. Thank you. Mr. Motion.
I move that we approve staff's recommendation.
Second. Got a motion, second, to approve staff's recommendation. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Let's see a show of hands, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries. We're ready for item number 21.
Item 21 is a request for a concept plan approval to create five single-family residential lots and one two-family lot for a total of six units. This property is located on Gell Lane. This is just to the north of the interstate at the intersection of Gell and Craig. This is a property that currently contains one large single-family home. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. Existing zoning is R-10, which permits single-family and two-family. Under the current zoning, the maximum number of lots is six, with one duplex unit for, and it permit up a total of seven units. This is the subdivision. Again, it calls for five new lots. Lot four would be a duplex lot. The existing house will remain on lot one. Lots two and three will front on Gell, and lot four and five will front on to Craig. Access for lots two through five will be from the rear at the area outlined or highlighted in yellow, so they will have shared access. The existing drive for lot one will still be open and utilized by that property. The property's range and size, the smallest is 10,441 square feet, and the largest is a little over 15,000 square feet. The policy is residential low-medium, so it permits a density of two to four dwelling units per acre. Again, the policy permits two to four dwelling units per acre. We ran the density on this using the properties on the south side of Gell Lane, which are all highlighted in purple, including the existing property. So you have 15 existing lots and the proposed six new lots, so the average density for the area is 1.9 units per acre, which falls well within, actually, under the policy of two to four dwelling units per acre. So in conclusion, staff is recommending approval with conditions. The conditions deal with sidewalks. Sidewalks will be required with this subdivision, and the applicant has the option of either constructing them when it comes in with the final, or paying the in-lug fee instead of building them. And again, staff's recommending approval with conditions, as the request is consistent with the policy and supports infill development.
This item is open for public hearing. That's going to be allowed 10 minutes, and you can hold it to back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for listening. I know it's been a very contentious night so far. Hopefully, this one will be kind of interesting. The air got sucked out of the room when you pulled up the plat because of the awkward design, but it is, a lot of thought and a lot of time went into this. As you guys know, the stormwater has been, over the last few months, a huge part of our design factors, controlling and maintaining our stormwater with their new regulations, and we're, when to turn in our plats, when to turn in a conceptual design versus a final plat versus stormwater plan. This plan was designed so that-- This plan was designed so that the existing house could remain, so there is a beautiful circular driveway, kind of a full, almost colonial, with a gated entrance coming off of Craig. One of the things that makes, we believe, smart infill, and as the planners, and we went through several meetings to this discussion, is to do a consolidated entrance off of Craig to reduce the traffic on Gale. That's what the lot on lot number four is turned down to, so we can provide one subdivision easement through lot five, and then everyone turn up into their own private rear-entry garages. There will be no access, other than pedestrian access, from Gale Lane's onto lots number two and lots number three. This also covered, the stormwater part of the driveway will be pervious pavements to help collect and maintain our stormwater. In the back of, I guess that would be the southeast bottom right, there is a two-stage rain garden to collect all of the water as before it goes into the 440 area. Also, lots four and five are the only two lots that face Craig, on that stretch of Craig, from Gale through interstate. The property line to the south is the easement to 440. So you're looking at the roadway. The Craig goes under interstate. Those would be what we consider to be more affordable housing for the north, inside the loop, literally barely inside the loop, design, which the prices would start somewhere in the mid-fives, and then the lots two and three would go up into probably higher sevens and to mid-eights. And so with Gale Park down the street, with the condos to the northwest, the keeping of the original home and using the surrounding areas around it, we did what we could to be creative with staff that meets the requirements for the lot size, be creative with our design that would create, from Gale Lane, where there is other houses comparability, you guys are, I'm confused as everybody else in the room about what that is. But as other houses on the street, we wanted to be a little more consistent with that versus there are no houses on Craig, so that's where we were going to do our duplex and possibly add that third residence to bring our lot cost down to accommodate the eventual sales price we were looking for. But we, in our opinion, this is a really good design, something that it's a lot of hours into it. It seems quirky, but there is a tremendous amount of engineering and dollars and statistics went into creating that. So thank you for your time. I'll reserve two minutes, but I'll answer any questions that you guys might have.
You can reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in support?
My name's Newell Anderson. I live at 821 Kirkwood Lane, and I did want to speak in support of this project. I do live in the neighborhood. I live a few blocks away around the corner. I think it's a good project. It's a smart project. It doesn't take down the existing structure, and I think it provides some much-needed housing for this neighborhood. So I hope you see it as a benefit to my neighborhood, and I hope you approve it.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
Thank you. My name is Jamie Duncan, and I'm here representing rigid development. The applicant wanted to make a comment that I spent the morning reviewing the comments that were on your front page regarding tonight's meeting, of which most people are probably here. There were a total of 69 comments, and the one thing that was interesting to us is that out of those, 86% of those were actually from Green Hills. So I think it's really important, and I think the people here, that shows the percentage of people are mainly from Green Hills. But I do want to point out that this is not Green Hills. Everybody is aware of that. We had two comments, excuse me, in those 69 comments that were from this district, neither which were against this specific project. So I think that's kind of important to point out. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone.
Well, we might as well beat this horse to death. Once again, the decision to recommend approval was based on land use policy without any consideration for what the rest of the neighborhood looked like. And I know that in the previous item, you voted to approve it. I think that was wrong. I think you're being unfair to these neighborhoods. Even though you say, well, we want to be consistent with what we've done in the past, if you've made the wrong decision for the last two and a half years, continuing to make it does not make it right. And I believe there is an argument for a two-tiered process. If you look at this, lot one is 49% smaller than the average lot size. Lot two is 62% smaller. Lot three is 66% smaller. Lot four is 66% smaller, and lot five is 56% smaller. How can this be generally comparable to the neighborhood? Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Margot Chambers, 3803 Princeton Avenue in Nashville. I'd like you to disapprove this item because you're not using a two-tiered approach and you're not valuing compatibility, comparability. And please do not defer. And I would like to remind you that if you do vote with tier one, one tier only, that you must adopt the subdivision regulations tonight, otherwise there are no protections for citizens. My comment on this particular disapproval is why aren't, I hear a lot of comments about land developers trying to be creative. Why isn't this commission and this department, the planning department, being creative with land developers and take one and a half acres in a blighted part of town and invest in that community? Why are we continuing trying to overdevelop a highly-developed area? Thank you.
My name is Mary Hamel. I live at 928 Gale Lane, directly across from the proposed development. This is the first time I've seen the map, and it reminds me of gerrymandering to accommodate a situation. I mean, that's an old term. But I lived there long before this property was sold to the owner, current owner, and it does look like gerrymandering, to try and fit into a space. Now let me talk a little bit about the property it sits in context with. This is a lovely property. I can understand smart development, but the density that has developed on Gale Lane is absolutely incredible in the surrounding area. On Franklin Road alone, we have a new apartment complex going on just on Franklin Road. It's a horrendous undertaking, but the density right there is going to be a saturation of traffic already. On 12th Avenue, there's another saturation of traffic with other apartment complexes that have gone in. And this does not include Gale Park down at the end of my street, or the Gale lots that are down there also. So we already have a horrendous concentration of homes. Now, at the same time, we have a new community center going in, and we knew we have a new walk park. It's designed for walking, but we have no sidewalks. And the street does not have a shoulder, and right next to that is a drainage ditch, so there's no place to accommodate all that. So when you look at this, this is not good planning for the neighborhood at all. It is looking at the piece of land only, not at the context of the neighborhood. The traffic that has increased on Gale Lane is magnified many, many times over, and that's because of the apartment complexes on either side already, and you're adding saturation beyond a place that's already saturated with traffic. I will stop there, but I wish you would consider the density of that neighborhood without gerrymandering already into this area.
Thank you.
Dana Anthony, 920 Gale, diagonally across from the property. I'm not opposed, I want to be on record and say I'm not opposed to responsible or smart development. This does not, in my opinion, fit that definition. What I fear most about the couple of comments that I'll make is that sets a precedent for the larger lots on the south portion of our street that have been highlighted already, that sets a precedent that can't be undone. And our concern with what Mary has just stated as well, that just adds more of that dynamic to it. A second point is, although it may seem to fit the idea of density, this does not fit with the character of the houses that are currently on our street. Those of us that moved to the area for some medium-sized lots within 12 South, this violates that very principle that drew us to the area to begin with. We've been there 10 years. And lastly, as a master gardener, as I note, the yellow section of the drawing up here, which backs up to 440, is that there are significantly mature trees on that lot, and all of these would appear to be, from what I know of the placement of them, many of them would have to be removed, which creates a significant barrier for the noise and visualness of 440 for us in that part of the block. So I appreciate your vote on no on this. Thank you.
My name is Rusty King. I live at 918 Gale Lane, just down the street from this property. My wife and I moved there about five years ago because of the large trees, because of the decent-sized lots, decent-sized house, and then continued to work through some of these developments where they've taken a single home and created two homes on one lot, which actually probably improved some of the different divisions, some of the homes. But I think this is pretty much ridiculous, other than you have a frontage lot to 440 and the river right behind it. I just think it's against what we kind of moved there for, and we're trying to accomplish while we were living there, and it just, I just don't agree with it.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Craig Dawes. I live at 930 Gale Lane, across the street. I bought my house about 10 years ago, basically because my wife and I liked the charm of the neighborhood. All the houses are different. If we wanted a cookie-cutter neighborhood, we'd live in the suburbs, not in Nashville. I just don't understand how common sense can say this is comparable. Every house on Gale Lane faces Gale Lane. These are facing different directions. I just don't see how any of it's comparable, besides the houses aren't the same as the houses on Gale Lane. And I just find it really disappointing, especially with how busy our street is. We're already afraid to let our son play in the front yard. He has to play in the backyard because people are fun down our street. I just don't see how adding more congestion is going to help any of the issues that we have. I'm for responsible development. I could see one house going next door, but I just don't see how you take a lot and just chop it up like this and add that many houses into such a small area. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mike Ireland, resident in Nashville here. I can't really echo anymore of what's been said about this. I couldn't put my head on my pillow at night and think that this is comparable, this design is comparable with the rest of the neighborhood. So I can't add anymore, but what I can add is what I heard on this last decision is I urge you to think about this, is staff recommends such and such, or legal recommends such and such to this council. And to me, that means that you hold the ultimate decision. There must be a reason for that. Maybe something was overlooked by staff or council, but unless this is all rhetoric, if you choose to say, well, I'm just going to side with staff, to me, that'd be disappointing. I hope that you take charge, what you've been charged with, is hearing recommendations. You're here for a purpose. Otherwise, this would have been passed, or we wouldn't have this. And the arguments that are made by the people here, I think, are important. Maybe something has been overlooked. And just sit back and go, you know, I'm going to go with staff or with council because the decision was already made. These are recommendations, and you've got to go with your gut instinct, how you're going to feel when you put your head on your pillow at nighttime. Is this right? Appreciate it. Thank you.
Jim Edwards, 209 Cargill in Nashville. As a layperson out here in the audience, what is coming across to a lot of us is, whether it's legal or not, you don't have to sell us on whether it's legal or not. I'd like you to sell us on whether it's right or not. It's legal to do these things. There isn't anybody out there that questions whether it's legal to do? But is it the correct thing to do? And hiding under the veil of is it legal is quite disappointing. And as I say, you don't have to follow, if legal says it's okay, I'm going to go with the staff. For a lot of us out there, it appears it's a cop-out. I don't mean to offend you, but that's the way it's coming across. Thank you. Thank you.
I wanted to speak to that same idea, that the arguments we're hearing here are that it's legal and that these are the-
Excuse me, give me your name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Lisha Wharton, and I live at 108 Haverford Drive. Nobody questions whether infill is necessary, and nobody questions whether it's legal to do this. What we are questioning is, is the argument that you're giving, that because the regulation's in place, that's what we have to do. That seems to be the argument that we heard from half the council just now. That's what kept Jim Crow laws in place for so many years in the South. Please tell me, we've come beyond that thinking in this day and age. What we are asking as residents and taxpayers is that you look at the regulations and look at the development application and see, are they in the best interest of the city at large? And are they in the best interest of the neighborhood itself? Because you can absolutely, with the power that you have in this body, destroy the character of the neighborhoods and cause people to leave the neighborhoods. People are already threatening to do that. That's the conversations we're hearing from the people who were coming here before the council, and then time after time after time, the votes are ignoring what they say. We don't want to just be heard. We want to have an effect on the decisions that are made here. We don't want you to just listen to what we say and then ignore our input. We feel that we have some valid concerns here about the way these things are being done, and that comparability is the issue here. And what you're calling comparable, we don't consider comparable.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, we'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
Mr. McLean, members of the commission, this is a much stronger case than the last case. This is a lot that's three times the size of the other lots on the street. Once again, the staff has looked at the mandate of shall be comparable. They've decided that it was. In addition, if you looked at the staff report, they concluded by saying, we support this because it supports infill development. That's very clear. Now, with respect to this development and the last one, this development was in the queue exactly like the last one was. This was on for administrative approval a long time ago. This was a comment that some of the members made here. I want to also mention, this applicant was the very first one to use the LID, or Low Intensity Development Program, offered by Stormwater. The very first one. He took the infill development so strong that, without any question, he's the first one, he spent a tremendous amount of time, tremendous amount of effort with the Stormwater people with this LID. And I urge you to support somebody that's been that responsible and basically has been in the queue this long a period of time. This development from Stormwater, which is a key issue here, is a superstar, the first one to do the LID, and I think he should be commended for that. With respect to projects, this client has built dozens of projects in this community. They've been well-received, and in my opinion, as several have said in the earlier debate, if we're going to do something, you can look at item 35 and decide whether or not we're going to do something prospectively. That's the way it should be. But how is it an insult, you know, to basically say, it's a cop-out for you to listen to the legal advice, which I've never seen this commission ignore, to listen to the equity of the situation, to listen for consistency for two and a half years, and that's a cop-out for you to do? I don't think so. If we get to 35 and there's a tsunami where people really, really want to change, that'll have to be discussed. But none of the arguments have changed from the last issue. In fact, they're much stronger for this development. I'd urge you to support the same and approve it for the same reasons you did last time. Thank you for your courtesy.
Need a motion to close a public hearing?
Second.
Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Philip Punder.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Looking at this plan, you know, if it was divided into three lots instead of five- Looking at this plan, you know, if it was divided into three lots instead of five, I'd be making the motion to approve right now. But this just doesn't look like it's comparable to the rest of the neighborhood. That's what bothers me. I wish the developer would have considered it a little bit differently. There's certain aspects about this I like. I like the rear entry to the lot. But overall, I must say, if I'm working on the same logic as I did the last time, I just have to have a question about it.
Judy.
Couple of things. As a planning commissioner, we take our role extremely seriously, and our vote is not just on rhetoric. And we do listen to the community, and we're extremely proud that all of you all are out tonight and coming to give your time and to voice your concerns. This is a lot, dividing it up into five, and like Commissioner Ponder, and I just use common sense, I don't have a lot of experience. It looks overwhelming for this lot. And I know he's talking about bringing the parking, you know, coming in from the rear, but these two that are facing Craig Lane, and they're the only two houses on there, it just kind of looks kind of jumbled. I don't have a problem with it being five. I just don't know if there's a better way to situate or divide it up, divide the lots. So, I'll listen to the other commissioners.
Ponder.
Stuart. I would like, I just can't, it's been a long evening. I'd like to ask the staff to go through, go through what you looked at here for comparability. I mean, you pointed out on the first one, we pointed out, someone pointed out, what lots you looked at and mathematics you did. What about this one? Maybe you just finished that, but do that again. You did all of these?
All the lots from, basically from, on this block face on the south side of Gale, from Craig to where Vox Lane comes in. General, these lots are more consistent as far as they're more similar than they are the lots across the street. So, these lots were used.
Have we ever, until this reg, that we've had two recommendations about in two meetings, diametrically opposed, have we ever, before that time, before that regulation went into effect, have we ever just looked at structures on one side?
You're talking about the way we did it now?
Yeah.
Yes.
Is that what we used to do?
Yeah, this is how we've been doing it.
Or, I mean, we don't, we don't, okay. So, basically, 192 through, that whole box, 62, what is it? 52 through 192. And then 191 divided into five. Is that what I'm looking at?
Yes.
And 191 divided by five compared to these is generally comparable.
It meets the policy as far as the density, under the analysis.
It is beyond belief. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Chair.
I want to echo to the audience what Andre said earlier, that the way we rule on these four cases doesn't mean this is going to open up Pandora's Box. And we're here tonight to hear item 25. And if we decide to change the regulations in item 25 on a proactive future basis, and that's what we do. And I think at this point in time, based on the consistency of how we have ruled since May of 11, based on the subdivision regulations in place, that I'm going to vote with the staff.
Craig.
Andre.
I was going to ask if there's also some, if there's any comparability in lot frontage width, just I'm sort of being the devil's advocate in asking. I mean, I see a few narrow lots on this side of the street, a few on the other side, too. But I just was wondering if the plan, the frontage are 50-foot lots, are there some, 59 and 60, are they 50-foot lots or roughly? Or how do they compare in lot width on this same side of the street?
I can't remember exactly what those two lots are, but I will say that most of these lots, they're a little larger than what they appear on the screen. They're fairly wide lots.
Okay. So, 50-foot is more than anomaly?
They're all 100 or a little larger.
And is this, somebody said that this lot was three times the size of other lots on the street. Is that accurate?
I would have to look at those numbers. I don't have those calculations in front of me.
Well, I just, this is a, you know, I'm really torn on all of these. As we've said, I think that if we did talk about comparability, which is the word in our definition, we still have to believe that the staff is being consistent and like, like you said, we're talking about the ability to change the rules, which we can do. I wish, do you have a, well, I don't know. I just, I feel like there are other lots in this area that are small, which doesn't make this so much the anomaly. I mean, if I, if it were me, I would prefer to take it down, have the two lots, lots two and three be one lot, and then have four and five maybe in the back as smaller lots. To me, that would be a balance struck. I don't think that's what we're talking about right now.
Chairman, may I?
I don't have anything else.
Not unless the commissioner's got a question of him.
Yeah.
Do you want to crack a question?
Fair five.
If the commissioner's got a question of him.
The design or anything?
No. Let's say he has a question of him, it's public hearing, close. I need a motion.
I move we approve staff recommendation.
Got a motion, a second, to approve staff recommendations, all in favor. Opposed?
No.
Let me see, a show of hands, all in favor. Motion carries. Ready for item 22.
Item 22 is another subdivision request. This is for final plat approval. The property in question is located on Wallace Lane. This is just to the north of Julia Green School. The request is for final plat approval to create two single-family residential lots. Staff is recommending approval with conditions. This is the subject site. It currently contains a single-family home. There is a stream that runs along, just kind of parallel with Wallace, near the front of the property. The zoning is RS-20, so it permits single-family residential only. And this, with the zoning, it permit two single-family lots, no more. This is the plat, calls for two, again, two lots. Lot one is a little over 26,000 square feet. Lot two is a little over 21,000 square feet. It preserves a platted setback from the original subdivision, which is 87 feet, which is represented by the blue line. Access is shared from the area outlined in yellow, which is the existing driveway, which includes the crossing over the stream. This is in a residential low policy, which permits a density of up to two dwelling units per acre. The analysis was run on the east side of Wallace Lane. With the 20 units, it represents basically about 19 acres, so the density is approximately 1.3, 1.03 dwelling units per acre, and falls within the RL policy. So, staff is recommending approval with conditions, which is also, the condition pertains to sidewalks, as this triggers sidewalk requirements.
So, items open for public hearing. Your applicant would be allowed 10 minutes. Keep two back for rebuttal if you care.
My name is John Burrettle. I live at 5474 Franklin Pike Circle. Once again, I don't believe that my interpretation of the staff's has any ambiguity. This lot subdivision request does meet the zoning, does meet the land use policy, and meets the current interpretation of the one-tier approach. Thank you very much for your thoughtful consideration of all of this. Lady Alda Draper, and I'm out here. We request you approve this two-lot subdivision. I'd like to reserve two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition?
I'm the councilperson for this area. And we've had a lot of discussion about the one-tier test or the two-tier test. I think if you look at this, that this is an example of a typical subdivision, where they split right down the middle. And whether you decide on the one-tier or the two-tier, that's what we, you know, you go with that on this one. But this one, the one that's on the screen right now, if you look at this, this constitutes a flag lot. And it's not treated under 3.5 with the one-tier test or the two-tier test, whatever, that's irrelevant. This is a flag lot within the meaning of 3.42D. It gets special treatment. It gets the two-tier test. And why is this the flag lot? Look at it. It has a shared driveway. The only way to get to the, this back lot is basically a fiction. It's shown as building area up here, but it's all underwater. The only way you could build on this is to build back here and then build up front with a shared driveway. That's the definition of a flag lot. I was concerned about this, so I asked to meet with Doug Sloan. I showed him these two things right side by side, just like this, and he said, "Councilman Todd, the more I look at this, I agree with you, this is a flag lot." He said that to me. Council Lady Evans was in the room. This is a flag lot. It gets the two-tier test. So, when it gets the two-tier test, you get into comparability, and all these people are going to tell you how this is so out of comparability with this street. So, it's, it's just not comparable. And if, this is the most bizarre thing, if you let this go through, this lot is being chopped up. Not only is there a creek in front, there's a wet water feature in the back. The lot in the back goes straight up. They already are starting to dump mass quantities of dirt back there that's so out of character with the neighborhood. But let these people tell you why it's so long. And this should be treated differently than the other four. This gets the two-tier test. It's a flag lot. The head of plan has said it's a flag lot. Thank you.
My name is Heidi Welch. I live at 4010 Wallace Lane, which is about six houses down from this lot. I've lived there 19 years. I live on the east side of Wallace Lane. This lot is also on the east side of Wallace Lane. It says it's on the west side in your own report. That's incorrect. The east and west sides of Wallace Lane are completely different from each other. The east side of Wallace Lane is a unique street in Green Hills with a major creek running through it, hilly yards that go up and down, houses set back much further than even the setback requirements, only one house per acre, many trees and much wildlife. Our street is actually historically called Wallace Woods. You probably know this street. It's the street that where the Julia Green School is on the corner, and in fact, the whole south of that line of that lot butts up against Julia Green Elementary School property line. The property owners on this street bought our properties years ago because of the country feel, the low density, the quietness, and the wildlife. As Councilwoman Todd told you, this is a flag lot under Nashville subdivision regulations under section 3.42D. Quote, "Residential flag lots shall not be permitted," quote. Also, under this item, it states that the proposed lot should fit into the character of the area and are consistent with the general plan, and further states, quote, "The residential unit on the lot with frontage comparable to other lots in the area shall face the street." This proposed flag lot is not comparable in any way on our side of the street, on Wallace Lane. There are no flag lots on our street. There are no houses with setback variances. There is only one house per acre. All houses are set back much further from the street. There are no split or shared or dual driveways. All of the lots have many trees. This plan does not fit our character, the developmental pattern, or compatibility of the street.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I'm Liz Wiseman. I live at 4115 Skyline Drive, and that is diagonal, this property is diagonally behind my lot. Wallace Road has house after house on these large lots. The whole character of the street and this neighborhood is threatened by this proposed subdivision. You set a precedent that's hard to take back when you start something like this. The new houses on these subdivided lots are in no way affordable housing. They're all very expensive. And whether or not there's a huge demand for this kind of development is irrelevant, except to the people who are making the money. I respectfully request that you vote no on the Veilwood Heights subdivision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mark Tully. I live at 4013 Wallace Lane. I've lived there for 37 or 8 years. I'm on the opposite side from Wallace Woods. I'm on the west side of Wallace. And the east side of Wallace is a unique place. I spoke to Matt Pritchard, our state nationalist, emeritus on the site, and he mentioned Dr. Crowell, the Vanderbilt biologist, who according to Mac was the greatest biologist in our state, who lived in Wallace Woods, who perpetuated our wonderful wildflowers. Matt Pritchard made the statement that Wallace Woods topography is so special. It's a pocket ecosystem in Green Hills. We have a higher diversity of wildflowers than Radnor Lake. We have Cooper's hawks that live in our neighborhood and raise three chicks or four a year. A flag lot, a house in front of another one, is just totally out of character. The lots will fall to this type of development, one after another. Wallace Wood will be gone. And Matt Pritchard calls it the most diverse fauna and floral area of Green Hills, and we think it needs to be preserved.
Thank you.
I'm Martin Burns. I live at 4128 Wallace Lane. That red line right there on the bottom one, where 32 is, that's where my house is. 18 years ago, when my wife and I went to look at the house, the wife that worked with you over at St. Thomas for about 10 years, and, you know, as nurses, you know, you smell things, you know, they'll talk, nurses can diagnose cancer from the smell sometimes. You know what I'm, you know what I'm talking about? This smells bad. This deal. I moved there from Hillsborough West End, where I was represented by Stuart, and I appreciate that he seems to stand up for the people still. Anyway, we pull up in front of this house, and she goes, "It's too small." And I said, "Look." I took off from work. Guy says there's this big window thing in the back. I'm going to go look. Well, here's the big window thing. On that picture, my house is built kind of like a C, so you can't see the whole thing. But there's this floor-to-ceiling glass, 30 feet. We've never seen the neighbors there for 18 years, and all of a sudden, we see this big pile of rocks that this gentleman, who has come before you, not had in hand, he's, you know, he grew up in the South, he walks in here, talks to you guys with his hat on? on? It smells bad to me. Talking about all these machinations, he came to me one time with an offer, but I couldn't talk about it because it involved somebody in Metro Government, and if he got out, you know, and, you know, affordable housing, you're talking about, well, somebody could have bought that house for $387,000 like him and done okay, and made mortgage payments and raised families there. I gotta go.
Thank you.
Hard to follow that. My name is Errol Elstein. I own property and live at property 4010 Wallace Lane, down the road from the proposed subdivision. Just a quick comment about the two-tier approach. It seems to me that the concept of general comparability apparently isn't working for your own staff because they're proposing that you adopt the two-tier approach. Wallace Lane is an established neighborhood. It's not an evolving neighborhood, although I think Mr. Brittle would like it to be. I think therefore, any proposal should be evaluated in terms of maintaining the character of the neighborhood. As was mentioned before, Wallace Lane retains a lot of the character of Wallace Woods. Many trees in the front and in the rear of the houses, especially on the east side of the lane. This is one of the few wooded residential areas in Green Hills and perhaps in Davidson County. We already live with the need for NES to remove trees, as well as having to remove any damage by storms or disease. To develop a lot with two houses means they're going to take out additional trees, losing the character of the remaining Wallace Woods. They've already taken some trees out. The proposal for a flag lot, which is, this apparently is because of a single driveway, I understand requires the two-tier approach. Therefore, I respectfully request the commission to deny this request.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Reggie Henderson. I live at 4123 Wallace Lane, diagonally across the lane from the property. I retired out of California seven years ago. Mr. Brittle was the listing agent for my home. I'm very proud of my home. It's the first new home I ever had. And I've landscaped it, but I've also had numerous problems with Sugar Tree Creek running in front of my house. It backs up, tree trunks come down, the stream, debris, twigs, branches, tires. I call Stormwater and say, "Can you help clean it out?" "Well, maybe in six or eight weeks." So I go out and I clear the culvert where it crosses under Wallace Lane. The culvert is very small. It cannot handle the water flow as it crosses from the west side of the lane to the east side. It flows right in front of the subject property. It is set back. There's natural stream back there. I'm concerned what's going to happen to that stream that feeds into Sugar Tree Creek when they put two houses on the lot. And recent houses have been constructed where they've dug the granite out of the ground, mounded it up in front of the yards, and made hills. Is that what's going to happen to this lot? Because there are broken-up concrete pieces from the old house carport that are mounded. It looks like they're going to build the house on the hill. I would urge you, please, do not approve this flag lot. It's unacceptable to the neighborhood. And I fell in love with this lane because driving down it reminds me, when I go home or leave my home, of a country lane in the middle of the city. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Laurie Todd. I live at 4005 Wallace Lane. And Reggie mentioned the culvert. And it's just a habit on our street when we're driving over the culvert to wait for the other traffic to pass. We never have two cars pass at once, which is just to let you know how narrow our street is. And all along the east side of it is this pretty little creek and these woods from one end of the street to the other, the entire thing. So, you know, to tear up this lot, I drove up there today. There's no way to build two houses there without tearing down so many of those trees, which is going to just change the entire feel of our street, unless he built a treehouse. But so many people love this street. I mean, I have compassion too for people who may have gotten committed in this and have some money in it, and it's going to cause some harm to them for this not to work out. But I also have compassion for what's true. And, you know, to mess up this street and this pretty area that so many people enjoy, all the mothers and parents who leave Julia Green, so many of them take a right and come down our street. It's just not a fit to do this, and it would change the entire atmosphere of Wallace Lane. Thank you.
I'm Beth O'Shea. I live at 4305 Wallace Lane. And as a schoolteacher for 40 some-odd years with Metro Schools, I want to first point out to you that according to the way a teacher would read Article 3.5, Number 1 and Number 2, those two things are two separate items, and you have, you would, they both matter. So I'm here to speak on behalf of the two-tier system, or whatever we're calling it now, the two-tier approach. Also, I want to point out and echo what Laurie said. When we sent our first child to Julia Green for a special class that he took a half-day a week, his teacher would take him on a little walking field trip, he was four-years-old, down to the creek at Wallace Lane, and he said, "Mama, this is where I want to live. It is beautiful." So what we do, we moved, we didn't live there then, but we moved to Wallace Lane. It is the wildflowers, the birds, the wildlife. My animal friend, which is my dog, loves the creek. This flag lot is going to change all of that. Please, I urge you, do not approve this development.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tanya Solnik. I live at 3914 Wallace Lane, and I don't know about the rest of you all, but I'm starting to get a sugar low. It's been a long afternoon. I have a couple things I want to say before I get to what I was going to say. I guess, in short, before I speak, I'd like to say something. There's been some mention of the huge need for housing in Green Hills, but on our street there are many houses that are for sale, and that they have been for sale for a long time and have not sold. And several houses that have been for sale have been taken off the market temporarily, perhaps, and several of them also have been changed over to rental properties until times are more beneficial for sale. So we have, I don't think we need more houses to sell. I just want to go to the point of Wallace Lane is very narrow, and it also runs alongside it our creek. Sugar Tree Creek is a blue-line creek. And what we also haven't mentioned is the runoff problem. And we have had a lot of, well, we were very affected by the 2010 flood. Every year, our, the creek comes up halfway in our yard. I'm very worried about extra runoff and from new construction. We've already had a lot of new construction. And it's not only that, it's every time new construction starts on our street, it seems that they don't seem to pay attention to the people that are already there. They seem to be very inconsiderate of us and of our creek and of our wildlife. And it's very frustrating, and we drink that water that runs through our creek, Nashville, all of Nashville, and we need to keep, it's not just the quantity of water that flows into the creek, it's the quality. And if we keep putting more driveways and so on and so forth, I would just like to request that you deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant, two minutes for rebuttal.
Tried to leave my hat on. My 13-year-old daughter already believes I need to be dying my hair. When she sees my hair tonight, she's going to be fit to be tied. I do not believe this is a flag lot. This has more than 50 feet on its frontage. We could have cut it right down the middle and put a second bridge and a second driveway in. I don't believe in that because I spend more, as much time as anybody around protecting these creeks. Ms. Solnik will tell you, when we were building the house, that one of the neighbors talked about, that he bought when I had listed, he has a shared driveway on a big bridge because I only wanted to go across that creek once. We just subdivided 4,000 walls. We re-agreed to do one driveway and one creek because I wanted to cross that creek once. That is why this one was done this way. It's got an irregular shape because we're trying to deal with that wet weather conveyance in a responsible way. We could have put two drives, we could have put two bridges, we could have cut the line right down the middle. We chose not to, to work with the topography and the water on this lot. All the lots across the street are half an acre. This is a neighborhood that is made up of half-acre lots. These just happen to be larger. A flag lot means that there's insufficient frontage, and I don't know the exact terminology, but I do have some people on my staff who do. These are over 50 feet. I believe Ms. Solnik will tell you that when we were building those houses, I say "we", my client was building those houses six, seven years ago, she came to me and thought we were causing some bubbles in her creek. And so I'm the one who went up the creek investigating and found the pool that was dumping into the creek. So we do respect these creeks and these lots. This is not a flag-shaped lot. It's in irregular shape. Thank you.
Need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion, second, close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Stuart.
Well, I don't think you're going to believe this, but I'm really not for this, this one. I'm sorry. So I won't belabor that point. I think we've made most of the arguments all the way through. I do want to make one thing clear, though, because I know it's probably been a frustrating night for a lot of folks out there, and they're wondering about this process, which I'm disappointed in what the results are being, but I just think I need to say that. I know, I've known a great number of folks who have testified today and who are in the audience, who are for every one of these. None of them have called me. And that's, it's not illegal to call, you know, it's, it is worth, in case you're wondering about this process, it's not a matter, there's a legitimate dispute here based on some things that in the 13 years I've been on the commission, we've never really had these kind of considerations. But this isn't a matter of who talked to who beforehand. I don't know about everybody else, but I didn't, I know some very good friends who have a lot at stake in this going opposite of how I've been voting. So I just don't, this experience, for many of you, the first time here, to make you think somehow that this is a fatally flawed government. It's a set of circumstances that none of us wish we were under. And I think we'll make some progress in a few minutes on fixing it, but that's all I have to say.
Hunter.
Thanks. Thanks for saying that, Stuart. Yeah, this is not easy stuff, no matter how you're voting tonight. I would like, someone made a comment earlier, and it may have even been the previous case, but we don't see many subdivisions here because many of them are approved at staff level. So I always like to remind myself and remind the other commissioners, and maybe most importantly tonight, remind the public our obligation with respect to subdivisions versus most of the cases that we see, which are zone changes or policy changes, because it's very different. Our role with a subdivision is, as I understand it, very different than it is with, in our obligation, and our job is different. And so I'd love for the staff to give, or maybe Ms. Jones to specifically explain as briefly as possible, our role with subdivisions.
Typically, your role in reviewing subdivision regulations is more ministerial than it is anything else. You have adopted a set of regs that you are charged with applying to a certain set of circumstances. And so if you find that the criteria that is laid out in those regs has been met, then we would advise that you follow through with that, with applying that. If you find that it has not been met, then likewise, you should not follow through with an approval on that. But again, the criteria has already been laid out by virtue of your adoption of the subregs. And we've seen that most recently in the approval of concept plans that have come up, where this similar kind of situation, where you've already adopted a way that you're going to look at certain kinds of things, and as long as you're consistently applying that apples-to-apples kind of analysis to the cases, then I think that's the best position that the board can be in. Does that kind of answer your question?
Right. Whereas with many of the cases we hear with zoning changes, for example, we take into consideration a lot of other things besides just our regulations. We take into consideration impacts on the neighborhood, impacts on property owners, upstream, downstream, traffic, all of those things. But technically, we really aren't supposed to consider all of those things with a subdivision reg. Is that correct?
That's correct if, unless there is an argument that is made based on a failure to meet the regs or the standard or the criteria. Theoretically, people could come before you and make arguments based on this particular lot does not meet the code standard, or this particular application is not consistent with the regs, and here is why. And those are the kinds of arguments that you can consider. But going beyond the scope of what the, it's my opinion, that going beyond the scope of what the regs require would be something that we would not advise.
Legal point of order.
Yes, sir.
We've all made an argument that this is under Section 3.4 and not 3.5. She's addressing Section 3.5. And 3.4 does give you the power to look at the impact on the neighbors. That's the whole, that was the whole presentation on this point. So I strongly urge you to consider the impact on the neighbors. This point is, this case is different than the two that were before. This is a flag lot, it's under Section 3.4. And so from a legal standpoint, I think you all need to make a finding that this is not a flag lot. I think these neighbors may want to preserve their rights to go forward and ask a judge at some point to consider whether or not this is a flag lot or whether they're under 3.4. So I think we need a threshold finding first, is are we under Section 3.4 or are we under Section 3.5?
Thank you.
Let me, if it pleases the chair, I'd like to address that. I wasn't speaking, I think the statement was made that I was speaking from a particular section. I was not. I was speaking of the subdivision regulations generally as they are applied. That having been said, if the board believes that it is in question as to whether or not it is a flag lot or whether it is not, then certainly, that's something that you need to discuss. And if you find that it is a flag lot, then you need to apply the regs as it relates to flag lots. If you find out however that it is not, then you apply the standards that we've already been talking about.
Perfect. Thank you.
So could the staff address the definition of flag lot, please?
Yeah, a flag lot, and I think most of you should have this in your subdivision regulations on page 72 of the draft ones. This is not new, it's just, it includes that. A flag lot which has a minimum frontage on a public or private street that is reached via a private drive or lane and otherwise meets the dimensional standards of its zoning code. So to me, the operable part of this would be to make a determination as to whether this has minimum frontage on a public or private street. I don't think anybody's arguing it's reached via a private drive.
Does it give a minimum dimension?
Does not give that. That's under your discretion to make that determination.
And given the legal point of order, is the frontage on the top flag lot is unbuildable. It might as well not even be there because if you went out and examined the property, none of that is buildable, and you can't really count that. You're going to have a house in front and a house in back here. So that's a flag lot to a layperson.
Sorry, what page was that?
72.
Yeah. But that's one I've got too.
I just feel a need to remind the board that unless you're gonna open the public hearing, we probably need to be, just be aware that there have been other people that have tried to address the board, and the board has not allowed them to do that. So, you do wanna be consistent in how you allow that.
Yeah, so...
With all respect to the councilman, but you have a process, so...
Uh, yeah, and due respect to the councilman. Have we done this in the past, a legal point?
In some cases, yeah.
Okay.
And I think this is relevant tonight.
I just wanna be fair to the rest of the...
This is a little bit out of the ordinary tonight, so I'm trying to be a little bit lenient to...
Okay. Okay, I just wanna make sure we're fair and not say precedents. Um, wow, wow.
I'm sorry.
You finished, you looking at the legal, at the flag lot. So, I've heard all the argument about this being flag lots. I know we've looked at flag lots before, and I'm not, you know, in favor of shared driveways either, but I understand that this means then you only cross in this creek once, and there are other lots in this neighborhood who have shared driveway. Um, as it relates to how the houses are gonna sit on this lot, is one in front of the other?
Well, there are building envelopes, and you can see those on the plan. So, you got an eighty-five-foot front building envelope for the front, so neither, neither home could go past that. So, the problem with this is that you have a stream. I think the plan is to put a house, one in front of the other, but however, you could put a house side by side, it'd be a narrower house, but there is space within the building envelope to legally build a home there. So, if this was split right down the middle, you could still build one home in front of the other, as long as you're within the zoning setbacks.
Jason, if you would, show us the street where the other houses on Wallace, how they're setting back.
This, uh...
See if the clearest one you have.
And I'll say, this street has an interesting setback. All the lots on this side of the street are platted, and it's kind of a crescent. As you get towards the middle of the street, houses are, the setbacks are further, and as it goes towards the ends, it actually comes out closer.
Mm-hmm.
And those, some of the houses don't meet those setbacks, but that's the platted setback.
Um, that was my question about the setback and making, the setback. I had another thought. I'll listen to Commissioner Ponder while I'm thinking.
We'll come back to you. Philip?
One question, this picture, is this house gonna remain where it is?
I'm assuming it's not. It would be across a property line, so it will be demolished.
Okay.
And there will be two homes.
It was torn down so fast that the Mexican taking the...
Public hearing's closed.
Okay. Well, going back to my original observations on the two previous cases and looking at upper street here, again, I don't see how this could be called comparable, period.
Andre.
What comment?
Greg.
Well, you know, this, this particular case, I mean, I think the physical attributes almost lend itself to being a flag lot in a way that the only way you can build on it is meets the definition of a flag lot. So, I'm kinda leaning that way. I wanna hear what the other commissioners say.
Jeff.
Ms. Jones, if in fact it's a flag lot, does that then put us to the two-tier test?
It's, uh, no, sir, it doesn't. And the reason it doesn't is because the whole two-tier analysis is based in that other particular subreg. What it does do, though, it does take you over to applying subsection, it's page twenty of your lot requirements, it's under 3.4.
Yeah, it has your, its own criteria.
Uh-huh, it has its own criteria.
And it's, that criteria would be subsection two, the proposed lots fit into the character of the area and are consistent with the general plan. Now, that's a provision of determining whether you want to make, one, if you decided to flag lot, then that, then you would have to decide whether you want to provide an exception to that prohibition on flag lots. And part of providing that exception to the prohibition on flag lots would be a determination that it fits into the character of the area and is consistent with the general plan.
Exactly.
All right. Doug, can you comment on, did you tell Councilman Evans and Councilman Todd that this was a flag lot?
I did not. What I said at that meeting was that by that definition, it was easy to see how every lot in Davidson County can be considered a flag lot because it's not very guiding in making a clear determination about what a flag, minimum frontage, and that meets the other dimensional areas of a lot, for the area, I mean, for the zoning, I think, is what it says. That was all I said. I didn't say, yes, this is a flag lot. That was taken out of context.
All right. I'm not a flag lot expert. In my naive opinion, this is a flag lot, and then that opens us up to, does this fit the character of the street? And I don't think it does. So, in this particular case, I'm gonna vote against staff.
Hunter.
I'd just like to point out that these lots are fifty-three and sixty feet wide, which I would not consider minimum frontage. I think traditionally, a flag lot that I understand and have seen is where you are literally utilizing minimum amount of frontage to be able to have access. So, that's ten or twenty feet. And it, you know, essentially goes straight back to a much wider piece of property. This is, you know, these lots are wider than many lots around town, and so I wouldn't necessarily consider them a flag lot. It was pointed out earlier that the pattern throughout the neighborhood, the front-to-back setback, you know, varies, you know, so many of, many of the homes are set way back, some are a little closer. Again, you know, you know, we may not like the outcome here, but, but again, that's not what we're being asked. We're being asked to determine whether this meets our regulations or not. And in my mind, this is not, doesn't meet the definition of a flag lot, given that it's got over fifty feet of frontage on both, on both lots.
Anyone care to make a motion?
I'm not prepared to make a motion, but I wanna, I wanna look at page seventy-two again in the flag lot definition. So, basically, it's defined by the term minimum frontage. Do we have any guidance about what that has been interpreted to mean by court case or otherwise?
I'm not aware of any particular case that deals with what the minimum frontage would be in this, in this instance. There could be, that would be something I would have to research for you.
But your interpretation of flag lot is something that says it can be considered a prohibited flag lot if it doesn't have minimum, minimum frontage?
Well, I actually hadn't rendered an interpretation with regard to the definition of flag lots. That's actually a part of your code, how it's defined. And you would be the final arbiter as to how that, how that definition is applied and what it means. I can't give you any guidance really beyond what you've defined. I actually looked, I have Title Seventeen with me, and I looked in Title Seventeen just to make sure that there wasn't a definition there, and there is not. So, it would be up to you to articulate how you are defining it and base. You could obviously base it on what you have considered flag lot before, and that might be something that staff might be able to help you determine. I wouldn't be able to assist you with that part of it, though.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if this is a flag lot. I realize from a result orientation, I should try to know, given what I've been voting on, but I cannot vote to say this is a flag lot when the two, when it's, when the percentages are so close. But what is it, sixty and fifty degrees? I am unprepared to vote to approve or disapprove this tonight in light of the argument that's been raised about flag lots. I'd like to think about that and see if there is any case law, and there may be, and maybe Mr. Sloan has figured it out.
I was gonna, I was just gonna point out, one, this isn't a real good view of it, but if you look right here, this is the typical, what a typical flag lot looks like, where it's got a real narrow, real narrow frontage along a street, and then it goes back to an area that's much wider in the rear. That's the typical flag lot that we see. The one on this case, we are, when we evaluated this, we recommended it that is, because we thought it was an irregular lot but not a flag lot. This, I wish I had a little bit more close-up view of this one, but it does show that there's just enough width for a driveway to get back to a larger building site.
So, the criticism is where this drive is and where it comes across that there's not a, it's a flag lot because there's not a lot of usage at the entrance, so not to...
Right. It's sort of like the flag pole, the part, the real narrow part where you have enough for a driveway but not really a building site. And so, that's...
Just a minute, Judy. I don't think he's saying that because the one side of the front isn't used.
No, no, that was one of the comments that was made.
Okay, okay, right. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Got a comment, Hunter?
Yeah.
I just wanna point out.
It's the black one.
It was under the paper. I mean, I know our definition doesn't specifically say this, but the word minimum to me, well, that example that Bob pointed out is very much what I've always understood as a, as a flag lot. And I would also suggest that the reason why they are distinguished as a, as a different type of lot is because a flag lot would typically not meet the frontage requirements of a, of the zoning that's in place, that it's an exception to. And if it meets, you know, if it has the front, required frontages, then it really doesn't qualify as a, as a flag lot. It's just a lot, you know, and so, and these two lots have the required frontages.
What are the required frontages in a world of no real definition to zoning? Required by zoning, not by, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I wonder, well, let me rephrase this. I would like to move that we defer this one meeting for purposes of reevaluating it on the other section dealing with flag lots and decide it at a future meeting.
Got a motion.
It is a motion.
Got a motion second to defer.
One meeting.
One meeting. That'd be a general...
By the purpose, uh...
Since we've been making points of law, I can put a second bridge and a second driveway.
Come to the microphone, if you would, John.
That's true.
More than happy to put a second bridge and a second driveway. We don't have to have an easement there. We're just trying to help the creek, so...
I think maybe that, that's really right, isn't it? It's, it's, the reason it's there isn't because of topography but a choice.
They only have to cross the bridge one, one time.
We got a motion second. You wanna withdraw your second?
Yeah, I do. I wanna, I wanna kill the whole thing, but not on that basis.
Who made the second?
I'll withdraw.
You withdraw the second, you withdraw the motion, okay. Then we need a motion.
I would like to move we disapprove based on the fact that it's not generally comparable with the, with the area.
Got a motion second to disapprove. All in favor?
Aye.
Let me see, a show of hands. Okay. Motion carries, there's five, so, disapproved. Ready for item twenty-three, Jason.
Oh, my friend's up.
You presented twenty-three? Okay.
Hello, commissioners, my name is Carrie Logan, and this is item twenty-three on your agenda. This is a request to create two single-family lots on Janey Avenue north of McGavick Pike in Inglewood. The property is Zoned RS 7.5. This is the plat, which shows the two proposed lots and the existing structure, which has an existing driveway. And they are proposing, they are subdividing the lots in order to preserve the existing structure, and because Lot Two is less than fifty feet wide, there's a section of the subdivision regulations that requires a joint access easement. However, the Planning Commission can grant an exception under that same section due to existing conditions, and staff is recommending approval of the subdivision with an additional driveway and not requiring joint access because of the existing driveway to the existing garage. The policy is residential medium, which allows four-to-nine dwelling units per acre. And the subdivision is generally comparable because it's within the policy of four-to-nine units per acre at three-point-four units per acre. And staff is recommending approval with conditions, which is a sidewalk condition included in the staff report, and including the exception for the driveway on Lot Two.
Item's open for public hearing. That could be allowed ten minutes. Keep two back to the bubble.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name's Greg Terry. I'm with James Tarrant Associates. I'm the land surveyor or applicant on this project. And it's, it's pretty basic. It's, to me, I'm a small land surveying company, so I do my share, you know, my fair share of what I would consider two-lot subdivisions. It's where someone has a bigger lot and they can subdivide it into two. So, when we, when I started this, when I met with the homeowner, I had asked him to go to planning, to go down there and talk to planning, make sure that it's gonna work before we even got involved, you know, in detail with it. So, they seemed to think that it, that it met all the requirements of the subdivision regulations, so then we proceeded forward with it. And we thought it would get approved administratively, but now we have a one-tier approach and a two-tier approach. So, I'm asking, requesting the Planning Commission, you know, approval of the two-lot plat that we prepared.
Anyone else in order to wish to speak in support?
Is this in the very same position?
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name is Jeff Miller, and I am the owner of the mentioned property, and it's a pretty straightforward partition, as Mr. Terry suggested. We meet the zoning requirements. It's a flat lot. There are no creeks or streams or wildlife, and I appreciate your approval on this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, I'm Margot Chambers. I live at thirty-eight oh three Princeton Avenue in Nashville. I'm asking to disapprove this item because you're not using a two-tiered approach, and please value comparability, and please do not defer. And you also have to pass the subdivision regulations to... And you also have to pass the subdivision regulations tonight, or you've got a conflict between the last thing you just disapproved and the other two things you did approve, you didn't use compatibility, you're just very inconsistent, so, sorry, it's a long night, please disapprove, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, you've got two minutes for rebuttal if you'd like to speak. Motion to close a public hearing. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Jeff?
No comments.
Greg? No comments. Andre? Any comments? Is there a motion?
I just have a question. What's the minimum lot frontage for this zoning district?
There's not a minimum lot frontage for R 7.5.
Thank you.
Any comments?
I'll do one.
Okay.
Let me make a comment. In this case, personally, I'm looking at the block across the street, there are some very narrow lots in there, so whether that's legal to compare those or not, I still think that, that there are some in the neighborhood, in the immediate neighborhood that are narrow lots, so I can rationalize a little different approach to this one.
You want to make a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Motion second to prove, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. What opposed? Ready for item 24.
Mr. Chairman, this is item number 24. This is a request for a final plat to create three lots, where two exist today, for, in two lots that comprise .181 acres of property located in the southwest corner of Graybar and Leland Lane. This property is generally located south of Woodmont Boulevard and east of Granny White Pike. As I noted, there are two existing dwellings on the property, and the intention is to create three residential lots. Staff's recommendation is to approve with conditions. The zoning for the lot is R 10, allows one and two family dwellings on a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. The proposed subdivision would create three lots, it would essentially create two 10,000 square foot lots around the existing dwellings that front Graybar Lane and utilize the rear yards of those two same lots to create a third lot that fronts Leland Lane. This subdivision proposes two lots to be utilized in the future for two family dwellings and leaving the corner lot noted as a single-family dwelling. Access for these, the two lots that have frontage on Leland, Leland Lane would be restricted to one point as it develops in the future. In the policy guiding review or land use decisions as RLM, residential low-medium, it prescribes a density between two with a maximum up to four dwelling units an acre. And analyzing this subdivision against the area, there are 15 existing dwellings, three new dwellings could be proposed with this final plat for a total of 18 dwelling units. The area comprises 4.5 acres. As it's a corner lot, it fronts two streets, so we took lots going west fronting Graybar and going south fronting Leland on the same block. The resulting density is right at four dwelling units an acre, so it's consistent with the land use policies prescribed density. In conclusion, staff is recommending approve with condition as the density is consistent with the RLM policy.
Item's open for public hearing. It could be allowed 10 minutes, and keep two for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Roy Dale, and I'm approaching you again. I was already struggling for you guys earlier, but I think you rose to the moment. You could show that based upon the policy you have today, you can determine general comparability, and that's what you did. On this particular subdivision, it's different than all the other subdivisions that you've looked at, in that every lot meets the, you know, when they, if you were to do the tier two test, or you were to look at the amount of frontage, they all exceed the frontage. Of the other 11 lots that you looked at, only one did. So, I think this is a very clear case for you, even if you applied the tier two approach, because I think, you know, when you look at, after, after you review this, after you make your recommendation on this and you move on to the next item, I think it's important for you to make sure you put within your language, general comparability, just like you have right now, that gives you this flexibility, which you just exercised a few minutes ago. So, this is, to me, probably the easiest subdivision for you to look at and see that it is generally comparable to the area. If you were to apply the tier two approach, lots one and two are smaller in size than the averages, but those two lots are only impacted by the lots you're creating. It doesn't impact adjacent lots. So, as you have applied your, as has, as has been applied since, I guess, May of 2011, the one-tier approach, this absolutely is consistent with what you've done in the past, it meets that test, and it's actually compatible based upon a tier two, which you've not exercised in the past, in that the lot frontages are so wide. So, this should fit perfectly within the community. I'll be really surprised if there's anybody from the community here that will speak, but I'll reserve two minutes and just invent.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition? Please come to the microphone.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I love my town, I think we all do, and I love my neighborhood. I just celebrated 30 years...
Excuse me, your name and address?
My name is James L. Myers. I live at 1010 Graybar.
Thank you.
And said property is within sight of my property. I'm not next door, but I live across the street. I bought in the neighborhood for many reasons, mostly because it's beautiful, and the school zone is wonderful. We raised our daughter there, and she made a great success of herself, and we love our home and plan to stay there for the rest of our lives. We love our little brick homes with hardwood floors and dimensional lumber that were made in the late 1930s, the majority, and we'd like to see the neighborhood stay the same. And if you all drove through it, I'm sure some of you are familiar with it, you would see, a lot of us have gardens, and there's a nice variety of appearance of the lots. Most of all, the neighbors know each other, most of us do. I know everybody who surrounds me, next to me and across the street, with the exception of this property on the corner, whose landlord, I believe, is an absentee. And perhaps you, ladies and gentlemen, have seen the signs around the city that say, "Build like you live next door." This is what I ask of you tonight, and this is why I ask you to disapprove this. I don't live next door, I live across the street, but I think that's the spirit of it, and I would ask you to consider that you might live in the neighborhood. And in conclusion, I'd like to say, repeat what some of my friends on Gale Lane said, their distress about too much density. Perhaps you've seen the development, I hesitate to use that word because it's a euphemism, of a, a slum built next door to our Krogers that's on Gale Lane. It looks like a mining town from the 1900s.
Thank you, sir.
I ask your disapproval. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Good evening, I'm Margot Chambers, 3803 Princeton Avenue, Nashville. Please disapprove this item because you are not applying a two-tiered approach equally. I really enjoy hearing these stories from the citizens. I know this has got to be long and hard on you, but this is the quality of life that's declining because of your insistence on the regulations of sticking to the one-tier versus the two-tier, so please disapprove, and also, please make sure that you get through the adoption of the subdivision regulations tonight, or there will be no protection for citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Got two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My blood sugar's a little low right now, so bear with me. My heart's skipping a little bit, but that happens to me. Again, this meets the land use policy, meets the zoning, it passes the tier one approach that you have applied since May of 2011, but as a bonus, as a bonus, on these three lots, the lot frontages are comparable if you were to apply, and I think it's in your report there, if you looked at the average lot frontages within this area, each of these lots exceed that, and that's something you haven't seen on these other applications, so not, not saying they're bad, but this is, this is a much easier subdivision, I think, for you to consider and to approve tonight based upon the staff's recommendations. I know that beyond this, you're going to come up with a solution that will satisfy everybody, I know y'all are, I know you can do that. Secretary Bernhardt, I remember one night at the council meeting, Councilman Wallace wanted to rezone the entire county RS something, and I don't think that's going to happen. So, I hope that people that have been here tonight have heard these deliberations and have some faith in the system, because I truly believe in it, and I appreciate it very much.
Need a motion to close a public hearing. Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This being the last item for public hearing, I'm going to call on Judy. I know we've got one other, but I'm taking the prerogative to...
That's right.
...to say this. Since this is Judy's last meeting, I'm going to ask her to lead off.
Thank you. And so, after having served this great county for 12 years on this commission, I'm going to bid all of you goodnight in a little while, and you don't have to apologize for us being here so late, we've had late nights before, and we are here to serve as long as we need to. You know, I've heard tonight and have a lot of compassion for folk who move into a neighborhood, buy their home there, raise their children there, and think that everything is always going to stay the same, especially when you live in areas that haven't developed, and so you see this wonderful wooded area with the creek and with wildflowers, and you think that it's always going to be there. But the truth of the matter is, owners of that property have a right to develop it. They may not develop it for 18 years or 30 years, but when they do, they have a right to develop it, and so they come to the Planning Commission to find the best way to develop it, and so that's a lot of what we've been talking about tonight, too. But looking at this particular plan that we have in front of us right now, I will be voting to approve it because I think that it is a good plan for this piece of property.
Phil?
Thank you for your service, Judy. We'll miss you, since you sit next to me all the time, definitely. The only, you know, rationalizing the, the front footage on this, because there are already two lots there, I think this is to be considered a little differently from the others. The only thing I'm concerned about is, now, look, is this a floodplain going through the, the new lot?
Yes.
Are we going to build an arc on that lot or something?
Yes, sir, there, there is floodplain on the backside of both of these lots, and you'll note that there are some stream buffers built into this plat to, to protect or mitigate development, limit development from that floodplain and to address...
It was under water during the floods.
So, I'll tell you what the plat provides in response to the floodplain. There is a staff member from Stormwater here who wants to speak.
Please, let's listen.
Okay, good.
Steve, Miss you with Metro Stormwater. I was wondering if you guys were going to call me tonight. I didn't expect to be this late in the afternoon or evening, but, well, I mean, I expected to be here late today, I just didn't expect to speak so late. There is a little stream over there, we did make the developer or the applicant provide some stream buffers over there, and we also made them set some finished floor elevations. So, whatever the 100-year elevation was, we made them set FFEs for every lot that's four feet above that. So, Lot 3 has an FFE, and even one and two. And we made one and two provide FFEs, just in case they ever do any additions in the future. FFEs are finished floor elevation, and we require the, the bottom floor of your house to be at least four feet higher than the 100-year. So, every one of these, well, Lot 3, when they build, will be four feet above, and if one and two ever do an addition, they'll be, the addition will be four feet above two.
Will they be permitted to cut and fill on that piece of property?
They will, if they do any cutting and filling, they will have to balance whatever fill they put in the floodplain.
Okay.
And they won't be able to do any cutting or filling, they can't disturb the Zone 1 buffer, so if you look towards the very bottom, you'll see that says a little dash line, it'll say top of the bank. Right over there, there's a 30-foot Zone 1 that's an undisturbed buffer, and a Zone 2 buffer is a, it's a managed buffer that you can disturb, but it has to be replanted in some sort of vegetation, so no impervious areas in the Zone 2.
All right, this question may go back to staff, but how close can a structure snuggle up to that bottom line for lots one and two?
It's a setback issue.
Yeah, setback.
Okay. I'm sorry, Mr. Prandt, can you repeat the question for me one more time?
Okay, in building on Lot 3...
Okay.
How close can the structure come to that bottom line at the bottom of lots one and two?
They would be required to maintain, it's R 10, so that R 10 zoning district would require a five-foot side yard setback. That would be a side yard setback for this lot.
Just five feet.
For this lot, yes, sir.
Interesting. Okay, thank you very much. Andre? Greg? Jeff? No comments?
Stuart? I don't want to ask Mr. Dale to come back up, because he talks more than the staff, but what is he trying to tell me about why this is so different than the other ones? Why, why are there only two impacted lots? I mean, and does that mean we shouldn't, when we've been looking at other, a large number of lots, that we shouldn't now? What does that mean?
I don't, I don't want to try and translate for Mr. Dale, but I believe what he's suggesting is that the frontages that exist today on Graybar are not going to change with this subdivision. They'll be maintained as 77-foot lot frontages.
Okay, it'll just be the Leland, and that's not, and that impact's just 31 and 32, the way he's talking about impact?
Correct, and in fact, the rear lot that would be created, Lot 3, is, is actually wider than Lot, or parcel 31 shown on this map.
I know you haven't been here too many years, but did we not, at one point, when looking at lot comparability, we never looked beyond the block face, did we? You know what I'm saying?
I think that's why we changed it.
We did?
We did it for a while, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, you know what I'm asking?
I mean, we did it within, what was it, 300 feet circular?
Right. So, he's correct in saying this is the first one tonight that has such a limited block face for, because it's a corner lot.
Well, the one we hit on Gale was a corner lot, too. There just wasn't any other lots on, on Gray.
Hunter?
And Stuart, if I could clarify, I think the point really that Mr. Dale, I'll try to also interpret what Mr. Dale was saying, is that, you know, on, on Graybar, you're literally not changing the character of the, of the community, because you have two lots now, and at the end of this subdivision, you'll have two lots, and so, to me, more than, more than any of these, if we want to talk about character in a few minutes with Lot Number 25, you know, this one, you know, maintains the character of the community perhaps more than any of the past ones, so I'm going to go to support it.
Motion?
Remove approval.
Motion to approve, motion second to approve, staff recommendations, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No opposed?
Nope.
Okay, passed unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I just need to clarify something on, on the, I think, item 22. Y'all disapproved that, and for the record, you put in there that because you did not find it to be comparable due to the irregular shape of the lot, and is there anything else that you want in the record?
Anything you found helpful.
I just want to make sure that the record is complete, as to however you want the record.
That's certainly what I meant to say, but didn't put it in the motion.
Do you have any ideas as to what the motion was?
I'm just trying to clarify for myself, because we have to, as a staff, continue to give you recommendations based on your interpretation of your regs, and so are you saying that that is under 3.5 of the subregs or under the flag lot provisions that are...
No, I, I did not move about the flag lot. That was not my motion.
So, so your motion was based on the Section 3.5 of the subregs?
General, what he, what he said...
Was a general comparability.
Was a general comparability, based on not being generally comparable.
That it was not generally comparable?
That's what I said. It was really not the shape of the lot, right? Sorry.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure we had it in the record.
Commissioners, it's 9:15. Do you want to take a five-minute break before we get into the regulations? You want to keep going?
Three minutes, three minutes.
Three minutes?
Some of it had to go, to do so. Yeah, well, I mean, I guess people can do what they need to. Yeah, well, I mean, I guess people can do what they need to.
Okay. We'll keep going. If you need to leave for a minute, then come back in.
This is Item 25 on your agenda. These are the proposed subdivision regulation amendments. If you recall, the Planning Commission set the public hearing date for the subdivision regulation amendments on October 24th. We did have a work session on November 14th. We did present to the Planning and Zoning Committee of Metro Council on December 3rd, and we had a community meeting on December 9th, which was Monday of this week. We've also had an online comment forum up and running, and have had quite a few comments through that forum that were included in the comments that were distributed to the commissioners. We've broken the amendments into two sections, the housekeeping amendments and the infill subdivision section. The housekeeping amendments will go through pretty quickly. They are all at your desk this evening. And then most of the presentation will focus on the changes to the infill subdivision section. So the housekeeping amendments that we've proposed are a reorganization of Chapter 2 to provide greater clarity that was sorting out application types and application processes, changing the term "development plan" in the subdivision process to "final site plan," replacing the term. We did refine the flaglock criteria a little bit more, and we have changed some of the language related to exceptions and waivers, so that it is consistent throughout the subdivision regulations to say that a planning commission may grant an exception to the rules in certain cases. So what are infill subdivisions? We've been talking about them a lot tonight, but generally, they are defined in the subdivision regulations as subdivisions in areas that are previously subdivided, predominantly developed, residential lots that are zoned R and RS on an existing street. So we're talking about existing and established neighborhoods. And staff has an obligation to advise applicants during the application process and during pre-application meetings as to whether their proposal meets zoning and meets the subdivision Recently, we've seen a pretty dramatic increase in the number of infill subdivision applications, and these proposed amendments are intended to address concerns with infill subdivisions. And thinking about the amendments, we thought about what criteria should we use to determine whether a proposed infill subdivision is compatible with existing development. And we thought about lot size, lot shape, the frontage of the lots, the orientation of the lots, are they oriented to one street or another, the access, whether they have one driveway or multiple driveways, and the street setbacks that can be an established pattern in existing neighborhoods. So this is a snapshot of an existing neighborhood, just to show the varying lot types that can exist within a close proximity. You see some roads with much larger lot sizes, and some roads with much smaller lot sizes. And you see some streets where the lot pattern is different on either side of the street or across a cross street. And so when staff was looking at proposed amendments, we were trying to come up with a formula that would apply evenly to all different types of lot patterns. A brief history of lot comparability. Prior to 2011, this same section of the subdivision regulations was called lot comparability. There was a fairly complicated analysis that staff ran for each proposed subdivision, and it was difficult for applicants and community members to understand how to apply that formula due to varying lot patterns. And there were a series of exceptions that were frequently brought to the commission and frequently recommended for approval and granted by the commission. And in 2011, the lot comparability section was replaced with the infill subdivision section. Here's the current section. And in revising the section, we thought about where infill is appropriate, and our goal was to balance infill development with the preservation of existing neighborhoods, to review infill development against community character, and to establish different criteria for established neighborhoods and evolving neighborhoods based on the adopted community So this is the first section of 3.5, the proposed section. And in this section, we're proposing to change the phrase "comparable with surrounding lots" to "compatible with the general plan." And the general idea is that we're going from a requirement that the lots be similar to surrounding lots, so that they're consistent with surrounding lots, or can coexist with surrounding lots, or in coexist with the general plan. And then we outline how that's done in the next three sections. The next section talks about criteria for neighborhood maintenance, which is a community character manual policy, and then residential low, residential low medium, and residential medium, which are all land use application policies. So we took all the policies from both policy manuals and grouped them together into a bucket of sort of established neighborhood policies and a bucket of evolving neighborhood policies. And in this first section is where we're going to look at whether the proposed subdivision is compatible with the community plan. We have defined surrounding parcels that you would compare them to as the five R and RS parcels to either side of the proposed subdivision. We've also added a criteria where the commission can grant an exception to the compatibility criteria by considering a larger area, and that would have to come to the Planning Commission for that to be granted. And then it outlines the following criteria that are, have to be met to determine compatibility with the area. We did have, this is, if you look in what was provided at your desk, there is a section, there's the entire regs, and then on top, there's a revised section of the infill 3-5 section, which has a couple of changes from conversations today. The last one that came up is one of those changes, and that is that for proposed subdivisions within a historic overlay district, the Metropolitan Historic Zoning Commission shall provide a recommendation, and that'll come up again in the evolving policy.
I don't want to interrupt too much, but historic or historic?
Historic zoning commission.
Any historic designation passed upon?
In an overlay district.
So it does include conservation overlay as well as historic?
Yes. So the criteria that you would use to determine compatibility are, the first one is density, and we look at the surrounding lots that have been previously defined as the five R and RS parcels. And we've gone through, since the community meeting, there were questions about how to apply this to a corner lot, and so we've gone through and clarified that for density, we would use both block faces for the corner lot. And then we would make sure that development is consistent with community character, and we've set out four criteria for that, comparing to the surrounding parcels. Again, the first is lot frontage. And in the proposed regulations, the lot frontage would be either equal to or greater than 70% of the average of the surrounding parcels, or greater than the surrounding lot with the least amount of frontage. So greater than 70% of the average, or the smallest lot that's within those 10 lots that you're comparing to. For both lot frontage and lot size, the process is the same for lot size, and for both of those, we would look only at the blockface to which the proposed lots are oriented. So if you're on a corner lot and you're oriented to a street to the north, we're not going to be looking at the frontages or lot sizes to the street on the east, because that may be a much different character. The third is the minimum required street setback. There are lots of instances where the zoning code setback, or even double the zoning code setback, which is the maximum, we can, zoning can ask someone to setback a property, is much less than the established setback of the neighborhood. So with this section, we would be requiring a minimum building setback line, so that we can keep that established setback. And then also the orientation of proposed lots, and making sure that in an area with an established development pattern, that the proposed lots are oriented in a consistent way with the surrounding parcels. These three sections are currently in the code, and they refer to zoning, frontage, and the standards of reviewing agencies, and those would say both in the maintenance areas and the evolving areas. Here are a few examples. This is a corner lot. So in this case, for frontage in the area, we would look to the direction that the lots are oriented, and this subdivision would pass both the 70% of the average and the area and frontage, and staff would recommend approval of this subdivision. We would not look, unless the lots were oriented the opposite direction, we would not look at the street to the south. Then, again, the lot is outlined in blue, shown here the proposed subdivision in red. In this case, the lot's frontage is equal to the lot frontage of the smallest lot on that blockface, and so staff would recommend approval of this subdivision. Here's another example. Property's outlined in blue, and the proposed subdivision is shown here in red. We would go both directions for this lot, and this lot would actually be less than 70% of the area, and we would have a recommendation of disapproval. And in this case, we would go to the north to evaluate the subdivision, but not to the south, because that lot is oriented a different direction. And in this case, the proposed subdivision does not meet either the frontage or area requirements, and so staff would recommend disapproval. So the other portion is the neighborhoods that we would determine to be neighborhood-evolving, neighborhood general, or neighborhoods with special policies that encourage different types of subdivisions and developments. The first three in this list are the zoning code standards, the frontage, and the current standards of all reviewing agencies, which is the same as is today. And then we would add the need to comply with any applicable special policy, and then in same language you saw earlier regarding a recommendation from the Metro Historic Zoning Here's an example. This policy would be neighborhood general, so we would not evaluate any of the surrounding lots. We would simply make sure that the subdivision meets zoning, and if in a historic overlay district, we would get a recommendation from the historic commission, Historic Zoning The last portion of this section is the infill frontage section that requires joint access, and we do have an amendment here to require access via a side or rear alley, improved alley, and then less than 50 feet in width are the same regulations that you have today. And the Planning Commission does have an ability to grant an exception to this section. There are some issues with this, with all, any amendment that we would have come up with, and that's some areas, and some areas that are currently established, areas are expected to accommodate future growth, and there's an impact of infill development. And so staff is going, potentially to be looking at other ways to accommodate additional population in terms of accessory dwelling units or corridor redevelopment. And it will not prevent tear downs of existing structures or the use of previously platted lots, where you have one structure that's built over two lots that have been platted since maybe the 20s or the 30s. We have done a few updates based on community input. There was proposed to be a section on requiring the demolition of existing structures versus allowing them to be on the plat with a note, allowing them to be maintained. And so that section has been revised rather than deleted, and we've clarified wording in several areas that during community meetings or the online comment forum, we've heard that folks have found confusing. So staff is recommending approval of these proposed amendments, and we're recommending two effective dates, one for the housekeeping amendments, that would be December 13th, tomorrow, and one for the infill subdivision amendments that would be applied to all applications submitted after noon today, which is our last filing deadline. So we would have one more filing deadline with infill subdivisions under the previous regulations, and everything that's submitted for the next filing deadline would be under the proposed amendments.
Thank you, Chair. Signups open for public hearing, and anyone that wishes to speak may. If you come to microphone, you're going to be allowed two minutes, give us your name and address, and I'd like to have two or three people lined up at one time, but hours getting late, and waste a lot of time walking up.
Mr. Chairman, while we're waiting, I wanted to just make the public and the commission aware of one option we might want to consider with respect to the historic zoning overlays. And I wanted to bring it up before the public hearing, so the public would have the opportunity to respond to it. I believe, did the staff receive a request to defer from the Metro Historic Commission staff? Okay. They, as I understand, I didn't see the letter yet, but as I understood it, they wanted more time to review. They just saw this today, so they felt like they needed to understand the potential implications. But one thing to consider if we do not defer it would be to treat all the historic overlay districts with the same approach as we do the maintenance districts, which would basically, to me, would be logical. I mean, I think it should be studied to see if it, you know, makes sense, but would be logical, because the whole purpose of these historic overlay districts are to maintain the character in these historic neighborhoods. Staff's current recommendation is to simply get a recommendation from the Historic Zoning Commission to help us make our decision, but one thing we might consider if we do move forward with this today is to go ahead and include all of the historic zoning districts, and possibly even the national registered districts. I don't know if we have any resident, do we have residential national registered? I'm not sure. So that's all I wanted to say before.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I hate to be, spoiler in this, it's, let me see, I'm looking at my watch, it's You know, we handled the cases tonight, and we had good debate. Potentially, for a fair hearing, this could go on for three or four hours. I mean, are we absolutely, I mean, I feel like we're potentially rushing, rushing this?
Well, I think people stayed here, you know, to make comments, and they should be allowed. We may want to set a time. I don't think, I've got a flight in the morning, about 7:30, so.
Well, I'm not suggesting a time to limit discussion, because I don't think that's...
It's 9:30. We may want to set, you know, an hour limit or something like that.
I don't want to limit discussion. I just think that, you know, going in at 9:30, we have an extremely important policy decision on this. We could go for four hours and then try to, I don't know, I'm just, I don't mind staying here, you know.
I think we have given opportunity to speak, and without repetition, you know, if we start hearing the same thing, then we're going to ask you to not speak.
But, yeah. Another thing there is, if we deferred the remainder of our process, the existing regs, as interpreted tonight, would remain in place. Is that right? Which, if I could suggest, to I think all of our surprise, and maybe Mr. Dale pointed out, is that I think what happened tonight is we sort of put the sniff test to each one of these cases individually, and some people, and really, I think, Phil, that's kind of what I felt like you were doing consistently, was, does this feel right? Does it feel good? Does it make sense? Does it, you know, is it generally comparable? And so maybe that, maybe we've already set a, you know, set a pattern here that allows for us to take the right time. We've got a dozen or so letters from council members who would like more time. We've got a recommendation from, I would love for the public to speak tonight and have that opportunity, they've been here a long time, we should listen. But we may choose to take our time to debate this and discuss it afterwards.
Well, I'm fine with that, as long as there's an absolute moratorium on subdivision decisions, until we come back and finish that. And that has to happen. We can't, we can't have the uncertainty, and, I mean, we made, obviously, interesting decisions tonight, and some of them were obvious about looking at it, and some of them weren't. But I'm not, I think we ought to, if the alternate, if we cannot agree to a binding moratorium on subdivisions until our next hearing, then I think we just need to hash it all out tonight. Can we agree to that? Is that within our authority?
No.
No, not whether you'd vote for it, but is that within our authority?
That's within your authority. I'm not sure that if it's 9:30 and we get, do all the comments at midnight, that we won't, we're in the mental condition, emotional condition to stay here another two hours to hash something out that's rational.
I mean, is it within our authority to put in a moratorium on new subdivision requests?
There's state statute that requires this body to make a decision on subdivision applications within 60 days. Your current regulations require it to be done within 30 days. So those are the parameters in which you could do any moratorium.
When were these officially filed?
I'm sorry?
We had to make a decision within 30 days of when they were.
When the application was filed. No, is it from the, okay, I'm sorry. When they're on the agenda, from the date of the agenda.
When they're on the agenda, from the date of the agenda.
Phil?
This may not make any difference, but did we have any applications come in after 12 o'clock today noon?
Well, we have pending about 35 applications under the current interpretation.
Ooh, bananas.
And.
The recession is over.
And so any other, there are 35 more cases like you had tonight.
But the current interpretation.
Is a one-tiered interpretation. That's what.
Because they all came in before 12 o'clock today at noon.
Right. Yeah, but I'm just saying that's.
So are we at some point going to be hearing, in the same meeting, cases that are applicable as before today, and then if we adopt new rules, that some of them are going to be on the new rule?
Until you adopt different rules and set a time limit, or a time for those rules to go into effect, you will evaluate the rule, the cases based on the interpretation you made tonight.
Their grandfather then.
And they were submitted based on the rules in place at that time.
I hear their grandfather.
That's a choice for this commission.
Right. That's subject to our decision on each one of those, what we apply.
Hello? I just want to be sure I understand. There are 34 or 35 that have been submitted by noon today.
Correct.
That would, based on this recommendation right here on the screen, we would pursue with the old rules.
There are 34 or 35 that are in the process under the rules as they exist today.
Have already been filed.
Right.
And so I think your question then would be, could we say that if we choose to have a public hearing tonight and not debate and wait until our next meeting to debate, could we not have, could we have a moratorium on any further filings beyond today at noon until we make our new decision?
Yeah, can we do that?
We would have the misery of dealing with those 34 at the next meeting regardless.
Let me point out that if, what the commissioner is suggesting is the direction that you go. One of the amendments to the subregs today that's been presented to you is to change the subregs to go from 30 to 60 days to match what the state statute is, which would give you all the addition of 30 days beyond what you are doing. It would give you a full 60 days from the date that it's on the agenda for those going forward, if you went with what commissioner, what the commissioner suggested.
Okay. That would be one way to go. And if we, we're not second guessing how we will look at the 34 or 35, but it would be on the existing regs, not what we're being asked to look at now. And that would be subject to individual presentations, just like tonight.
Well, and that, again, that your regulations say that the staff, that the executive director can make, can give administrative approval if they meet the regulations. You could choose to ask staff to bring all of the 30 or 35 applications that we currently have before us to the commission to make decisions and for us not to give administrative approval, if you chose to do that as well.
Before we hear the public, I want to proselytize real quickly. I've yet to do that all night long. These are great problems for our city to be having. Believe me, the city of Detroit or the city of Memphis would love to be having this debate about infill problems. So as you all come up here and talk about this, these are fabulous challenges that thanks to a great planning staff, we're facing as a city. We need to deal with it openly, honestly, proactively, and in a healthy manner, and not have contentious debates, and not throw us under the bus. Please, thank you.
Well, with as it may, the, I really know, I know people came down here and they're very prepared to talk, but I am unwilling to defer these amendments unless we do so with the understanding that that new subdivision request will not be decided until the new regulations. So.
Let me ask this, Stuart, if I may interrupt for just a second. Of these 36 applications that we've got now, under normal circumstances, how many of those would just be settled administratively?
Well, they used to all. All of them, yes. Historically, I mean, maybe not all, but 99% of them would be. What we have heard, basically.
Including the five that we heard today would have been.
All those would have been approved based on what our recommendation was to the commission. So if, and we did not hear anything from the commission that directed staff to change the way that we have interpreted the existing subdivision regulations. So if, if directed, I mean, unless you direct us to bring them all back to you, then we will likely approve them administratively based on the criteria we've been using for the last two and a half years.
Approve them or not?
Or not, right. Yeah, yeah. It's not to imply that every subdivision gets approved. There's a whole lot that don't get approved that you never hear about.
Well, let me ask you this. Is that different, are you going to handle it different from the way that we handled the five tonight? The reason that they came here tonight?
The five that came here and the ones that you acted on were basically based on the staff's criteria recommendations, which are the tradition, the way we've handled them for the last, since, for the last two and a half years. Except for one, right? We would probably handle that differently.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I don't want to belabor this, but we, the only reason not to take more time to think about it is, is if we're going to see decisions made, and I don't think, I don't think we have, I think we can take action, and it's my impression that from neighborhood associations I receive letters from, and developers both that I receive letters from, that, that they all would like a little more time. And I have the impression that no one wants to rush, that there would be no objections from the development community to us having a decision to not make further decisions. Is that.
Subject to a moratorium or not?
Right. Subject to a moratorium until we decide, not a filing, but a deciding. That's what I understand. And I.
We've got to put a date on the moratorium. You can't leave it open for, to the second to the ninth day.
Till we decide regulations, which I assume would be moved to our next meeting.
January 9th, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah.
January the 9th.
Well, I guess, to get a sense of where the commission is, I guess I would, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, for a motion at this point, I would move that we defer action until January 9th with the understandings we've talked about, about not making decisions on subdivisions until we act, until that day, and then we have to decide.
Okay, is that a motion?
Yes.
Would you say, and keep the public hearing tonight? Keep the public hearing open tonight?
Yes, definitely that.
Okay, there was a motion. Was there a second?
No.
No second?
I have a question.
Okay.
You need a second.
To discuss the motion. If there's not, then the motion dies.
I'll second it, so we can discuss it. I'll second.
Okay.
There's some housekeeping amendments that we have, and Doug, did you say that one of those is to change the timeframe for which we have to act to match the state regulations?
That is correct.
Okay. So, and we can consider those housekeeping amendments separately and approve those tonight, and not necessarily approve, have any action on the infill.
You could, you could approve any portion of what has been suggested, or all of it together, but you can parse it out and say that we're going to approve these particular housekeeping amendments at this time, and defer the remainder of the amended changes to, and we would ask a date certain.
If you do, can I add one thing? If you do that, though, you still have to have a hearing on that rule change itself. So you're not, I don't want you to be under the impression that you can change the 30 to the 60 without a hearing. That's still a change in the subdivision regs that requires a hearing under state law.
And it's one of the housekeeping amendments, right?
Right. Even the housekeeping amendments, but you, what you could do is you could, you could waive your own rules.
Well, they could have the hearing tonight and approve.
For those housekeeping.
Yeah, you could do, you could have a hearing tonight for the, for the housekeeping piece and then approve it. Or you, you, the thing that's binding you really is the 30-day provision in your own rules. If you stayed ground for waiving that rule for 30 days, you could also approach it from that standpoint, waive the 30 days and continue the entire thing. So there are a couple of different ways that you could, you could work it out. It'd be the pleasure of the board.
That sounds like the quickest solution.
We've got a motion second. Stuart?
Yes, sir?
Could you repeat your motion? We've got a motion second. We need to act on.
My motion, restated, is that we defer action until January 9th with the, with decisions on subdivisions withheld until January 9th, with the exception of the housekeeping portion of this that Hunter wants to add on right now, which is what?
Basically, you want to defer action on 3.5. That's the infill subdivision.
Well, at a minimum, I would want to go ahead and have a public hearing and action on the 30-day addition. At a minimum, we should, we should do that tonight. Would be my amendment.
That's separate. Is that? That's, I'll take that as a friendly amendment. That we defer everything except that one rule, one regulation about giving ourselves more time to decide.
And then, just to clarify what I'm saying by that, and, you know, I'm happy to stay here and listen to a public hearing on all the other housekeeping amendments, or the whole thing, but we're basically just saying we're going to have a public hearing on only the 30-day extension, 30, changing 30 days to 60 days tonight, and then we'll have the public hearing on the 9th of January for the, for the rest of it, and we'll have extra time because of the motion.
And the 30 to 60 days does not change the moratorium aspect of this.
And that item be.
I didn't hear, I don't know what the moratorium aspect is.
Where, my motion is that the, that the commission and staff do not make decisions on, on filed subdivisions after today. That's, that's my.
The ones that came in.
Until January 9th.
Clarify, Stuart, are you talking about the 35 that's already, they included in that, or the ones that came in after noon today?
The latter.
I don't think we can, I don't think we can put a moratorium on the 35 that are already in. I really don't. Yeah.
Just so I understand, the motion basically is to continue all parts of the draft subdivision regulations until January 9th, with the exception of section, the section dealing with the time limit. And staff is directed not to approve any administratively, and so the public understands the intent of that would be to, so the commission can debate this. My understanding of the intent of that is that, that at such point, such point as the commission adopts revised rules, then anything after noon today would be approved under those, whatever they are.
Or not.
Or, I mean, that's, that's what I understand the intent of that motion to be, so I want everybody to be clear about that.
And it only relates to infill subdivisions, not subdivisions.
And sorry, just to clarify, the 35 that have already been filed.
They were in before noon, today was a filing deadline at noon today.
Would be considered by staff under the.
The motion was to bring them before the commission, because that would not be approved administratively.
Yeah, I don't know what you want. I mean, yeah, we'll do it either way. We can do it administratively, we can do it, bring them before the commission.
In what order? When we come here on the 9th of January, in what order would we take this? Would we, we're going to take it first. Not going to allow the people to stay here forever. It's going to be the first item. It'd be the first item. In that way, any discussion, if we adopt it, would it be applicable immediately and apply to those 35 that we're going to be working on?
No, 35 are going to be done and gone, or they're going to be before you, that day, under the current regs, is my understanding.
So, excuse me, the 30, the ones that have been submitted after, by noon today, were going to be submitted to staff for staff's basic review, as they've reviewed in the past, up until today at noon. Not submitted before us. I mean, they wouldn't be presented to us on the night.
That's a choice. We can do it either way, but they're under the current rules.
That's what you were saying, that they would be reviewed by the staff under the current rules, and then we would take up the hearing of the new zoning regs based on tonight's public hearing. We would then debate these new decisions and new questions, and then vote up or down or changing, or whatever we do with the subdivision regs from then on. And then would we accept, I guess your question is, would we then accept applications starting that, to the, when would somebody have to apply to even be on that agenda?
My understanding is that anything that was, I mean, where you're at, I hear, what I've heard you say is that anything that is filed after noon today.
There's a moratorium on it.
Well, I know, it's not going to be, but it's not going to be processed until you adopt some new regulations. And those, cases that came in after noon today will be evaluated under that, whatever unknown rules are.
And everything filed prior to noon today, up to noon today, will be evaluated under the current set of regulations.
Yes.
Yes.
As you clarified today.
Yeah.
Based on our rulings.
Based on the majority of your rulings today.
But can, just, I know we're sitting here and it's late, but is the, if somebody's out there and they want to submit the next, to the new rules, can they submit to be heard on the 9th after we decide, or do they submit to be heard at our next meeting?
It would be a little hard to, it'd be a little hard to have a staff report for rules that we don't know exist.
So I'm just trying to put some dates to it. So they would then, if the moratorium exists, then they could file to submit for the, our second January meeting. And not before, there won't be any infill subdivisions heard on the night.
That was today's filing deadline, too.
Oh, that's from the night. Okay. Well, there wouldn't, okay.
Let's go back to the motion, and I'm going to ask the audience, too, soon as we make the motion, vote on it. If there's anyone in here that would definitely want to stay here and speak, or you've heard Carrie's presentation, and she can give you copies of that, so you're better informed when you come on the night to speak to the specifics of what the proposal is, rather than guesswork tonight of what you think you may have heard, so. If anybody in the audience that would be opposed to going ahead and going home after we make this decision, and then being first on the agenda on January the 9th, and everybody's been given a copy that you can study and roll over and discuss, so that you can come back with specifics. Anybody that objects to that.
Mr. Chairman, one little P.S. We will have the opportunity, if somebody wants to come in about the 30-day extension, that's going to be a public hearing tonight, right?
Yes, the notion.
Okay. So we're going to, we're going to take this action, and then we're going to adjourn and get with Carrie. Be sure that you get a copy of it, you can study it, make your notes, and then on the 9th, we will take that up at 4 o'clock. You will not have to stay here until 7 or 8 o'clock at night. We'll discuss it first thing, make a decision, vote on it, and that'll be the new amendments to the regulations.
Just to clarify, there will be a public hearing on the 16th tonight, the 30 to 60 tonight, tonight? Yeah, okay.
If, if I may, just for clarity, and Mr. Bernhardt, not to put you on the spot, but so that we've got clarity on what Chairman Clifton's motion is, if you or, I mean, if Commissioner Clifton, if you or, the commissioner would like to restate it, staff would greatly approve, appreciate that.
Written, that's what I'm trying to do. Now, they stated clearly so we know, the commission knows, the public knows what we're.
What section, 60 to 90? The 30 to 60? So I can get that.
There are three sections. It comes up under the concept plan, the development plan, and the final plat. So do you want me to?
Yeah, numbers.
I'm sorry, I'm looking at a track changes version, which is not. 3C.
Hard?
Yeah.
Is it permanent change?
2 dash 4. I'm sorry, I'm looking at a track changes version, which is not, C, 60. Three dash, C.
Hard?
Yeah.
Is it a permanent change?
Two dash, four, four, C. And, two dash, five, six, A.
Okay, the motion as I understand it is to defer both a public hearing and further consideration by the planning commission tonight, all proposed sections of the subdivision regulations with the exception of sections 2-3-5C, 2-4-4C, 2-5-6A, all of which deal with bringing the review requirements in the, of the planning commission into conformance of state law, i.e. minimum, going from a minimum or a maximum requirement of 30 days to 60 days. In addition, any applications received after noon today will be held until such time as the planning commission directs us to release those or adopts regulations and otherwise to review those, those proposed subdivision, subdivision applications under that. Any applications that were received prior to noon today will be reviewed under the determinations, will be reviewed by staff under the determinations that the commission made tonight.
Infill.
Yeah, then, only applying to infill applications, infill subdivisions.
Now, was your motion, Stuart, in second by Hunter?
Yes.
Now, we're going to have a public hearing, could we get...
On that one thing, on that one thing, if we vote on it, if we decide to.
Should we vote on that first?
The motion would be to vote on that, which would then leave those three sections dealing with 30 to 60 days open for a public hearing and decision, whatever you want to do tonight.
Open for a public hearing tonight or for...
Tonight, tonight. That motion would have that public hearing held tonight.
Okay, you've heard the motion and the second. All in favor? Any opposed, motion carries. Now we open the public hearing.
Yeah, have a public hearing on those three sections, 2-3-5C, 2-4-4C, 2-5-6A, E. And that all relate to whether, to bringing the planning commission's time limits into conformance with state law, going from 30 to 60 days for compliance.
Do you all know what those mean?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm Berkeley Allen, council member for the 18th district, and since I'm here, I will go ahead and say I think that is a fine idea to put that in conformance. I appreciate the offer of the moratorium until we do get settled, and I would hope that we have the opportunity for going ahead and sending in comments that we would have made tonight for consideration between now and that time so that perhaps some of them can be incorporated or at least thought about rather than hitting you with them at that short time. I do think this is an important process, I appreciate you all sticking around so, so long. I do feel like it's important to restore the public confidence in the process, to have something that we all agree is meaningful. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I too would like to support the 60 days, it's consistent with state law. With all the infill applications you're getting, you probably need more time anyway, so I think it's a good thing. I am grateful for your service, Ms. Cummings. Thank you for everything you've done for the city of Nashville. I want to wish you all a very, very happy holiday and appreciate your service to our city.
Anyone else wish to comment? Seeing none, propose a proposal to carry on.
All right, bingo. Oops. On behalf of my client, I just want to say that we support that proposal, that the 30 days be moved to the 60 days to be consistent with state law. I just think that's a fair and equitable thing to do. Thank you for your courtesy.
Quickly, anything from...
Don't we need a motion?
Motion, vote, get voted.
Okay.
Motion to adopt.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to adopt the...
The three sections.
The three sections previously mentioned.
Motion second to adopt the three sections previously mentioned. All in favor? Any opposed? Now...
Can we conclude other business and move on?
Yeah, is there anything that anybody just can't, can't wait to say next time?
I need, I need to inform the commission, we have Amy Diaz Boriga, Amy, you want to stand up? She's, she's leaving us, returning to the city of Franklin, and...
Don't do it. Was it tonight?
And Joni, and Joni Priest is also leaving us. She is, she's going to be going to Hastings, Hastings Architecture and their design studio, so both Amy and Joni will be leaving us the end of next week.
Is that it?
Thank you.
adjourned, go home.